Welcome to the Tuesday, April 15, 2025, regular meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. For a detailed information on meeting procedures, please review the full pre-need meeting agenda provided. Mr. Leonard, or Manager Leonard, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Lee.
Commissioner Weich.
Here.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Here.
Commissioner Abrams.
Here.
Commissioner Dish.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner Wetherby.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Norton.
Here.
We have a quorum for your special matinee version of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Manager Leonard. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Wetherby, seconded by Councilmember Dish. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 1, 2025, meeting? Moved by Commissioner Wetherby and seconded by Commissioner Hammerschmidt. Is there any discussion of the minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any oppose? The motion carries. Next up are the reports to the Planning Commission and written communications. We'll start with Councilmember Dish for a council report.
Nothing to report. No meeting has occurred.
Thank you, Councilmember Dish. Manager report from Mr. Leonard.
Yes, since your last meeting, the draft report, which you will be discussing this evening, has been shared. As we talked about, it's also been, a lot of the content has been migrated to the city's new engagement hub. So, the previously published shortcut is now directed to that page as well, so hopefully it should be very accessible for people to find. And, we are still in the throes of finalizing meetings, but we have published the upcoming public sessions, which I want to remind folks of, and perhaps Senior Planner Bennett can remind us all of those dates and locations.
Okay, so, for our first engagement session is Thursday, April 24. That will be at the Westgate Library from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. On Wednesday, April 30, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., we'll be at the Mallett's Creek Library Branch. And then, May 7, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., we'll be at the Traver Wood Library.
And then, later in your agenda, an updated meeting calendar reflecting some of the work that's going to be taking place at this table as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Do any other Commissioner, officers, or liaisons have anything to report? Written communications are included in today's packet, which takes us to item number six, public comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on issues not listed as a public hearing. This evening, the Commission will discuss chapters one, two, and three of the draft comprehensive land use plan. We kindly ask that you focus your comprehensive comments on those sections. In the following weeks, as we get into details, like the goals, or strategies, or the future land use map, we will dedicate one section each, excuse me, to the remaining chapters. The public will have an opportunity to make comments on those chapters as well. We will first start by hearing from those who are present in the chambers, then we will hear from our remote participants, if there are any. To speak remotely, press star nine if on phone, and use the raised hand feature in Zoom. For phone access, you can call 877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number, or by name if connecting via Zoom. You will hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present in the chambers who would like to speak at this time? You can come up.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Rajiv Batra, and I live at 2885 Renfrew Street in the Bromley subdivision of Ann Arbor, 48105. My family and I have lived for 36 years. I want to say two things in my three minutes. First, you may think you've involved enough citizens in the feedback process of the comprehensive plan, but you haven't. Given the huge changes the plan proposes, you needed thousands more of us to have been involved. I'm actively involved in what the city does, and get frequent emails from it, but never heard anything about this comprehensive plan until about a month ago from something I read on Nextdoor. I appreciate that this is a difficult task for you, since we no longer have the Ann Arbor news to communicate with citizens, but I do think that this whole process needs to be paused until thousands more participate in this process of massive change. Second, I agree that we need more affordable housing in Ann Arbor, but you should be going about this in a much more targeted and phased manner. Your plan in one swoop allows developers to build four-story, or maybe three-story, that's unclear, townhouses, and quadplexes, and duplexes, and commercial buildings in every single residential area of Ann Arbor, an idea which I and my neighbors strongly oppose. I urge you to scale back this nuclear option, and begin this in only a small slice of our residential districts, so that we all have time to assess the acceptability of your proposed changes before this is potentially rolled out into more residential areas. Thank you.
I'm Mary Durfee. I live at 1052 Olivia. I'd like to speak to the concept of mixed-use development in transition zones. Throughout the report, the ability to walk to amenities, thereby reducing the dependency on automobiles, is referenced. I could not agree more with walkable neighborhoods with amenities. However, what I have observed in over 33 years at my current location is exactly the opposite. Many walkable stores providing services such as grocery and clothing for middle-income individuals have either been left empty, or have been replaced by gentrified services. Let me identify. Krogers, we had two within walking distance of my home. Both of them are now gone. One was at South Industrial and Stadium, and one was at the Georgetown Mall. I'm sure there were market conditions that contributed to this. My likely explanation is those market conditions have not changed. Bank, we had a corner, one at the corner of South Industrial and Stadium, which is now a cosmetic dermatology office for Botox and other fillers. Jack's Hardware, a locally-owned store servicing townies and students, torn down recently. We do not have one. We now go to Lowe's, driving. Many stores along South University providing services, bagels, Chinese food, pinball pizza, hangout for local teens and students, replaced with t-shirt shops, nail salons, coffee shops, and Bose bagels from New York City, largely owned by non-local people. Two post offices, one staffed by the owners of Georgetown Gifts, which closed, and one on the alley behind South University, which is scheduled to be torn down. I would ask why the city and the consultants believed that the market conditions that led to the closing of these and many other locally-owned stores will be different in the first floors of the new mixed-use buildings with higher lease costs. We have only to look at the first floors of the buildings that have been built in the last 10 years to see that they are either empty or leased by out-of-town chains that do not help to provide opportunities for the local people that you've identified. The George is a great example. I recently decided to read all of the stories about the George before it was built. It was identified as the perfect site for a mixed-use building. It had previously had Krogers, Georgetown Gifts, a travel office, a pizza place, and dry cleaners. It is on a main artery and has a bus stop in front of it on Packard. It was seemingly the perfect situation. Unfortunately, once built, no businesses seem to agree with that assessment, and the first floor is now turned into additional living spaces. Bottom line is that just as the proposal, in my opinion, and that of others, will not provide the level of middle-income households that it predicts, building mixed-use buildings will not provide the services necessary to eliminate the need for automobiles. Those services would be grocery stores with everyday prices, daycare centers, not mentioned once in the report unless they're considered amenities, pharmacies, hardware stores, not nail salons, cosmetic dermatology, and coffee shops. These are all just one more way of gentrifying a neighborhood. I would implore the Commission to consider putting specific requirements on the developers of these denser neighborhoods, committing a certain percentage of land for the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust, and using first-floor commissal spaces to be affordable for local merchants. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Brett Henderson. My wife and I have been at 1416 Brooklyn since 86. My topic is the community engagement portion of the comprehensive plan. Looking through the materials that you've provided, it seems to me like there's a lot of key things that are kind of glossed over and not really dealt with. Let me give you an example. The developers don't have to provide parking, for the most part. So, let's say a duplex goes in next door to you, and it's hard to believe a duplex is actually eight units, which is, I can't understand that, but a duplex goes in, eight units next door, no parking provided. Well, you get a couple of those close to your house, and every day is going to be like football Saturday afternoon, but it's going to be 24/7, 365 days a year. You know, people will never be able to park in close to their house, or in front of their house. So, parking's an example. Trees are another example. The developers can rip out all the trees they want. And, in a town called Tree Town, that's kind of a little hard to imagine, it's hard for me to think people would be okay with that. The water runoff situation is the same thing. The developers, we've all been concerned about that. We've taken a lot of steps to mitigate the runoff problems. Developers don't have to worry about that in the comprehensive plan. It's hard for me to think people would be okay with that. So, I could go on and on, but, well, one other primary one is the elimination of R1 and R2. It's really, it's in there, but it's really not made clear to people when they go through the materials. And when people buy a single-family house, they have some reasonable expectation that they know how that neighborhood is going to be structured. Comprehensive plan turns that all on its head. It's hard for me to think people would be okay with that. So, that's one aspect of the community engagement. The other is the number of people that have been involved. This is the first gentleman mentioned. 3,000 in initial survey. There's been engagements at the library, and those are ongoing. But whenever I talk to somebody about this, the first thing they say is, "I had no idea the city had this kind of thing going on." So, I think we have to be a bit careful about that. The other question is, let's just take those 3,000 in the first survey. How were they selected? How do we know? Were they really a good random sample? And, what kind of responses? We don't get to see their responses. That would be interesting to know. How did they feel about this? Saved by the bell. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's fine. Take your time.
My name's Andy Flint. I live at 3425 Andover Road. I just have a couple of questions. I'll read, so I can stay within the time limit. I wish to ask the members if I am correct in assuming that the recommendations would result replacement of single-family homes by commercial enterprises, presumably not including liquor stores or gun stores, and by multi-unit, four-story apartment or condo buildings. I assume the square footage of such buildings would be limited only by the size of the lot or conjoined lots. And would I also be correct in assuming that these recommendations would result in a decrease in the number of single-family homes, thus making the American dream of owning one's home even more difficult to achieve in Ann Arbor? And lastly, as an example of how affordable housing will likely not result from these recommendations, there is an advertisement in the current Ann Arbor Observer for a new condominium building being constructed near single-family homes, which lists a unit for $4,988,000. One unit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Warren Williams. My wife and I have lived at 2708 Lower Road for 51 years now. And, I have to say, I grew up in the neighborhood that you were describing, and it was a terrible place to be a kid. We had no places to play. We used to play in the street. When a car was coming down the street, we would all yell, "A car!" and we'd all go to the sides. Every parent's dream was to move out of there and have a single-family house for their family. And those with means did so. And those of us whose parents could not afford to do so stayed. And I don't know what consideration you have given about the upbringing of children in your plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Will Leaf. I live on North State Street, and I'd like to thank everybody for getting to this point. I know it's been a long process. I think a lot of the content in the first three sections of the comprehensive plan is great, and provides a lot of context for why change is necessary. There's one point on page 18, I think, could be improved, and there's an argument specifically. It says, "While new housing generates revenue for the city, and helps capitalize the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, losing the non-residential tax base will shift even greater burden onto residential properties, both traditional and commercial multifamily, further impacting affordability." So, I don't think that's totally logical, because it confuses the aggregate burden between land uses with the actual burden on each individual property owner. So, if a new apartment building goes into a place that's currently low-density commercial, for example, and there's a big increase in tax revenue, the aggregate burden on residential goes up. That percentage goes up, because now more of the property tax base is residential, but the burden on each individual goes down. So, it doesn't follow that new housing construction is going to hurt the affordability of housing. So, I think you could just remove that. And the reason this is important is because there's actually an area, or areas, in the city where there is actually space for lots of new housing that is way less controversial than single-family neighborhoods. I own a single-family house. I've lived here for more than 30 years. I support more apartment buildings in my neighborhood, but duplexes here, apartment buildings there, that are small-scale, are going to trickle in new housing, whereas in the areas marked "flex," there are empty lots, where developers have proposals ready to go, to add literally thousands of bedrooms. And, I haven't heard any objections to housing in areas, on busy areas, without any current existing single-family housing. So, there's a huge opportunity here to get a lot of housing in a very non-controversial way, and I think we should remove faulty arguments that preclude that possibility in these explanatory early sections of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
My name is Jeffrey Post. I am a real estate agent with At Properties, Christie's International. I am a longtime Ann Arbor resident. I was born and raised here. And, I just want to, in regards to the outreach, I just want to point out something that I represent a group whose lifeblood is buying and selling homes, and helping people champion moving to this town. We are stakeholders of a unique kind, because every day that we work, we talk about titles, and zoning, and houses, and housing density, and all sorts of topics that probably many other professions don't talk about on a daily basis. Over a month ago, I'm part of a group that has a mastermind group of 40 to 50 agents who meet and talk about various things in the real estate community, and I asked everybody to raise their hand of who heard about the comprehensive plan in this large group, and two or three people did. Now, I'd venture to say, as ambassadors for people who want to come to this town, who we help and encourage to come to this town, who we champion to come to this town, to be that ill-informed, a group that's sole business is to be informed on real estate and what's happening in the town was scary and shocking. In looking at your outreach, I don't see how our stakeholder group, my peers of which number in hundreds, were invited at any time to participate, to talk, to share, who believe in the future of the city of Ann Arbor, but at the same time, this was over a month ago, that larger group is largely not informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the chamber like to address the Commission at this time? Seeing none, do we have online callers?
We do. Caller with the phone number ending with 326. You have three minutes to address the Planning Commission. Go ahead.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, my name is Jeff Crockett, and I have been Ann Arbor resident for over 52 years. I live at 506 East Kingsley, the densest, in the middle of densest neighborhood of Ann Arbor. I am the Communications Officer of the 04th Ward Association for the 04th Ward Historic, in the 04th Ward Historic District. Since the early 1980s, Ann Arbor has created 15 historic districts, which have provided significant benefits for the Ann Arbor community, and have become an integral part of our culture. The 04th Ward Historic District created in 1983 is one of these districts. Since 1985, the 04th Ward Historic District Association has supported historic preservation efforts across Ann Arbor, but we have also supported downtown livability by reaching out to students, the U of M, beyond the TIG program, and the Inter Cooperative Council. We have reached out to the Community Engagement Section of the Ann Arbor Police to make our neighborhood safer, and we recently organized a panel discussion on safe sidewalk and streets. In 2024, we received the Community Service Award for the Michigan Historic Preservation Network. Unfortunately, we have learned that the historic districts have not been included in the Other Characters section of the comprehensive plan, and they need to be. Since the district names and map are available on the city's website, it would be fairly easy to transfer this information to an historic district page in the Other Character area, section of the comprehensive plan. The following represents the text you can consider. In 1970, the State of Michigan passed the Local Historic Districts Act, PA 169, which safeguard the community's heritage by allowing local governments to adopt an ordinance that contains design review guidelines based on national standards. Historic districts have played an important role in preserving Ann Arbor's cultural and architectural legacy since the early 1980s. The 15 Ann Arbor Historic Districts include Ann Street, Broadway, Cobblestone Farm, Division Street, East Liberty, East Plumbium, Fourth Ann, Liberty Street, Main Street, Northern Brewery, 04th Ward, O.S. Side, Robert and Irma, Hayden House, State Street, and Washtenaw Hill. Recently, historic district associations have played a key role in planning projects and events for Ann Arbor's 2024 bicentennial, including the bicentennial event itself. It is well recognized that historic districts attract tourists, educate the public on Ann Arbor's heritage, provide work for local tradespeople, attract talent and investment, and raise poverty. We expect historic districts to continue their many contributions well into Ann Arbor's century. A2 Smart Tours provide a convenient way to see and learn more about Ann Arbor's rich architectural and cultural past. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Mary Henderson, you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to start by
I want to start by encouraging anyone who has concerns about the comprehensive plan and the lack of community engagement to consider signing the electronic petition that is circulating, asking the city to suspend the planning process until all residents are fully informed about the plan. To get the link to this electronic petition, please email a2n2contact@gmail.com. That's A as in Apple, the number 2, N as in Nancy, the number 2, contact@gmail.com. I'm opposed to the elimination of single-family and duplex zoning in Ann Arbor, and this is what is proposed in the draft of the comprehensive plan. However, nowhere in the comprehensive plan does it note that the elimination of single-family and duplex zoning will be the end result of the comprehensive plan. The planning commission claims that there has been sufficient public engagement regarding the comp plan, but that's not true. I first learned about it less than a month ago, and almost everyone I know has only recently become aware of the plan. And this is a continuing theme this evening. This is what we're hearing from other people as well. And I think part of the reason that it's not been on people's radar is because the planning commission has not been forthright in letting homeowners know that the bottom-line effect will be the elimination of single-family and duplex zoning, and the city has an obligation to spell that out. The comp plan is a 125-page document, yet nowhere is it stated that single-family and duplex zoning will be eliminated under this plan. In fact, the comp plan document makes it sound like single-family and duplex zoning will be kept with just a few minor tweaks. On page five of the draft comprehensive plan, where the five key components of the plan are summarized, it simply says, quote, "Make recommendations for adding new homes and densification in single-family zoned areas," end quote. That just makes it sound like the city will be promoting densification by adding more single-family homes, you know, possibly in empty lots or whatever. It doesn't inform the public that the proposal is to allow four-story apartment buildings to be built in what are now single-family and duplex neighborhoods, with the ability of developers to combine lots and build over the bulk of the lot or lots, with no restriction on the number of units. On page 46, this plan states, quote, "The majority of people we engaged are comfortable with gentle density in single-family areas. Gentle density was communicated as a modest increase up to four units."
Thirty more seconds.
So the plan for four-story, the plan for four-story apartment buildings with no restrictions on the number of units is in direct opposition to the input received from the public engagement. So not only did the planning commission not engage with the residents, it totally ignored the input received from those with whom it did engage. And I just want to know that the public, that the planning commission has acknowledged the comp plan will not result in lower housing costs.
Adam Duskevich, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hi, this is Adam Duskevich, 1430 Las Vegas Drive in the 4th Ward. I'll stick to discussing this week's reading assignment of the first three chapters of the comprehensive plan draft. It's clear to me that a lot of thought has gone into this document. I think the section on the history of our city is particularly valuable. It shows how, as Ann Arbor has grown over the years, we as residents imposed mechanisms and policies to attempt to stifle that growth. But the result of these policies is a severe shortage of housing. A huge number of people commute into Ann Arbor and can't afford to live here. We've become an expensive, exclusive community. I don't think that's what most of us want now in the 21st century, so it's time to change course. It's also clear to me that, contrary to the claims of some vocal detractors, the city is listening to us. This draft is a distillation of community input from residents through extensive public engagement, guidance from the community members who comprise our planning commission and the steering committee, the policy direction of our elected representatives on city council, and expertise from the consultants and city staff. The outreach process has been significant, and I appreciate the vision and values coming from that outreach that have informed this plan. It's clear that these are widely shared community values. While I know it's impossible to have unanimous agreement, I'm glad there is such strong support for increasing density throughout the city, including gentle density in currently exclusionary single-family neighborhoods and building up a lot downtown and along major corridors. I'm excited to see this shared vision for the future of our community coming together. I do have a couple of things I'd like to see clarified in future drafts. First of all, on page 17, you define residential properties as under four units, and go on to discuss property tax revenue from residential versus commercial properties. On page 18, there's a statement that, quote, "Losing the non-residential tax base will shift an even greater burden onto residential properties, both traditional and commercial multifamily," unquote. The use of "commercial" here seems different and perhaps contradictory. I think this language could be clarified. Also, it's important to note that many commercial properties are, in fact, primarily residential in nature. Some of the properties that have our highest tax revenue per acre are large apartment buildings downtown. A commercial property like Maple Village Shopping Center is quite different from a commercial property like Foundry Lots, and I'm not sure this framing captures that very well. Second, on page 18, there's a mention of Ann Arbor's tax expenditures funding education. Quote, "Half of Ann Arbor's expenditures
Thirty more seconds.
-- funding, with only a quarter going back to the city to pay for services," unquote. I'm not sure if this diagram properly captures the complexity of public school funding in Michigan under Proposal A of 1994, because much of the school funding comes in the form of per pupil, per pupil allocations from the state, and because the boundaries of school district extend beyond the city limits, it seems like an oversimplification. Overall, I think this draft plan is a huge step in the right direction. I look forward to further discussion on the remainder of the draft. Thank you for all you do for our city, and thank you for listening to me tonight.
Brad, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Thank you. Brad Pritz, 3030 Lexington Drive in the 2nd Ward, resident in Ann Arbor since 1993. First, I will echo, thank you all for a long slug at this thing. Unlike many, I have been watching and have been engaged for, at least since the beginning of 2024, so I have seen it grow. I have a couple of quick comments. First, I took a little different approach. I compared our plan to several benchmarks: Wilmington, Delaware, Royal Oak, and Grand Rapids. And Wilmington I picked because they were done by the Interface Studios folks, our same consulting firm. And I must say, Wilmington got a lot better bang for their buck than we did. Anyway, so three points that I'd like you to consider. Number one, hard facts and data, statistically representative. Several speakers here tonight have mentioned, are these representative? I've been asked and been told, no, they're not. For something of this importance, let's get some good hard data. A second piece of hard data we could consider, the 800-pound gorilla in Ann Arbor. What are U of M's plans? They have a parallel planning process going on right now. We should be talking and integrating that. Point two, genuine input. Yes, you had a lot of sessions. My perception of the ones I perceived persisted in were, they were 90% output in selling the plan, only 10% collecting input, and then on very narrow grounds. So please, let's have some specific input on a genuine basis. We've heard a lot of people here who have needs that are quite distinct from what we say in the plan. And finally, let's consider specific neighborhoods. I live in Orchard Hills Maplewood on the northeast side. People live in the old west side. People live in Burns Park. We do not have a one-size-fits-all situation. What works in my neighborhood will not work elsewhere. What works in Burns Park or adjacent to campus won't work here. But yet, the plan doesn't really consider that at all. So please, I will quote Stephen Schwartz, the composer. "There is no journey gone so far. You cannot stop and change direction." Let's take our time, send the consultants back to work, fix the data, get some genuine input, and then let's go forward with a good plan.
Caller with the phone number ending with 534, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Good evening. This is Tom Stalberg calling from 1202 Traver Street in Lower Town, Ann Arbor. Some of my points of art have been covered, so I'll cut to the chase and be a little bit more harsh than other callers. This is the emperor has no clothes moment for all of us, commentators, council members, planning commission members, staff, consultants, for the draft plan. This is not a good plan. We know from looking at other comprehensive plans, use the same consultant, that they can produce a plan worse than the electrons that it is virtually printed on. Ours is not comparable. Ours is not worthy of those electrons, nor the time and money spent on it. So who is responsible for that? Did the city tell the consultant that we don't want the meaty version that other cities got? We want the cartoons and quips and the planning for dummy version? A city known for its highly educated population, really? Did we ask for this? There's a narrative being repeated by some that makes it seem like we get no details now and that they all come later after the plan's adopted by the city council at the end of 2025 and when the zoning code is being written in 2026. Really? There's only one numerical detail that I found in the draft plan regarding buildings, and that's a hotly contested number, four stories. As city's council, city council's resolution to the planning commission acknowledged, more details or less details can be provided at this stage. I'm in the camp that believes more details is better. This draft plan is at the extreme edge of less details. Garbage in, garbage out. We need a lot more meat in this plan, less cartoons, more data, less propaganda, and some level of details. The zoning code must be based on the comprehensive plan. If we have a vague comprehensive plan that we're making it up as we go along when we craft the zoning code, if it's not in the plan
Thirty more seconds.
-- it shouldn't be in the code, because the code, by law, has to be based on that comprehensive plan. Luckily, you have the opportunity to edit the draft plan, and some of you have stated that you agree that more details are needed now. I thank you for your efforts about the beginning.
Eric Ivankic, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Thank you. My name is Eric Ivansic. I'm calling from Towner Boulevard in the 3rd Ward. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but hearing some of the previous speakers inspired me to say just a very little bit here. First of all, I would like to echo everyone who's thanked the planning commission for all their hard work and planning staff as well. I think the draft version is very promising, and I think we're heading very much so in the right direction. I also appreciate all the engagement that city staff and the consultant have engaged in previously, getting to this particular point. One previous caller said that there's no hint or claim that a single, R1 or R2, single or duplex housing zones will change as a result of this comprehensive plan, and that's just not true. I'm here looking at page number 53 of the plan, and it talks about the strategies of how we'll achieve densification. First of all, the very basic word densify or densification means to change the ratio of how many people per acre. So we know that it's going to allow more people to live in the same amount of space in the future. Additionally, the first strategy is allow for more density in all residential districts and encourage denser multifamily housing in places with public infrastructure. And one point, too, is densify the types of housing through universal design and missing-middle housing strategy. So I think the comprehensive plan is very clear on this particular front, and that claim is just not backed up by the facts. Again, thank you for all your work, and I look forward to seeing how the draft plan evolves. Take care.
No more callers. Chair White.
We'll give it just a moment. All right. With that, I am closing the public hearing. That takes us to item number seven on our agenda, public hearing scheduled for the next business meeting. Mr. Leonard.
For the Tuesday, May 6, 2025 meeting, starting at 5:30 p.m., we have one new public hearing scheduled. It is 313 Braun Court Site Plan for Planning Commission Approval, project number SP 24-0018 on the A2 Stream System. This is a proposed seven-story building with 38 residential condominium units. 33 parking spaces will be provided on site. Vehicle access to the site is proposed from the existing alley between Catherine and East Kingsley. The development would require demolition and removal of the current structures. The project is pursuing LEED Silver Certification and is Zoned D2 Downtown Interface.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. We have no unfinished business, so I'm moving on to regular business, item number nine. This is a petition, 2845 South State Street, Arbor South Site Plan for Planning Commission Approval. A proposed site plan to be, to construct approximately 15 new buildings in downtown-style development around two existing buildings at 777 and 789 East Eisenhower Boulevard. New buildings include a hotel, eight residential buildings, restaurant buildings, and three parking structures. The development proposes 93,500 square feet of new commercial space, approximately 150 hotel rooms, approximately 840 apartments or condominium units, including 230 affordable units, and approximately 2,500 vehicular parking spaces. Construction is planned in five phases. The 23-and-a-half-acre site is Zoned TC1 Transit Corridor District. Staff recommendation is postponement. So, do I start with the motion, or do we do the petition and then go from there?
We'll invite the petitioner to come up and present. I do want to, just as a general introduction, we are recommending postponement of this, but thought that it was appropriate, given the size of this petition, to give the planning commission an early opportunity to see it. I would ask that the commission think of this as a great opportunity for any questions that you are going to have, probably at the subsequent consideration of it. Because of that project size, I also do want to note that I have invoked some of my planning manager discretion and offered them a 20-minute window to present the project rather than the typical 10 minutes.
So we're just going to start with the petitioner's presentation first. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Is it Brad will advance?
Yeah, you should. Yeah, we'll load it up here. Just give us one minute, and then we can, we'll just advance it up on your verbal cues.
Alexis, are you, are you going to be advancing it? If that's, or we could do it either way. Whatever's easiest.
Try plugging in it. What could go wrong?
Okay, there's one in here.
Yeah, pull it out.
Let's see what happens, right?
Can tell he's a planner.
That's fine.
Great. Let's suspend for five minutes.
Hi, I'm Jeff Hauptman with Oxford, and we're a local commercial real estate firm. Like Oxford, I'm a townie. I grew up here, product of the school system, Thurston, Clegg, Huron, and eventually U of M. And after college, I founded Oxford. We are 100% local, and we're always working to improve the neighborhoods that we're in. And after seven years of work, it's so exciting to be here right now. Forgive me, I just like, besides jogging down the street, because you guys ended way early on the public comment, which is cool, but I'm really excited to be here to introduce you to Arbor South and the team behind it. So we'll start with why the south side, why here? Okay? I don't know if anyone realizes, it's the main entrance to Ann Arbor. Some people would think the main entrance to Ann Arbor. Almost half the commuter traffic comes in and out of State 94 every day. It's also the center of Washington County's office and retail. That's the biggest concentration of the county, right there. Big plus is it's also far less expensive to build down there than it is downtown. And Oxford is heavily invested in this area, and we spent a lot of time thinking about what can we do better down there. One example you guys may be familiar with is the recent establishment of a biz, a Business Improvement Zone. And with the help of our neighbors and Spark, we're now working to work on the aesthetic and the pedestrian walkability of that area. So why here? The 777 and 789 existing office buildings and a lot of parking lot. In fact, what sparked a lot of this years ago was going up high in 777 and looking down at 10 acres of parking lot, 10 acres of asphalt, 10 acres of impervious surface is gross, right? And so we said there had to be a better way and started thinking about what can we do? Could we build something here? And we went and spoke with some of the people in planning, and we shared our ideas, and they basically took it from there. And they spent the next few years working on TC1. And eventually, that whole area became Zone TC1. And now with TC1, we have the opportunity to address placemaking, affordability, and sustainability on a scale needed to create the change that Ann Arbor wants. Okay, so what does that mean? This is a southern gateway that can become not just a local, but a regional highlight. We're placemaking here. Housing where there isn't any. Housing that will appeal to a wide audience, from affordable to market rate to condos. Housing with a level of amenities beyond any other developments in town. That's fully electrified multifamily, the affordable piece and the market rate, with things like enhanced thermal billing envelopes to make that electrification make sense. Energy star rated appliances. A lot of the sustainability features that you commonly hear, but to me, one of the most important aspects is that we're building density on a transit corridor, reducing vehicular trips and lowering the vehicle miles traveled. I actually wrote that twice in here, reducing vehicular trips and lowering vehicle miles traveled. I think that's so important, along with getting cars off the road, we're also creating a healthier lifestyle for our residents and a place surrounding residents, neighbors can walk or bike to. This is a multimodal approach. Priorities placed on sidewalks, bike lanes, and safe street crossings, making car travel or non-car travel more appealing. Enhanced dedicated bike path connectivity. An improved access to our bus system. When people live and work near transit, public transportation becomes more viable and frequent. We're planning to improve the bus stops and the shelters at State and Eisenhower. Okay. So how do we do that? Because Oxford, we historically buy, renovate, manage. We are not the big developers. I've never stood here in front of you talking about doing a big project. We needed to find someone that has done this successfully with a great track record. And after spending two years of searching for a developer to help us, we found Crawford Hoynes in Dublin, Ohio. This is an example of what they've done. This is Bridge Park. This is ground floor retail, apartments and office above. This is not just a development. This is, this has energy. These guys are not just highly experienced. They've done, they've done over $2 billion of mixed-use projects like this, but they also share similar core values. These are long-term players. They're like us. They want to be a part of a community and stay. They're not the kind of developers that just come in, build something, move on. They want to be a part of this. They want to grow with us. They don't want to sell it, okay? They're playing for the long term. And they really make an investment in what they do. These are some images from Bridge Park. Concerts, farmers markets. They create this energy within the development that people from all over come to. If you ask someone in the Dublin area, or dare I say, the Columbus market, you'll get a really good response about Bridge Park. People know about it. Now, let's talk about the development. This is Arbor South. This is over 1,000 multi-family units. And we're partnering with Jennifer Hall and the Housing Commission so that 200 of those 1,000, over 200 are affordable, over 260% AMI units. Along with about 34 sale condos, tens of thousands of feet of ground floor walkable commercial space that benefits the whole area. So you no longer have to play human Frogger to get across the street to Briarwood or something like that. Instead, it's right there, walkable to the roughly 800,000-plus square feet of office right there. 150 key full-service hotel and public plazas and a nearly two-acre park in the center. And I should mention that two-acre park is actually designed so that, as you can see, you can block off the streets and make it as much as five acres. I'm referring to the green spaces, about two acres surrounded by those three orange buildings. Those are ground, those are story and a half to two-story jewel boxes, retail. So it's a very pedestrian-friendly, very walkable environment. To help make this happen, we've, as I said, partnered with Crawford Hoynes and brought in the architecture firm of Lord X Sergeant and the engineering firm Midwestern Consulting, both really good, familiar names, I hope. I know you've worked with some of these guys quite a bit. And so with that, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Matt Cherry with LAS.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Plan Commission. My name is Matt Cherry. I direct the urban design studio at Lord X Sergeant. We have an office in downtown Detroit. With me tonight is my colleague, Anna Anderson. I've been doing master planning and redevelopment of complex sites like this for the last two decades all over the country, and it's pretty funny because 22 years ago, I did my urban design project at U of M at Taubman on the mall property. So it's kind of ironic, you're back 22 years later doing infill studies and development for something really, really close to theirs. So it's been really awesome to work on this with this team and this client. We've done an exhaustive multi-year planning effort for this site. We started three or four years ago. I think we've probably drawn it 60 or 70 times, maybe more, but it's a complex site, and there's a lot of energy and a lot of really exciting things, and I think we're really, really excited about where we are. The biggest sort of nut to crack is this was originally a standalone office park, and so it was originally designed primarily for cars. So how do you reconceive it in a way that is designed primarily for pedestrians? So this is sort of our approach. This is just the general framework. First, break down the super block. The super block is 1,200, 1,300 feet wide. That's about three times the size of a typical urban block. Create a network of walkable pedestrian-scale blocks, which we've tried to do, retrofitting with some of the existing streets and driveways that are there. Diversify the land uses and building types. Transform what is basically a driveway into a, into a main street that's activated by ground floor commercial. Create high-quality public spaces and integrate mobility and transit options. So it's kind of the general framework, this general partie of what we're looking at. And then Jeff touched on this a minute ago. I'll just touch on a few sort of design-oriented things. That Central Plaza, as somebody with a landscape architecture degree, I am very, very excited. Our team is really excited about the development team's commitment to quality and placemaking in that plaza. I'll come back to that in a second. But it really acts as sort of the beating heart of the neighborhood. And Jeff mentioned the mix of housing types, sizes, and price points. We have a hotel component that sort of anchors the corner, creating some public space around it. We've really studied hard sort of local neighborhood bike and ped connectivity, trying to understand peripheral connections and making sure we're connecting to those in different ways, embracing a mix of transportation modes. And we've really, really tried to design the streets primarily as pedestrian. And so it really sort of reads as sort of this urban fabric of pedestrian-scale streets with nodes of public space sort of strung along it, hopefully. From a mobility point of view, we kind of see it as connecting gaps in that larger network. So you have bike lanes on Eisenhower for part of it. You have bike lanes on State Street. You have bike lanes to the north. This is really connecting that system together. And so, and similarly with bus, local bus, and then future BRT, hopefully. And so Jeff mentioned the bus stops. Tom Earth, Civil Engineer, likes to call them the super bus stops, which I think is really cool, because that's sort of illustrative of the commitment to transit on here. We're really sort of reaching out to it. Placemaking, I think the idea here is that central space really is sort of a living room of the whole development. It reads like a plaza. It should read like a plaza. Cars are sort of allowed to drive through it politely. If a motorist feels slightly uncomfortable, that's probably good, but it's really should be primarily pedestrian. It becomes an amenity for daytime workers, future residents, and visitors alike. And again, I just think this team's commitment to the placemaking, when we first started this, the developers said, "The architecture is important, but it's the space between the buildings that will make it amazing." And I just told them, "Nobody ever says that," so I'm really excited to work for you. We still are. Anna, do you want to talk about the gateway?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I'm not going to take too much time. So again, Anna Anderson, I'm an architect on this project with Lord X Sergeant. We have an office downtown Detroit. I'm just going to talk really quickly of like a human perspective. Just imagine yourself driving by on the State Street, and I'm calling this like a gateway to our neighborhood. I'm going to call it neighborhood. And so imagine yourself driving and kind of seeing that entrance and the building and, and the connection, that invitation, I call it, that open space there, the connection between the, let's say, possible entertainment space on the first floor to outdoor, that people are already playing there, and being vibrant in a community, and you just are curious. What's going on there? You just kind of want to come in and, and get to know what this neighborhood is about. And when you follow, you know, kind of walking, let's say, you enter the neighborhood, and then we intentionally designed this building with, like, I call it zigzag jig, jig, jigjacks that little niches there. So you walk in, and the elevations is not in a one plane. This was done intentionally. So as a human walking, you're curious what's happening in the other niche of the space. And so there is a patio, and there are going to be restaurants there, and you're walking a little bit farther, and that's where you're entering, what Matt was saying, that the center place, that plaza, where you can spend your evening, Sunday with kids and play. And in regards to the elevation and exterior use of materials, we used all natural tones materials and trying to create this elegant elevation here. So in my next slide here, I just want to talk a little bit about sustainability. So first of all, like when I'm thinking about this neighborhood and planning of this, what is more sustainable, that walking in the space and using public transport? This is just itself, by itself, I think that's just number one point, what actually sells, you know, for the point of sustainability here, beside, you know, building, building the building and build the environment. So we're also going to incorporate a waste management program in We have a hotel component that sort of anchors the corner, creating some public space around it. We've really studied hard, sort of local neighborhood bike and ped connectivity, trying to understand peripheral connections and making sure we're connecting to those in different ways. Embracing a mix of transportation modes. And we've really, really tried to design the streets primarily as pedestrian. And so it really sort of reads as sort of this urban fabric of pedestrian-scale streets with nodes of public space sort of strung along it, hopefully. From a mobility point of view, we kind of see it as connecting gaps in that larger network. So you have bike lanes on Eisenhower for part of it. You have bike lanes on State Street. You have bike lanes to the north. This is really connecting that system together. And similarly with bus, local bus, and then future BRT, hopefully. And so Jeff mentioned the bus stops. Tom Erst, civil engineer, likes to call them the "super bus stops", which I think is really cool, because that's sort of illustrative of the commitment to transit on here. We're really sort of reaching out to it. Place-making, I think the idea here is that central space really is sort of a living room of the whole development. It reads like a plaza. It should read like a plaza. Cars are sort of allowed to drive through it politely. If a motorist feels slightly uncomfortable, that's probably good. But it really should be primarily pedestrian. It becomes amenity for daytime workers, future residents, and visitors alike. And again, I just think this team's commitment to the place-making, when we first started this, the developers said, "The architecture's important, but it's the space between the buildings that will make it amazing." And I just told them, "Nobody ever says that." So I'm really excited to work for you. We still are. Anna, do you want to talk about Gateway?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not going to take too much time. So again, Anna Anderson, I'm an architect on this project with Lord X. Sargent. We have an office downtown Detroit. I'm just going to talk really quickly of like a human perspective. Just imagine yourself driving by on the State Street, and I'm calling this like a gateway to our neighborhood. I'm going to call it neighborhood. And so imagine yourself driving and kind of seeing that entrance and the building and the connection, that invitation, I call it, that open space there, the connection between the, let's say, possible entertainment space on the first floor to outdoor, that people are already playing there, and being vibrant in a community. And you just are curious. What's going on there? You just kind of want to come in and get to know what this neighborhood is about. And when you follow, you know, kind of walking, let's say, you enter the neighborhood, and then we intentionally designed this building with, like, I call it zigzag jigjacks, that little niches there. So you walk in, and the elevations is not in a one plane. This was done intentionally. So as a human walking, you're curious what's happening in the other niche of the space. And so there is a patio, and there are going to be restaurants there. And you're walking a little bit farther, and that's where you're entering, what Matt was saying, that Center Place, that plaza, where you can spend your evening, Sunday, with kids and play. And in regards to the elevation and exterior use of materials, we used all natural tones, materials, and trying to create this elegant elevation here. So in my next slide here, I just want to talk a little bit about sustainability. So first of all, like when I'm thinking about this neighborhood and the planning of this, what is the more sustainable, that walking in the space and using public transport? This is just itself, by itself, I think that's just number-one point, what actually sells, you know, for the point of sustainability here. We sign, you know, building the building and build the environment. So we're also going to incorporate a waste management program in diverting demolition debris and selecting them. We are, so the multifamily buildings are using light-frame wood construction, which, as we know, wood is a carbon sequester. So we can say that we're using low-embited carbon materials. We also did analysis, and I don't know, I know that I don't have much time here, that's why I'm speeding. But we did so many analyses here to compare cold-form metal framing to wood framing, let's say, in this construction, and how much actually this is, you know, that the carbon is embodied in the material itself. As Jeff was saying, all-electric, multifamily units. And the one more thing I wanted to accentuate here is that Matt mentioned this here too, but we are using the bioretention cells in the streetscape. And we have very distinct storm management program in this neighborhood too. And also taking really, paying really careful attention to heat island effect. There's many more, but maybe my colleagues can hear. That was us.
We just want to make quick mention on the parking. There's a lot of talk because we're using parking structures. "Oh my God, there's so many parking spaces." No. There's not so many parking spaces. When you break it down and you consider the fact that there's already almost 1,500 spots there, we're only adding about 1,100 spots for over 1.2 million new square feet. We're actually super parking-efficient. I'm like the most parking-efficient you see in developments these days. So the team put together this little chart just to kind of give you a sense of it. They're basically talking two parking spots for every three units. So that is because it's a mixed-use development, because the parking is shared, daytime office, nighttime residential. So we're able to move it back and forth.
Thank you. Ted Hirsch with Midwestern Consulting. So I get the pleasure of following up all of that very inspiring and exciting talk with the really exciting stuff, utilities. So pretty straightforward for the site on that front. We do have the benefit of utilizing the existing infrastructure that's there. But in addition to that, we are improving it. Water main, for instance, creating the redundancy that systems planning always likes to see, creating all the looping mains and everything. Sanitary, we have a couple of connection points out to the existing public systems. One across Boardwalk over by the railroad, and then one to the south on Eisenhower. And then to touch on stormwater a little bit, Anna had mentioned, you know, a very dedicated and kind of thoughtful approach to the stormwater management, all in accordance with the county standards here. Really looking to maximize the sustainable aspects of that with infiltration where we can. There's not a ton of existing areas that promote infiltration, but where we did find it, we're incorporating it as much as possible into the design. So what replaces the existing acrid detention basins with no infiltration or really water quality management, other than, you know, these permanent pools, we're providing the underground systems, infiltration, the bioretention cells that Anna had mentioned, and utilizing that existing pond in the southeast corner for, and continuing to reduce that area that's draining there over the course of the phases and making that kind of fall in line with current standards, which it wouldn't currently meet. So I'll wrap it up with that and just say that we're all excited and eager to hear feedback and participate in further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn now to staff presentation with Planner DeLeo.
Thank you. My presentation is going to focus a little bit more on just the facts and figures of the site. We are, and I will loop back to it, we are recommending it be postponed. We are still, some departments are still reviewing the site plan, so it's not quite ready for an approval yet, although it is well on its way. This is a 23-and-a-half-acre site, northwest corner of State and Eisenhower. The, I think as clear though, the site is Zone TC1, Transit Corridor District. South State Street and east Eisenhower do have Transit Corridor street-type designations. Boardwalk Drive does not, as you can see on this concept development plan on the screen. Eisenhower's across the bottom, on the south side of the site. State Street is on the west side, and Boardwalk forms the east border of the site. Site is surrounded by office, light industrial, and commercial uses. There are multifamily homes located off-screen to the northwest and farther across the, even farther away toward the east. Site does have 12 landmark trees, and as the only example of natural features on it. The proposed site plan has 14 new buildings arranged in this downtown-style development around the two existing 777 and 789 Eisenhower Building. All other existing buildings or structures, which include a parking structure, some service parking lots, and a gas station, will be demolished and replaced with the proposed project. The construction and, or demolition and construction is planned in five phases. Access to and through the site is proposed by two "streets" in quotation marks. These have a total, between the existing and proposed, have a total of six connections to the adjacent public streets, and six is the maximum number permitted for the site. The streets on the map, or I should say, on the plan, are by definition vehicular use area. I explained a little bit. Public or private streets by definition provide access to lots or parcels. And then driveways and vehicular use areas provide access from the street to the building. So these are not public streets or private streets through here. This is a parking lot that has been designed to mimic streets. Ted Hirsch glamorously mentioned the stormwater management system for the site. The staff report goes into a little bit more detail about each phase. I'll keep it a little bit brief, but I am happy to answer follow-up questions. I will say that in Phase 1, which starts in the upper-right corner, which is the far northeast corner, starts with one apartment building with about 200 units, probably 209 units as proposed. Phase 2 is in the center-left or the west side of the site. It includes two apartment buildings for market-rate units and a parking structure. One apartment building, B1, has about 200 spaces. B3 has about 170 spaces. And the parking structure would have close to 800 spaces, maybe between 780 and 800. Phase 3 includes buildings labeled A. And there are five buildings in Phase 3, another parking structure, two residential buildings, one a market-rate apartments, two, the second one being residential condominiums, and then two of those orange jewel box commercial buildings. Phase 4 has the hotel that's in the bottom-left corner. That's the southwest corner. That hotel is slated to have about 150 rooms. Phase 5, the last phase, is on the east side of the site. And it has another apartment building, two apartments buildings, I should say, the final parking structure and the last restaurant, commercial building. Those two apartment buildings have about 100 and 200 units in them each and about 800 spaces in the parking structure. We have, collectively as city staff, we have reviewed the project for procedures and standards, which it has met all of the required procedures. I have listed in the staff report all the standards for review and approval. These are actually common, universal to any type of project. And I have listed them here. 12 different departments have been involved in our staff reviews, and their comments are summarized in the staff report. I think there are about eight of them that have recommended approval or conditional approval, and about four have outstanding items that need to be addressed or their reviews just need to be completed to confirm. But I will mention that also, just on Monday night, City Council passed a resolution committing participation in the Arbor South project by issuing bonds to finance the three parking structures and then owning and operating them as public structures. And so further revisions and reviews of the site plan beyond these noted in the staff report might be coming based on what the administrator works with the applicant and developer team. I'll be a little more specific regarding approved or conditionally-approved reviews. It has passed its sanitary modeling review, park planning review, planning department review, its building administration review, environmental notification, SCSC, which stands for Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Review, and GIS, which is the addressing plan review. Where reviews need to be completed or revisions are required are related to the fire review, urban forestry and natural resources, which is commonly known as the landscape plan review, public works, that focuses on their solid waste collection and storage system, and engineering and transportation engineering review. So for those reasons, staff is recommending it be postponed. We have suggested it could be postponed till June 17th. It could be postponed to any date, actually, but we are recommending June 17th. It could also be postponed without a date in that case, and that's fine. But we would need to re-advertise and redo the public hearing notices. So we would need about 20 days notice, 20 days to do that.
All right. We will move to the public hearing. So this will be an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes. And we will, let's see, we'll first hear from those who are present, then from remote participants. To speak remotely, press *9 if on phone, or use the race-hand Zoom and feature in Zoom. For phone access, call 877-853-5247 and enter the meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name for Zoom. You will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present in the chambers who would like to speak? On this site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I just had like two concerns. One, probably the primary one, is to do with the corridors along the project. I was wondering if there were plans for making that more pedestrian-friendly. I think I may have even seen some of you guys walking around on like Eisenhower. And I don't know if you guys have ever crossed it, but it's not like the funnest thing to do. And even just going along State Street can be, especially because there's a lot of those drives, it can be a little dangerous. So that's one of my concerns. And also Eisenhower has the, you have those like flashing lights to cross at certain intervals. I've always kind of had the issue, because I cross those daily, where you have like a double-threat scenario, where maybe one car stops for you, the guy behind him doesn't see, goes around, takes you out. So those are kind of my big concerns. Otherwise, you know, I like mixed development. I like seeing this density. And at first, I thought this was a PUD. I didn't realize you could do this with TC1. And then my second concern is more so to do with, in this case, it's small, but there are like, with other projects as well, some of these smaller businesses. And I worry that a lot of them have been like displaced, like Sushi Town and Jack's Hardware, and in this case, Shorma Shop. So I do kind of worry about whether or not the city has a plan for kind of helping maintain some of our local businesses without displacing them whenever we have new developments. Because I want the new developments, but if we could have some way to like preferentially or give them some kind of opportunity to be integrated into the new development, I don't know how practical that is, but it maybe could be something for the council to consider.
Could you please state your name and address?
Oh, yeah, sorry. My name's Elijah Savoy. And, address, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Where I'm at?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Hidden Valley Club Apartments, so that's 650.
Thank you, Chair Weiss, Planning Commission, Ken Garber, 28 Haverhill Court. A lot to like about this project. I like the density, too. Mr. Hartman mentioned that it's fully electrified. I'm not sure that's correct. The site plan narrative said that the condos would use gas. Not sure from that whether that's gas heat, gas appliances, or both. My question would be, why not go fully electrified through the whole project? But I'm mainly here to talk about parking. So, yeah, 2,600 parking spaces, mostly in the three parking decks. They'll serve 1,043 housing units, roughly 1,500 residents. So to start with, this project is designed to house many more cars than people. True, the parking also has to serve the two existing office buildings, a restaurant, 150-room hotel. PFM Group Consulting modeled parking demand for Crawford-Hoyne, but I question the results. For the offices alone, PFM put peak weekday demand at 1,344 spaces. This morning, I walked the site. At 9:00 a.m., by my count, there were fewer than 500 vehicles total in all the surface lots and the parking structure, the parking deck that's there now, which was mostly empty. So at the roughly 1,500 spaces now, it's really overparked already. So when Mr. Hartman talks about, "Well, we're really only adding 1,100 spaces to the existing 1,500 spaces," that's true. But the 1,500 spaces is, like I said, mostly unused now anyway. So we're really putting in, I think, a lot of unnecessary parking. Again, end of one, one morning. But I think that PFM should go from using a standard model, which they're doing now, to using an experience-based model and actually looking at what parking is being used on that site before making a projection on what's going to be used in the future. And of course, as Mr. Hartman said, a lot of the parking is shared. So bottom line, the site plan has way too much parking, especially for TC1. Now, the existing parking structure, my understanding, based on the phasing, will remain until 2029 or so, when the third phase will be constructed. Then it'll be demolished and it'll be replaced by the third parking structure, which is C2 in your diagram, 800 spaces. So what I would like to see is, in this site plan, C2... I get more time?
Just finish your sentence.
I would like to see C2 removed, green space put in there, and if necessary, the petition can come back in 2029, if at that time parking is deemed necessary with a plan for a parking structure at that site. I don't think it's needed now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber.
Hi, my name's Kathy Chow. I'm at 2907 Woodshire Court. I work at one of the office buildings mentioned in this plan, and I also live in a residential area near this site. I wanted to voice my support for this plan. I really commend the desire to transform and underutilize space and create more points of attraction nearby. I was really gutted when the George, for example, was not able to get any of the retail spaces created, because it's always great to have more business around where I live that is walkable. Currently, my home is considered bikeable but not walkable due to it being a long way to get to many places. Right now, at the current site, I see it every day. There's a lot of parking... Right now, at the current site, I see it every day, there's a lot of parking spots that are unused. A lot of places, as mentioned, this area is very industrial, it's hard to walk around, so I'm hoping that the high density will help with that. It can be very scary as pedestrian to walk around, and a lot of people in our office building will drive their car just to get across State Street to go to the businesses over there. So I'm happy to see that there will be, there potentially will be more business around, and a greater and nicer area to walk around. I also share the concern about local businesses. To make sure that local businesses are able to come and also be retained as well, I noticed that a lot of the businesses are in the central area, which is not visible from the street front. A lot of businesses will want street front, and similar to the George, where they said that their businesses were set into the road and were undesirable to place a business. It would be nice if it's considered to have the business have more advertising space street front, so that we can continue bringing, or we can bring more business into the actual site, and that it's visible. Because, yes, similarly, I think local businesses can drive the personality of this town and contribute to its vitality, as well as having higher density and more people living there. And also, just because someone else said it, but Tuesday is the highest count day, so if you were to count for our office, or just one of the ones over there, the parking amount on a Tuesday, what was seen today was probably the highest for the week. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak that's in the chamber? Seeing none, do we have any online participants?
We do. Lisa Devens, you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission. Ms. Devens, you can address the Planning Commission for three minutes.
Mr. Leonard, before you call the next person, it's seven o'clock, so if people did not know, we started at 5:30, they may be thinking we're starting with public comment, which we are not. We are discussing the Arbor South site plan during its public hearing right now. So if you do wish to speak about that, you can raise your hand on Zoom, and Mr. Leonard will recognize you and permit you to speak for three minutes.
Lisa Devens, you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission. Sorry, I'm not able to hear you. Let me try another caller, and I will come back to you. Erica Van Titch, you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Important to protect the city's finances into the future, because there is a little bit of risk involved. So if that, that certainly sounds like it means phasing of whatever parking structures that we will be developing, but also, I would very much urge and base my own support of the project on whether or not there are special assessment districts to help finance things should the project not go as we all hope it will.
Caller with the phone number ending with 534, you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Hello again, this is Tom Stalberg, 1202 Traver Street. I think this is a good location for this type of development. I'd like you to compare it to another development several years ago, that was touted as the largest private development since Briarwood. That was morning-sized lower-town development, now called Beadman on Broadway. I want to remind people what happened there. The developer came to market at double the rent he said he would. I am not accusing this current developer of anything like that, but when we evaluate public participation in our finances, in order to make a project quote-unquote pencil out, let's remember, that developer said, he couldn't provide what the comprehensive plan for the other site called for, because he couldn't make it pencil out, and came to market at double the rents. We subsidized him to a great deal at that other location, waiving $9 million in affordable housing, or 93 units on-site, in an inappropriate manner, for a developer that came to market double the rents he said he would. So this is a great project here to evaluate. When it comes time for us to pay for it, to take risks for it, I'm not in favor of us doing that just so a developer can pencil out.
No other callers, Chair Waish.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. So with that, I will read the proposed motion. The Planning Commission moves to postpone to the Commission's June 17, 2025 regular meeting for additional time to complete staff reviews, and for the applicant to address unresolved issues. Moved by Commissioner Hammerschmidt, seconded by Councilmember Dish. We are in discussion. Who would like to kick us off? Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Thank you. I love this project. You call this area a gateway to Ann Arbor, and I totally agree. I think this is where we should be building a development like this. I shouldn't be on social media, but I saw a thread on Reddit about this project, and it compared the plan to the Domain in Austin, like it was a bad thing. It called it soulless, the Domain. I haven't lived in Austin for over 10 years now, so maybe the Domain is soulless now, but I lived there when the Domain was first being built, and it opened, and if this, if Arbor South is anything like that, it's going to be incredibly popular, have a ton of energy, and be sort of what the Domain branded itself as a downtown continued. When I first moved back here, so Simon developed the Domain, and I kept saying like, this is what Briarwood should be doing, as a fellow Simon property. But I'm glad you're doing it, and I'm glad you're doing it where you're doing it. And hopefully, this will inspire Briarwood to do more of what they're starting to do. I love that you're integrating the existing buildings, not just scraping the site. Love the attention to the space between buildings. I have just a couple of questions, I think, at this point. You answered my question about the affordable building, partnership with the Housing Commission, that's great, over 200 units, that's amazing. Parking, so we've heard tonight, over the past several weeks, in the context of the comprehensive plan, that because we eliminated parking minimums, developers are just not going to do any parking, there's going to be all kinds of parking problems, but clearly, you're looking at doing a major project without the benefit of parking minimums, and you're still doing parking. So can you talk a little bit about how you came up with the right balance? And also, is it unbundled from the rental units of the condos, or how are you allocating it to, or is it just kind of like a first-come, first-served situation for people that live there? Yeah?
Sorry, you got to coach me through this, I'm a little...
No, you're good.
I wanted to answer all their questions too, because they asked some good questions, but I wrote notes, so they...
We'll probably ask them...
We will prompt those questions.
So the parking structures, just running down roughly 2,600. It starts with, we have an obligation to the office buildings. We have to provide the numbers that are basically currently there, by the leases, we have to provide those numbers. Yes, they're not, the lots are not full yet, there's still a lot of businesses doing work from home. But those buildings, 789 buildings, 100% occupied, 777s, 95% occupied. They're full, they're committed, they're committed for the long term. So we still have that obligation to provide those spaces, but if we provided the parking for the office buildings on top of, say, one spot per unit, you're already hitting the number, but we still have, and we're actually thinking it's probably going to be closer to 100,000 feet of retail, and even just doing three spots per thousand, right? So now you're at roughly another 300. The hotel, one spot per key, okay? So when you add it all up, we're, we would like to have minimal parking, we're trying to encourage walkability, but we can't not have parking either. No one is going to want to live somewhere where there, there's literally nowhere to park at all, because this is still Michigan, and we still have to get our groceries, and it was just reality. And then, of course, we have to make sure we take care of the office buildings, have to make it convenient enough for the businesses that are to come, whether they're out-of-town businesses or local, they're going to rely on people from outside of the neighborhood too. We want to make it convenient for those people, I'm thinking of people that live in Georgetown, for example, easily walkable, bikeable, but not everyone's going to come from there. People are going to come from Celine, Chelsea, south of town, the freeway's right there, so it's really convenient. They're going to have to park. So that's the math behind it.
Thank you. And then, just one more question right now about open space, park space on-site, I saw you're doing a parkland contribution, but can you talk a little bit about any sort of, is it private, is there some private open space? I saw some in front of Building B3, did something happen with the courtyards in between the buildings?
So that space right in front of B3, it's approximately 1.7 acres, that's, we're calling it like public park, right? Yeah. I mean, that's, that's for anyone.
Great.
And then, of course, it opens up to the larger area, which, as we've mentioned, can be closed down for larger events, but that park is a permanent park for anyone.
It doesn't look that big on the map, so wow, 1.7, no, it's great. I mean, it's, it's hard to tell scale from.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big project.
Yeah. It is, I'm very excited about it. Seven years, you said, in the making to get to here?
Yeah, well, actually, more like probably eight since we first started thinking about it.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner, excuse me, Councilmember Dish.
Either one is fine. So I wanted to make a couple of comments, actually, don't, I don't think I have a question from the presentation, but I wanted to just underscore a couple of points that I'm not sure fully came through from the presentation, because it was rushed, but I did want to note that normally, as we know, on this body, we have to choose between a payment in lieu and provision of actual units, when we are dealing with an affordable component of a project. And this project is not only providing more affordable units than it is required to provide for a Brownfield project, which there is a requirement, so it is, it is providing 25% more than it needs to. Is that the right number? You can correct me from the floor.
800 market rate, and then another 25% to get to 1,000, that's the 200 units.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So depending on how you look at the ratios, some will call it 20%, some will call it 25%.
So that is more than is required in the Brownfield-Tiff agreement, and, but the thing to know is that the developer proposes to build those units, which means that they will carry the construction loan, and until the city purchases these units, which will be bonded and done through the millage money, that the loan for the actual, I mean, that other loan will be held by, the mortgage loan will be held by the developer. That won't be long, but still. And roughly, that contribution comes in at around 10 million, I think, is what I've heard.
A little more.
And, yes, we're...
A little more.
A little bit more than that, okay, we can, you can, I'd love to hear exactly. I know this project is a moving target, and so are the numbers that I have had in previous conversations, but I feel like I'm in the weeds here, but for those of you here at the table, it is a double bonus. We are getting the equivalent of a payment in lieu, these, the construction of these units is being financed at a lower rate than the Ann Arbor Housing Commission could finance them, because it's part of the entire project, and that whole, the whole financing period is taken care of by the developer. So that is pretty amazing, that we are getting both units on-site and a payment, which, while it is not going into the Affordable Housing Fund in the same way that we usually think of that payment in lieu, it is an extra payment on top of the provision of the units. And so this is, this is something, and this is also more units than we have, more units at once than we have done so far, right? We are right now achieving 63 units with the Affordable Housing Millage in Carytown in Dunbar, yes, Dunbar Tower. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, thank you for reminding me. We are now achieving 63 units in Carytown, and we are looking forward, I just heard, to 300 units next to Blake Transit. But those are a ways off, but that project had been 150 to, 100 to 150 affordable, paired with market, it's going to be all affordable now, 300, but you're going to beat them. But you're starting a trend where we're learning how to produce these in bulk. Jennifer Hall came to our coffee hour last night and explained that. So this is an incredible boost for our chipping away at the affordable housing goals that we have, and it's a model for how to do a public-private partnership to produce affordable housing. And so for me, this is not just the realization of our first TC1 project, which we've all been waiting for, but it is a new model for achieving affordable housing, and that makes it very exciting to me.
Thank you. Commissioner Wetherby.
So just a couple thoughts, I want to continue on that of this. I had assumed when it said affordable housing, and there was no number next to it, that it was going to be the minimum possible, and so 60% was something I was really happy to see. So I think this is legitimate affordable housing that we need, and I appreciate that. A couple other things, so if you say fully electric, mean it, because we trust Mr. Garber to come up and say, you know, it's only fully electric on this one building, in this one condition, and so, you know, you need to do what you need to do, but it is definitely, you know, I get happy when somebody says fully electric, and then it's really disappointing when it's like, fully electric, except for, we've had situations, except for gas, and, you know, except for heating and cooking. Well, okay, you know, but, but be honest about the fully electric, because it does change the equation, and, you know, fully electric, and Mr. Garber comes up and says, yes, absolutely, it is fully electric, that's awesome. It may not be possible, but, but the, the more realistic you are about that, the better, the happier I am personally. Somebody mentioned the ability to cross State and Eisenhower, I know that's not really in your, that that's a discussion with the city and the project, and, but the more pedestrian connections we can do, the better, and I know that you would want that also. I have a little bit of experience in, on this site, in that my husband's office, well, office is there, and he only goes maybe once every six weeks, and I always get two texts from him. And one is, he rides his bike, and there is no bike parking. And he always sends me a rant, you know, 20 minutes after he's supposed to be there, of like, there's no place to park my bike, I had to take it in, I'm wandering around with other people with their bikes, there's nothing, you know? So like, right now, the existing conditions, really bad on that. So if you are going to do pedestrian and bike parking and want that right now, you're not, it's not good. The other thing he always sends me is a picture from above of the sea of empty parking. And so I, anything that we can do to not do the parking is great, but I understand that market forces are market forces, and cars are cars, and... And but anything you could do to prevent more unparked parking would be great. And I assume that it's expensive and you would like to do that too. So. And I think that is, I think other things that people mentioned really good about, you know, various sustainability aspects and bringing business into the internal retail. And that's something I'm sure you've thought a lot about. But that, I'm also on the Zoning Board of Appeals, so things that go within the existing sign ordinances because we don't want to see you all the time saying, well, what about 200 feet here and 100 feet here and extra signage here? So just something to think about.
Commissioner Mills.
I want to actually ask, just to make sure that I understand about the electrification. So what is all electric and what is not all electric?
So I apologize, Commissioner Wetherby, if I wasn't clear earlier. I appreciate Ken pointing things out. What I said in the beginning, and I wasn't trying to be unclear, the 1,000 units of multifamily are all electric. Ground floor retail, I go back and forth with Missy on this frequently. She wants to convince us that we'll bring in Michelin-starred restaurants. And I believe her. I said, bring somebody in that will lease ground floor restaurant space with electricity only. And it's hard. If you ask most restaurateurs around here, they're going to say they need gas. The condos, the 30 condos, I understand for that market is it's very difficult to sell condos like that without gas also. So when we talk about electrification, we are talking 1,000 units, which is the vast majority of the development. We are not talking all the restaurants. Granted, there's going to be some retailers that don't require it and they'll be also electrified. But also, gas generators, they're the most reliable right now. We've talked about can we use battery backups for the power systems? There's just, it's just not the same as using the gas-fired generator. Is that thing going to be running all the time? No. I mean, it's only when there's a power failure. I don't want to get into that though. But yeah, we are sincere when we say 1,000. It's the affordable piece and the market rate piece, all electric.
And the commercial space or the retail space and the condos? Is the heating electric or is the heating also gas? The like, you know, this conditioned space? I understand for the appliances, right? But I'm just curious about what you're doing on HVAC.
That's a great question. Andy Andre with Oxford Companies. What we've done is we have electrified everything that we can. So from the heating and cooling perspective, we've gone with electric. The gas is really there for cooking and those type of uses. And as Jeff had mentioned, the reliability of gas when it comes to emergency generators, that's life safety. And so we know that's a proven technology. And the infrequency in which we anticipated happening is not even a use until it happens. So while we disclose that we have all that, it's really not a component to it. So the heating and cooling is electric throughout.
Okay. So someday when we do get the Michelin stars, like if it's just for cooking, right? That's easy enough to be done with and have a better backup. I understand the, so those are the two, those are the two uses? Just to make sure that I'm clear on that?
Yeah, we've been working pretty diligently to make sure that we have the power capacity in order to support the development. So it's been a year plus working with the utility company in order to make sure that we have that. And so it's, while everybody I'm sure is aware of the push and pull sometimes of doing that, we feel very comfortable where we're at. And we're also, when you look at the plan, it is a master plan. And so we're master planning the utilities as a component to it as well. And we understand that electrification is a feature that really isn't optional. And so we have been planning that as part of the development all the way through.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Similarly, I want to follow up a little bit on the street crossing. And just, are, what is planned, if anything, beyond the kind of confines of that intersection? Like particularly, I'm thinking, you talk about the super bus station, which is awesome that it's right there. And I'm thinking coming back from town, right? Like it's, I don't know how close the stop is on the other side of State Street, for example. And like where folks are gonna cross.
Yeah, let me speak to that. I think, I think we're fortunate. If you look at the location where we are, we have great access to already existing public transportation. And again, that is something that we started probably going back about a year, maybe just more than a year ago, engaging the RIDE, AAA, as to here's our plan. As it evolved, we keep them, we keep them informed during the process. We have identified as part of the plan and you saw it in the presentation. We are looking to enhance the current stops that are there. If you go out and you look, it's just a post. Here it is, you know? It's not very attractive. Not to be selfish, it'd be nice to have something look really good right out in front of all these new buildings and this and new development. And so we, as part of, as Planner DeLeo had mentioned, recent resolution from City Council expanded upon not just the parking structures, but to also, to instruct administration to work with the development team on sustainability issues and also transportation. And so now we have that opportunity to expand, I think, a little bit more. So we talk about the super stops. What is that? That's really creating an enhanced location that goes along with the AAA plant that they have. And so there is a super stop, a route that's planned by AAA right through State Street. And so we'll work with them on looking to enhance the location that we already have identified, which is a current stop. And be able to, to be able to fold all those requirements that, what would make a super stop great? Really, it's not just shelter. It also is about enhanced accessibility at these locations because it can be a little bit challenging. We anticipate there being a high rider volume. And so we want to be able to expand these locations, not just as a stop, but as Jeff had mentioned, we see outside uses, coming to this area, maybe parking there and being able to take the rapid transit right downtown. And so being able to enhance all that is something that we're continuing to work on.
Okay, great. You talked about the super stops. So now I actually want to ask about the super block. And I think that is referring to the overall site rather than the blocks within. And I confess, I have been on planning commission long enough to know that we talked about, what is the appropriate size of the blocks? Where did we land on what the blocks are? And ideally, maybe, this is not a quiz for Ann Arbor, like put it in the downtown grid, but bonus points if you can say, it's like this block downtown. You're like, yeah, what is the walking experience going to be like?
I'll touch on it. And Jeff, I know he has some really good thoughts on this. Commissioner Mills, you can remember, we started on this a year ago in the first introduction. It's evolved, right? And so through that evolution, the super block refers to the existing location right now. And it's just, it's just like ugly. It just doesn't look good. It doesn't work, right? And so by breaking it down, when we started with the initial TC1 requirements, as you remember, kind of as a test fit, this project, we felt that there were improvements that could be done. And so working through Ordnance, ORC, and then continuing on, you know, we came here probably what, last May, June, to discuss this. And so we've evolved that into more manageable blocks that provide that pedestrian scale. That was the real goal, I think, is what it was when TC1 was started off, that pedestrian scale and being able to do that. We feel that we've really achieved that with this plan.
Okay. The site plan is gigantic and I think I almost broke my computer in downloading it. Do you know what the like, of your, not super blocks, but your inside blocks, like what the dimensions are overall?
320 to 340.
320 to 340. So we're talking more like the long block between, yeah? Do we know?
State and Division.
Yeah, State and Division. That's, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Is that?
Yeah, some of the, they range. Some of the blocks are as small as our ideal that here on Main, Washington Fourth. And some of them are a little bit bigger, like the, like the block we're on right now. But they, and so there's a little bit of a mix, but they're all, they meet within our, they met within our sort of ideal. And they meet with, each building meets our maximum diagonal dimension.
Okay.
When they came to the working session, there was, you had an overlay diagram. And I will try to make sure that's included, whether it be in the staff report or in just the presentation materials to put a visual, to put a visual with it.
That would be great. Because I'm just thinking, right? I really appreciate that you're talking about this as a neighborhood. You're establishing, right, a land pattern that maybe can move from there, right? Like establishing blocks that maybe someday with redevelopment will continue on across the street, right?
That's cool.
In lots of directions. And so understanding kind of what that looks and feels like so that the grid, the street grid can also evolve, I think is great. So thank you for that. I, final thing is, I really appreciate the affordable phase coming first. I think there's sometimes in gigantic, in large developments, right? We wonder, are we ever going to get to that final phase? And so knowing that the first phase is the affordable phase, I think is great. I hope that this whole thing gets built, right? And knowing that some of the components that pull things up to the street and all, and that our values come first, I think is really helpful. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nord.
I have a few questions too. First of all, I think building this kind of building on an empty parking lot is wonderful. With the, with the mix of housing types and such, and it's not going to create any of the single-family residential home problems that we're grappling with now, so that's awesome. And I do hope it does expand. There's so much vacant space in that part of town. And if it could create a pattern that could grow, that would be an awesome thing. I do wonder, Mr. Garber mentioned, why not just, if the parking, if the last phase is a parking deck, could you wait and see if you really need the parking deck? You may realize after you get through the first four phases that in fact, we don't need another parking deck. Is it possible to have that be a contingent thing on demand? I don't know that that needs to be answered today, but just to suggest, maybe that's something to think about.
Sure.
Another kind of minor question. I'm just curious about your experience building bioswells. Have you built them and have they worked in your prior development projects?
Sure. Oh, I love talking about bioswells. Yeah, so we do, you know, 15 years ago, they were sort of like a trial and error. And now they vary slightly by climate. But yeah, I mean, there's, we do, I would say 60 to 70% of the projects we work on, we do them in some form or fashion. The reality is, is they just, they don't really cost that much. It's not, it's not, they don't cost, they don't cost more, substantially more than like a catch basin would cost. And there are lots of different ways to do them. You can do an underdrain system. You can do an overflow drain. You can do them linearly. You can do them wide. They were, they're harder to do with trees, but you can do them with trees. There's some root things that you get going. And there are different depths that you can use for the infiltration. So I mean, I personally feel very comfortable with them. There is a level of maintenance with them. So we, but, but they're a great strategy.
Yeah, okay. I guess what I'm looking for is you've actually, this isn't the first time you're proposing to use them.
No.
And you know how to design them and they've worked for you in your former projects.
Yeah, and the first, the first few projects we did them with, with a firm, as a firm, I would say about 15 years ago, we really piloted them to see, does the underdrain work better or does the overflow work better? And what's the depth of the stone and what's the size of the stone? And do you use filter fabric? Do you not use filter fabric? You know, and so we, I think we've sort of truthed out a lot of those.
Got it figured out.
If that.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
Anything you would add to that?
No, I agree with all of you.
Okay.
Okay, good. I have a little bit more philosophical question, maybe for you. We've been hearing, we've been hearing a lot about people unhappy with the Beekman and how expensive it is and like George and how it didn't produce what it was promising to produce. And all the commercial space downtown that's not actually got any commercial stuff going on in it. And we should expect that developers are working out the market and expect to be able to produce what they want to produce. But people keep pointing out to us examples of where that's not happening. And I'm wondering, are you comfortable that you're actually going to be able to fill your commercial spaces like you think you are? And you're going to be able to rent apartments out that aren't supermarket, you know, ultra-expensive and aren't meeting the demand? Have you, have you really done that work? And so this is a philosophical question, but I just want to get your sense of
Sure.
how you're thinking about that.
We've spent a lot of time studying it. We, Axford is the largest manager of downtown spaces. And up until just recently, we're actually full. We've been full historically. We're full mostly through COVID. We've almost always been full. People see a vacancy downtown. They see a restaurant that's been around for 35 years closed. And all of a sudden, it's like, oh my God, there's all this vacancy. It's not really the case. There's tremendous demand for our downtown. It's a little tougher on restaurants these days because the office space is not well-occupied downtown. I'd love to get all my friends at the city to come back to the office five days a week. I know it's not a reality. I know, and I'm glad you're here. But the truth is, U of M is the same way, right? A lot of people are working from home. So that's a little tougher on the retail environment. Downtown doesn't have a lot of housing, though. I think the entire DDA is only about 3,000 units. We're putting 1,000 in just a few blocks. So we already have this mass of people to cater to that retail, along with everybody around. Comparing it to the George, not really fair. If you recall, what used to be there was the Krogers, the old Georgetown mall. That was a full level below the street, terrible for retail. I can tell you that from experience. When I was in my twenties, I managed it. So I remember really well, it was not a well-designed retail mall. This place is designed like Bridge Park. And it was, there's an interesting comment about being on the street versus not being on the street. And it's a fair comment. When they designed Bridge Park, they thought the main drive would be what was most popular. So it turns out, everybody wanted to be inside because that's where it's walkable. So we're learning the lessons from them. All the, all the pain they went through, they're basically, all everything they've worked out, they're bringing that here to Ann Arbor and duplicating what's worked. So that's to the retail piece. To the apartments, I think everyone here is pretty confident when you have, I think it was 7,000 applications for 20 affordable units. We're confident the affordable will rent out. As far as the market rate, again, we're creating something that doesn't exist in Ann Arbor. This is a walkable environment, like as if we are downtown. We can't match the, our wonderful downtown. There's way too much character. It's, there's just too many interesting things. But we can try to take a lot of the elements that people really like, walkable restaurants, other places of entertainment, and then roughly five stories of housing right above. Again, we don't have that downtown. We're creating that mix, which is what makes it so interesting to people where people want to live. And of course, you have all the other benefits, convenient parking, be able to jump on the freeway if maybe you don't actually work in Ann Arbor. Or if you do work in Ann Arbor, you maybe work close by, you can jump on the bus, the stop is right there. Or you could even bike to where you want to go. So we're trying to accommodate all of those things. And I think if you look at a development like Bridge Park, you'll see that it's proven. Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abrams.
Thank you. I'll echo the comments of enthusiasm for the project. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Kerblis Shared Street, maybe, sorry, I forget your name, but from Lord Ecken Sargent. This is, I think, for you, yeah?
Sure.
Remind me your name?
Matt.
Matt, okay. You talked about how it would be uncomfortable to drive through there. And I guess I want to maybe hear a little bit about the rationale for not just closing that completely to vehicles. When I look at the site plan and I think about trying to get to the parking structures for like B3 or C1, C3, it kind of makes sense that you would use the northern. for like B3 or C1, C3, it's, it kind of makes sense that you would use the northern, not street vehicular use area cut through, right? And if you're going to the A part of the site, it just feels like you could access everything really conveniently and have that closed. So maybe, could you close it, or I'm sure you thought about it, or could, are there, is there infrastructure for it to be open sometimes and closed other times with bollards or something like that?
Um, for the rest of the team, feel free to jump in and help me answer this, but I'll try to answer it. So, um, it's a great question. Um, uh, I think, so my personal opinion is, I, I have somebody who bikes to work every day, I'm a very avid pike pet person, micro mobility person, and I still believe that streets where mix, where cars and pedestrians and bikes mix are better. Um, because the, the, the thing is, is, I, with a street like that, I don't think that there is a situation where it's totally closed, because you're going to have to have an, an emergency vehicle to get through it anyway. So it's really just a question of what threshold is it closed? Is it closed 90% of the time? Is it closed 95% of the time? Is it closed 10% of the time? So, to me, there's a gradient. I, I would advocate for designing it as a pedestrian space that vehicles can get through, as in, I, I think I said invited guests, I like the way that feels. And I think that for it to be an effective space, I think you, if you're a motorist and you're driving through it, you should feel slightly uncomfortable. You should, you should slow way down and feel, and be very aware of what's going on. If, is that, makes sense?
Not, not to me, but maybe others can help me. I mean, I think, I, there's, of course, there's like emergency vehicle access, there are ways to accommodate that. That feels separate than a resident trying to get to C3, cutting through there as opposed to using the northern access road or cut through.
I like the idea of being able to make it pedestrian only. Um, it might be at some point in the future, we can figure out how to make that work. I think what, what Matt was saying is, we're, it's not even so much making it uncomfortable for the driver, it's giving the driver less reason to want to drive through there.
Yeah.
So as you observed, parking structures are located closer to the main routes, so that if you need to get to a structure to park, you don't need, you don't need to go through there. You can get to those structures from any other place. As far as the ability to get through there, though, that's something we, we're going to have to think about.
Yeah, we, we, I mean, I don't expect you to agree with me on the spot, but let me just say, I mean, I think it's, it's like, uh, two sides of the same coin, right? So, we could talk about Main Street downtown being also a place I would never drive through, because who wants to deal with the traffic in the back end, right? I would always go around if I needed to go. However, we also, I think probably can agree that it's much nicer in the summer when it's actually closed to automobiles completely. So, and I think that for pedestrian safety, bike safety, people with strollers, all the, all the mobility, and I also, it would be better for it to be closed. And I also noticed that the kind of images you showed in the slideshow, um, on the placemaking slide, there are no visible automobiles in any of those images, there's just people. So, just think about it. It's also, you know, it's just a comment, it's not, I mean, yeah, just a thought.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to jump in here, because this is my comment, so please stay. Um, so the, the first thing is, um, you, we are calling these vehicular access drives?
Use areas.
Use areas? Sorry. Okay. Who sets the speed limit for these vehicular use areas?
You, you can call them streets.
No, no, you were very clear to tell us they weren't streets, I would be obedient.
Well, you can call them streets with a lowercase s. I'm just saying for, for regulation, for regulation purposes, um, and for landscaping requirements, they are vehicular use areas, but you, you can call them a street if you like the street. Um, uh, the developer can set the, um, speed limits. Now, they can, I believe, I am a little bit outside of my wheelhouse, they can consult with, um, traffic manuals and traffic engineers, um, but they can set the speed limit. I will also say, following a little, I wanted to jump in, I could not help myself. In earlier presentations from this team, um, they had emphasized how they had designed the project so that, um, that Main Street could be closed, and yet still, a cross access can still be maintained to all of the parking structures, to all the residential buildings, the commercial deliveries and so forth. I think their intention is to close them frequently and often. Every single time there is an event, there would not be through traffic during the event, and operate it very similar to Main Street. I think there might be hours and maybe days, upon days where the, that Main Street would be closed, but when there is no event, maybe in the off-season, uh, maybe the street would be open. So I don't think when they're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, they were planning on closing the streets to vehicular use during an event, but they have the ability to keep it open when there's no event.
Did you want to comment? Okay. All right, so I would love to say, please close it, like completely, utterly, like get rid of it, there's just no reason to have cars go through it. Uh, we know how to deal with emergency vehicles. Put retractable bollards, uh, at those entrances, raise the crosswalks so that if you ignore our feedback, uh, the cars recognize that they are changing the topology of the road so that they're entering into a pedestrian space. So, we love going to places that are really designed, and you've talked a lot about design for pedestrians, like Americans love this, right? We travel abroad, we walk everywhere, we have these good, great experiences, and we're just like, and then we get here, and we talk about it as a 15-minute neighborhood, and everyone's like, oh no, you're going to take my car away. And so there's this disconnect between our actual experience and some distortion reality field that we enter into when we come back in. I recognize that we are in Michigan, I recognize that, um, we don't have the kinds of transportation that we want to make it easier for us to go car-free, or even car-light, but you are creating something that is going to survive you. And you get to lay a foundation, uh, for what is to come. So, as a pastor, I talk about it as a prophetic imagination. It imagines a reality that does not yet exist, but it lays the way for it so that we can bring that imagined space into people's lived experience. And so, um, don't cower or, you know, retreat from this opportunity to do something that may just be uncomfortable, but will achieve the goals that you talked about. And I think Commissioner Abrams articulated very well. The pictures you showed us, you didn't put vehicles in it. You've been talking about placemaking, and you've been talking about it being at a human scale. You've been talking about your streets being at a human scale, and yet you are giving so much deference to cars. And so if you can hear us, um, I would say, get rid of it completely, but if you refuse, which is your right, um, change the topology, lower the speed limits, put in retractable bollards, I mean, really good ones, so that people can't accidentally drive through because they hit the brake or the gas, and they meant to hit the brake, and now you're plowing into people. And you're seeing the university make these changes in the spaces around the stadium, where they're putting in these bollards. Uh, we see, uh, the protection of electrical equipment with bollards, right? We, we recognize that those things are, um, dangerous when cars interact with them, but we don't seem to give that same deference to the human that may be in those spaces. So, so that, that is a, a really important point that I, I wanted to just echo from Commissioner Abrams. Anyone else?
Thank you.
I have some other comments, but I want to make sure everyone else is able to... Go ahead. Yeah, you, you may.
Since you will be coming back to us in June or whatever date we agree on, um, I guess I want to go back to the gas versus electric. You can sell condos without gas, you can. People really like induction, so I really want to put in a plug for that. Um, and then, I, I really don't know what I'm talking about, I'm not an expert, but I'd love to see data on gas generators being more reliable than batteries, um, for life safety. It could be multifamily, I, I don't really have experience in that yet, but, um, if there is data to support that, I'd be interested in seeing that at some point, for my own personal, because we can't make you do anything. But think about this, especially because like, you're not building tomorrow, so like, technology's changing constantly.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to come back to the parking. So, uh, and you knew what I was going to talk about. Uh, it's, it's still too much parking. Um, Beakman came back to us after they built, and when they went, I think it was either their second or third phase, they realized how underparked they were. So they're right, they were right at your number, about point six, I think, but they had proposed more than that. Uh, since you are the property owner of that residential, or excuse me, the commercial space where those leases are, are there opportunities to renegotiate those leases to change the terms of the parking? Because it, it just is still a lot of, um, assets and resources that are being contributed to car storage. And, um, anytime we're, or I'm sitting at the table and I'm hearing about car storage versus either creating housing or more space for people, I'm going to advocate for the people in the housing over the car storage. And so, I just wanted to, uh, offer that to you again. I know you're hearing a lot from us, but you're also surrounded by a lot of parking. You're surrounded by seas of parking lots. And so the idea that they have to sit within the development, I understand what you're trying to achieve. I think there are other opportunities, uh, to, to park people, uh, to see if those are there. And then if someone could bring up the map of the site, I have some questions about the bus conversation that Commissioner Mills, um, started. I can't get to the table. Yeah, one of you, or if staff can bring it up, I don't know who's in charge of what.
Yeah, if I need to do something here, I can, just let me know. It's on our screen here.
Oh, it's here, but we can't see it on the map, so when I, or on the large screen, so when I talk about it, people won't know what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I think that is, um...
There we go, we got it.
Yes, CTN will flip over to...
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, the State Street busing piece, when you were talking about the superstop, the thing I'm concerned about, so I bike in this area, uh, pretty much every day that I go out biking. Uh, my kids are on Broad Walk because there's the Ariel Circus place that's down there, and they do, uh, that, so I'm, I'm in this area a lot, and I, and then Ballast, the school district administrative building is over there, so, uh, crossing state is horrible. Like, we all know that, in every imaginable way, it's horrible. So you're going to have people coming, um, on the bus, and they're going to get off the bus, but they're going to be on the west side of state, and they have to get to your development. What is the proposal to help with that?
Do you want to speak to the medians? Can you speak to the medians?
I will also say that this is exactly the conversation that, that it, these conversations are occurring now, and this week, and next week.
Okay. Is that to say, wait, and, and it'll get answered, or is, should we, should I continue here?
Um, I would, I am interested in what Mr. Anjay is, is going to report. I am also interested in your comments and your wish list and so on and so forth, but I will say that is part of the big picture conversation about the city signing on the dotted line for the parking structures. So one or all of the parking structures will then be used as a, I think they call it a mode shift or mode transfer point.
Okay.
And the city would be looking for specific design features that facilitate this mode transfer. We are also talking about if these are park and rides, or this is where you shift modes, then how do you get either from the site off, or how do you come off the site on? And these, I'm not sure if we have the final answers, but we, this, we are at the design level, and we are creating the wish list and then executing it as we speak, as part of the final decisions related to the parking structure. So I am interested, and I am taking notes, and I'm also interested in what may be the latest developments.
Before you answer, I would like to ask Planner DeLeo a question.
Oh, sure.
So then, is it possible for the bus to go into one of the structures?
So, I'm not sure.
To drop people off as opposed to these stops that were on the map that were outside of the development?
I do, my, my experience has been a bus would not enter the structure. They might literally be too large.
Okay.
However, they might go directly to the front door.
Okay. Now, so that, that's the direction of my question, is how are you going to get people off of the bus from the west side into the development and not get hit by a car?
Well, the Planner, Planner DeLeo, uh, really alluded to some of the evolution that we're going to be going through with the, the continuous discussion when it comes to transportation. So as, as part of the parking structures, as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're continuing to evolve our review of sustainability and transportation. Transportation, it's easy to talk about cars, it's easy to get vehicles in and out, but when we really look at it from the multimodal standpoint, and I think this diagram is, is a good one that represents it, is we are providing a lot more. So I, I think, um, you know, there was some discussion about existing spaces within the, um, there is no bike parking, there isn't within the existing. We have an opportunity, and you can see it as part of, as part of this diagram, all the different locations and the different varieties that we'll be providing. When it comes to, um, also, I, we've talked about this before, your familiarity with that area and your ability to bike through it. And so we also, if you look along Boardwalk, if you, if you come to Oak Brook, there is, it terminates, the bike lane terminates. We're providing that connectivity there. And so at this point, then, we have continuity between bike, and then we are also having an on-street connection on that Northern Drive as well. So we, we are looking at it like that. So when we say about the buses on the west side, that is, that is one of the areas I think that we're going to be focusing on. We have an opportunity to potentially look at maybe some medians there. Pedestrian crossing that offers, uh, safe crossing across State Street. Jeff, uh, uses the human Frogger analogy quite a bit. It feels that way, even if you're crossing, if you're crossing at the light, it can be difficult. And so we have the opportunity to provide some improvements, working with transportation, uh, working with staff, as we continue on, to have probably more effective pedestrian experience on those crossings, both at State and Eisenhower. It could be a median, it could be something else, but we definitely are in the midst of exploring that, and I'm sure as we, as we continue to move forward on the design, the, uh, as, as Planner DeLeo said, the wish list of items, we'll be addressing a lot of these issues that we're going forward, we're aware of them. We have, have a plan that we're going to be looking to continue to, uh, address these items, and when we come back to you in June, I'm sure all these things will be, will be there.
So you're saying, can you go back to the bus stop, because you talked a lot about the bikes? Thank you. But I'd like to focus on the bus. So it would be lovely if the bus could come into the development near B1, they could drop off there, they could take the left, and then they could go right back out, right? Because they could just do a, a circuit kind of thing, because it's really going to be hard, especially as you are imagining this being a second downtown. So if people are here for the game, and they go in, and then they come down state, and they're on the bus, they've got to cross, what is it? I think it's five lanes, at least five lanes of traffic. And so, anything to get them from the west into the development would be great.
Absolutely. And we, it, it, as I mentioned before, uh, AAA TA has been involved, we have some upcoming meetings of which they're going to be present. Uh, some of these items, as, as Planner DeLeo mentioned, will, will be brought up, and we'll see how, um, how we can best address these items.
All right. Did you want to say something?
I was going to say, uh, this has been studied quite a bit. Uh, going back to, I think, seven or eight years ago, there was a, the State Street Transportation Plan. And that is something we, we would love to see, in, in, working with the city, some of those visions realized. It includes that median that you're referencing, so that it is, it eliminates the human Frogger game getting across State Street. Uh, it, it would be right at the State Eisenhower, uh, on either side, right at the intersection, probably going down at least 100 feet.
Yeah. I mean, I think for me, uh, the earlier public commenter during the public hearing articulated it well. Uh, what winds up happening on the rapid flashing beacons is the cars that are closest to you, they can see you, they stop. The person who's behind has been driving, has been distracted, they don't know why people are stopped, they're like, why are you stopped in the middle of this road where it goes 40? I'm just going to swerve around you, and, oh, look, there I am. I almost got killed in a situation like that on Fuller. That was the exact thing that occurred. The person behind wasn't paying attention to the person who had stopped, and they smashed into the person stopped as I was coming in, and they would have pushed that person right into me. So like, I get that it's been looked at, it's been studied, but again, you're building something that we haven't seen, that can be a template, you can, um, be a pioneer in addition to all of the good work that you're doing. us in more safely, and really sort of actualizing your vision of this being this sort of placemaking, pedestrian-centric development. So, yay.
These are all great points, and these are the things that we're taking back as part with our development team and continuing to implement.
Great. I'm smiling behind my mask. Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to dispute any of the points. I think that what you're talking about is really important. I just, I want to remind the commission, one of the things that, one of the conversations we had with specifically the ride when we were talking about TC1 was the importance of bringing people to the transit routes as opposed to altering our land use that was going to drive transit to new places. And so when you're talking about routing transit off of the main routes, I just want to revisit that. It's not to say that I'm sitting here saying that that's not a good idea, but I, there, I think the first response to the ride is, we want to bring people to those transit routes. That's how we build successful routes. That works. I think what you're getting at is, that has to be safe, and it has to be functional in some way in order for that to be successful. So again, I don't want to say that it's not an option here, but I, that came up specifically when we were talking about the Briarwood area and the TC1 specifically. I don't know if other commissioners remember that was, that was a specific feedback we heard from them was, you know, it's not, it's not easy for us to just change a route always to go off of the spine. So just...
Thank you.
...from the Wayback Machine.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Oh, Commissioner Dish, and then I'll read the motion.
Yeah, just one very, two very quick points. My understanding was that the parking structures are going to phase in. I'm not trying to get us to Thursday, because there's still Wednesday. But that is true. So that if, I mean, would it be a possibility that not all the parking structures that are foreseen get built?
Eddie, yes, it's phased. It's phased, and we're going to see the first two, the A Block, B Block, happening pretty much together. All of that construction, while they're separate phases, will happen within just months of each other. The C Block, the one furthest to the east, that's actually open lot right now. Right next to it is the existing single-story structure. That structure's not able to take any more than what it's built, it's not built to take on more floors. So that's going to come down, the C building's going to be built there. And that structure to the east, that C structure, maybe it turns out we don't need as much parking, so we don't build as many floors. Hard to say. It may be that everyone starts to come back to the office, and the office buildings demand, you know, what they originally had intended. So, but yes, they will be phased.
Okay, got you. They will be phased, but C, it may not be an option to not build the C Block. It sounds like the C Block will probably be needed regardless. Yeah. Okay. And then I just wanted to thank you for embracing council's resolution to ask you to consider transportation outside the development as well as inside. It's lovely that you made a reference to the fact that council passed that. I didn't vote for it, but I'm really happy that you see it as an invitation to keep evolving this project. So the reason I didn't vote for it is because on this body, we had a talk when we, when we were designing TC1, and we thought about how many things we should pack into it, and at what point would we have packed so much into it that we would realize nothing. And so I felt squeamish about that resolution, but I'm really happy that you receive it in this open spirit of experimentation. That is really cheerful news. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll read the motion. The Planning Commission moves to postpone to the commission's June 17 regular meeting for additional time for the petitioner to complete staff reviews and the applicant to address unresolved issues. It's already been moved, it's already been seconded. Are we ready for a vote? I'm sorry, Commissioner Mills, go ahead.
I just want to make sure from the development team that that seems like the right date to you all. If we're going to postpone to a date certain, that that seems... Okay. All right, great. Then I'm ready to vote.
Can we, do we have to do a roll call, because it's just a postponement?
Voice vote.
Great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. We will recess for five minutes and return at 8:08.
We now move on to 9B, the comp plan review of chapters one through three. I understand we have a staff presentation by Mr. Leonard.
Not really.
Great.
So, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle here, but as we discussed, it's time. It's time to start getting your thoughts, your feedback. Generally, Michelle's going to talk a little bit about how to approach this and we can adapt as we go and as we learn the best methods for it. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle.
Good evening, commissioners. The draft is finally here. I hope you all had some time to read. Like you had requested, we are breaking down our next sessions by chapters of the comprehensive plan. So if the new planning commission schedule is approved later, we will tackle chapter four next meeting, chapter five, the following meeting, chapter six, and then we have one catch-all meeting at the end where we can return to any larger topics. So that leaves chapters one, two, and three for tonight, which sounds like a lot, but they are mainly background chapters. And the other sections have a full session dedicated to them because that's where we really get into the meat of the goals, the strategies, and the future land use map. So just a reminder, this is our first round of edits. We have scheduled in two more. So tonight, let's keep our edits on content. And if you see missing commas or things that need to be capitalized, we will get to that point, but not this evening. So yeah, share your comments with us or any questions that you have that we can take back and get answered for you if we don't have them this evening. I would like to also remind you that we had decided for this process that if we get to an area where we need more guidance, that we would do that by motion. So what we will do for items where we are feeling like there's consensus, Brett and I will, Brett or I, or the chair, I don't know how we want to do this, will summarize what we've heard and maybe just do an informal vote to see, are we getting this correct? If we feel like it needs more discussion or we need more guidance, maybe that is where we can postpone, we have an extra session, or we can go by motion.
Okay. Can I clarify? So for me, it would be helpful if someone is holding the set of changes. So if we are doing like strike-throughs or things like that, how do you want to receive those? So that, because the way I was going to propose we talk is, I don't think it's going to work for me to try to recognize all of you, so I would just say, open your mics, and then we start to work through it section by section as we make our way. But, so someone proposes that we strike a whole paragraph. How are we going to lodge that kind of feedback? How are you going to receive that? How do you want to receive that?
That seems substantial enough for me where I would at least want to take a straw vote.
Okay.
And then if there isn't a majority, that maybe we make a motion.
Okay. And then smaller changes, we'll just keep a running list of those smaller changes. So strike this word, replace it with this word.
I think so, for now.
Move this paragraph up.
Yes.
Get rid of this paragraph.
Correct.
Is that okay with the table? Dan?
I was going to say something.
Go ahead.
Well, I have one more bullet point, and then I'd like to turn it over to you all.
Sorry.
So I have prepared some questions. I think that was another request from you all. So we have about six questions that we can use to get us through the material. But with that, I will turn it over to the commissioners first for your initial thoughts, and I'll let you start with the topics you'd like to decide. And if we need to turn to our questions, we will. And we will likely want to make time for them just because we have identified them as areas where we would like your input. But we might get there on our own first with your comments.
All right. So we'll start with you, Dan, and then, excuse me, Commissioner Adams, and then Commissioner Norton, and then we'll, oh, sorry, I'm just trying to just make sure the table's okay. And Commissioner Adams had a comment, so that's what I'm looking at first, is the table.
Not a comment, procedure, it's a comment on substance. So if you want to.
All right, let's do procedure before substance. All right. So we'll start with Mills, then we'll go to Norton. Is that okay?
I'm just curious if it's helpful to go page by page.
I mean, we can. Just to say we've looked at it and we move on, yes.
Exactly, yeah. So that we, I think it might be more efficient than hopping around. Okay.
I'm okay with that. Commissioner Norton.
Well, I'm wondering, Howard.
Can you bring your mic, like, almost like you're going to put it inside your mouth? Just bring it as close as you can, please.
Hello, hello.
Thank you.
I'm wondering how we're going to deal with all of the public comments we've been getting that I'm just now starting to work through, and there's a lot of public comments there. And I'm really uncomfortable tonight, seeing that we're going to walk through page by page, chapters one through three, and be done, without having processed all of the things we're hearing. And I'm also a little bit uncomfortable with us line-editing as a commission this draft. I don't think that, I think it's a very clunky way to do this. So is somebody going to consolidate in a meaningful way? It would be helpful if some, I'm looking at the staff. Take all of the comments we're getting and pull out the themes. There's some pretty specific detailed comments here that we ought to probably acknowledge, at least, if not respond to. How is that going to happen?
That's a good question. We do continue to receive emails, and we are saving all of them. And that is probably a discussion that we could have. We've had conversations about to what level do we want to catalog all of those comments, like in an appendix of the plan? Or that we can continue to draw from them like we have here. You'll notice, I don't know the exact spread, but there is a page here that we will get to in chapter three that talks about what the major takeaways are. I would say, in my experience from receiving most of these emails, I don't think new, brand-new topics are being brought to us.
I suspect that's true. I'm guessing you can boil a lot of these comments down to some pretty general, some pretty important themes that we need to address. But it would be nice, before we sign off on things, that we kind of systematically work through those comments and have a sense of what's the thrust of what people are saying so that we can deliberate on them. And I'd rather do that before we start making changes than to make all these changes and then just put the comments in an appendix without ever having really processed them. I'm probably mucking up your schedule already.
No, it's, well, we haven't decided to go in the direction that you are proposing, so let's go to this side of the table. Weatherby, I think, was first, if you will, Councilmember Dish, and then.
Yeah, so I had written down, I mean, I think some, one of the things I had about the messages that are coming in is, like, I had been kind of keeping pretty good track of which ones I had read. And then, like, today, when I'm looking at it, there's new ones, and I don't know which ones are new and which ones aren't. And I, having to, like, they don't come, they come in maybe alphabetically, I think. And so, like, it's hard to know which ones, and it's pages and pages and pages. So if there could somehow be some indication of, like, a one, two, three, or when they come in, or somehow so that we know which ones come in at any point, because trying to read them all, you know, I work usually till six, so trying to read them all in the nonexistent time between this message is tricky. So that's just one question. But I had, I have some comments on kind of the overall, and I don't know where.
We can do that once we figure out how we are going to approach it tonight, so I'll come back to you.
Okay.
If that's okay? And go to Commissioner Dish, and then we'll revisit the procedure. I have a thought.
Yeah, I just, I wanted a clarification, because I thought I heard Ms. Bennett say that we should not line-edit. That this is, we want to focus on content, we don't want to focus on the little bitty things.
Correct.
So, yep, that's good. Okay, so I heard that. I agree and support the idea that since one of the things we're hearing is, feedback is being given, but it's not going anywhere, I think it would be good, I don't think that that's actually correct. I think we're all thinking a lot about the feedback that we've received. I think that one of the reasons that council passed a resolution, or whatever, yeah, a resolution requesting, requesting that planning commission think, think again about the stories question. That's in evidence of that feedback is being taken in and being thought about. So, but I think that if we, I think it's important that we respond, but I have to say that while we did hear some things about the public comment process and about the concerns that not enough people knew and not enough people have participated, well, we could easily get 1,000 more people participating in the next, whatever it is, eight meetings that we have on this first draft that are scheduled right now, right? Someone, that was a number, that someone said, we need 1,000 more people to get involved or whatever. There's more than enough time, and this is only the first draft. There are two more drafts. So there's a lot of public comment time. Other than that, a lot of the comments are for chapter four, and we're not talking about chapter four tonight. So I don't know, you know, how much we want to.
Yep.
Yeah, address. I want to address the people who did the reading assignment and turned in their questions on the assigned pages.
So for my part, I think the way that I was thinking about this section is, this is the opportunity for us, as the planning commission, to give our feedback, which we have not yet given. And it is the case that the public is being engaged in three more public meetings where the public will give their feedback, which staff will synthesize and report back.
Correct.
And/or incorporate. So we are not ignoring any public comment. I read every single one of the communications that is attached to the agenda, including the meetings that I do not attend. So I read all 62 of the comments, and I, and I watched the meeting. And so I'm not feeling like I am not hearing what is being communicated. So from my point of view, I feel like this is an opportunity for us to start to comment on the document that we are supposed to author. And then there are inputs to this process that the public will officially come into with synthesized input, that you will say, hey, this is what we're hearing from the public, this is what you all said, they're at disagreement, how do we move forward with this? And then I think at those decision points, we will create either a straw poll or a motion to say, here's how we're going to resolve that. I don't know if that satisfies the concern that you initially articulated, but that was sort of how I was thinking of our time tonight.
I'm fine with that, as long as it's clear. We're making initial comments, but all of this can be revisited and should be revisited. And it would be really helpful, I know it's a little bit more work, I'm thinking of, in my professional work doing environmental planning, we would generate response to comment documents that would kind of tabulate all the comments that we're getting by themes, so that would kind of get away from having, I mean, you could have all the original comments, but you could organize them a little bit, too, to get a better sense of what's coming in. It would be helpful. And I know that we ended up doing this all simultaneously, so it's kind of, everything's crunching at the same time. It would be helpful if you, if someone could spend a little bit of time, I'm kind of looking at you, to kind of help out with that kind of synthesis and tabulation, which would also be a nice document to put at the back, too.
Yes. So I think we can revisit that when we get to the section here about vision and values. There is a high-level takeaway from everything we've heard at our organized, those are results from more of our organized engagement. You are right, with all of the public comment and emails, those are not, those have not yet been categorized in the same way. But we can maybe talk about as a group, if we feel like what we've heard, what is in the document is reflective of what we heard, and then, like Commissioner Chairman Weich said, we can do that again with the next round.
Okay. Is that satisfactory? Is everyone else okay on the table? Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Hamerschmidt? All right, Commissioner Adams.
Do you want to do a page flip? If we're doing a page flip, then my comment is out. Because I'm going to go straight to.
Oh, you want to go straight to yours as opposed to page. All right. So Commissioner Mills suggested that we just go page by page and start to gather, so.
Then you would overlook the comments.
Yes. All right. So I think we're going to start with page by page and see how that flows. We can do a 15-minute check to see if that's going okay, or if we want to make an adjustment. And then Commissioner Weatherby, you had a, I didn't understand the nature of your earlier comment, so if you could explain that again before we get started.
So I just have some overall comments.
So not related to specifically chapters one, two, and three, but the whole plan?
Well, some, yes. I mean, yes. Yeah.
All right. So we'll just let you, we'll just let you say what you want to say.
Like, that's just easier.
And then we'll get into.
Stop me at any point?
Can we give her three minutes?
This is, yeah. This is perhaps, so one of the comments was, could we schedule weekend participation meeting, a meeting for participation on the weekend, not just in the afternoons? That was a comment that came in, in one of the emails that I thought would be good to surface. I don't need an answer. The next one, is the plan, including all images, accessible to people with vision issues? It would be helpful to be able to click on the images and maps to zoom in or have them available separately, because we put in things like, this is the first zoning code, but you can't actually read any of it. Or this is a map of X, and you can't actually read it. Should I just keep going?
Yes.
Also, having street names on the maps, I've already gotten some comments from people like, how do I know where my street is? And, you know, what, how do I know what's planned for me? And I think that having some sort of identifier or street names on the maps would be helpful. Process for when and how the plan will be updated in the future. So I realize, like, we're not there even close yet, but that that's a question so that people don't think that this is just what we have with no changes for 50 years. Definition of affordable housing, so general affordability and subsidized. It is hard to find the comp plan on our various city websites, surprisingly hard. If you, you can't type "comprehensive plan" in the Engage, it comes up with just the stormwater plans.
Yep.
You have to type "comprehensive land use plan" or just "comprehensive," but it doesn't come up, so it's a little hard. And the link from the, if you type in, if you Google, like, Ann Arbor comprehensive plan, the page that comes up, the link to the comprehensive plan comes back to that page and doesn't actually go to a spot that has the comp plan anywhere. And I have some links on that if, so like, A2Gov.org slash planning slash comprehensive dash plan doesn't have a link, it just leads back to that page. And gentle density by definition, that was another one that came up. And then something that one of the public speakers said of just the comic sans and the cartoons, the fonts in the cartoons do kind of make it seem somewhat less professional or less important. And I don't know if that's intentional, maybe we want that. But that is something that I had also noted. So those were just my, like, not related to anything in particular comments.
Okay. Yes, we will let you.
Basically, this is underscoring what Commissioner Weatherby just said, but if we could put a link, like, really bold on, like, the main A2Gov homepage, because earlier when you were like, oh, it's on the Engage page, and I was like, I don't remember how to get to any of this, but I remember how to get to A2Gov.org. So I don't know if we can just do, like, a link, like, comprehensive plan draft now released, because I couldn't find it when I was just trying to, like, click around until I went to, like, slash planning, and then I, and it would be great to have a really bold link at the top of that, too, if that is at all possible. And then my other, and I could only, I only attempt to read, like, chapters one through three, so I guess I did the assignment it gave me. There's a lot going on visually, and there's just, like, a lot of text. And I didn't, I didn't strike paragraphs, I wasn't, like, so I'm curious to hear what you strike. But I think it needs to be tightened up, like, quite significantly somehow.
Do you think there's more text than our current?
I don't know. It's just really, well, no, I meant with the current plan. It's from 2009.
Uh-oh.
I'd love some feedback on this. So one of the things that we tasked the consultant with then is to make a document that was widely accessible. Our 2009 plan, I would characterize as.
I'm sure it's worse.
As all text. It is paragraph after paragraph. And if that is the direction you want, that's frankly much easier to put together a document. We were actually very intentional about trying to find different ways to communicate concepts to people. So that's where cartoons and the call-outs and those, but I, that's great feedback for us to understand if you, if you want a more technical document.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Okay.
No, no, no. But, you know, there are cartoons, there are maps, there, like, I think this whole, like, the eras of Ann Arbor's growth, which was really interesting, I was like, cool, I read it in paragraphs. Oh, here's a timeline, like, oh, here's another, it's just like, it's basically saying the same stuff, and I don't think we need to say that five times. That was my main, I was just like, oh, here it is again. And I, like, chapters one through three, like, I really haven't gotten into anything substantive, and it was 40 pages. So I just, I don't, I think a lot of it's important, I just, I don't know, I think it's still, like, too much text. But I liked that there were visuals, but I really, I didn't love the cartoons either, actually.
I think we can get to all of that in our page by page.
I think we can.
Yes.
Yep.
I do have a general comment.
Yes. Yep, you can do it now.
So one thing I didn't see in chapters one through three that feels like it should be there, and if I missed it, I apologize, is the economic development report as a guidance document and as a values document.
On page five, I think we are going to, we have a question about that, actually, for you all.
So I'll hold off, then we'll get to.
We can get to that.
Okay.
We're going to recognize Commissioner Abrams.
I just very briefly want to underline Commissioner Weatherby's question about accessibility. I think this is, like, a deal-breaker for me. So it's probably a question for the consultant, but to ask them to please confirm that they're using best practices for accessibility. And I suspect that there are, I know that there are probably aspects of this that will require a little bit of revision based on that. Thanks.
All right.
All right, let's, Brad, if you don't mind scrolling up to page one. And then if you don't mind, if we are going to go page by page, I'll just stop where my questions are, I have them listed here by page, and we can go through them that way. Okay.
Yeah, and for the commission, everyone just, if you want to talk, you can unmute and go ahead, so I don't have to keep turning my head to try to recognize you. And if, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Just if we start interrupting.
That's what I was just about to say. So if, I feel like we're getting out of decorum, I will try to then bring us back into decorum. And I would ask that everyone thank the best of my attempts to bring us back into decorum and lean in as opposed to leaning out. Is that okay?
And do your best to talk one at a time.
Yes. All right. Planner Bennett.
Okay, well, let's, I don't have any questions for this first spread. You can see, this is introducing the concept of a comprehensive plan. And some of you may recognize these materials if you have attended our sessions. We have used very similar language and graphics at public sessions to explain to the public what the limitations of a comprehensive plan is, how does it influence development. And you can see here already a note on page two, that will need to be updated, but we will have a timeline of the entire process.
The only feedback I have, it's not strong enough to, like, warrant a revision, but if it's simple to do, when they break down the comprehensive plan as the guiding document, and they speak about zoning as a regulatory ordinance on page three, am I still okay?
Mm-hmm.
That they mentioned that it's through the UDC. So somewhere that the Unified Development Code is showing up earlier in how this all works, because a lot of people have talked about height placement and setback, which do not usually exist in the comp plan, they exist in the UDC. So just introducing that a little earlier would be nice.
I have two other small comments. In that same, that same box about zoning as a regulatory ordinance, I think it would be worth mentioning that it also regulates process and, like, entitlements, the process for approving plans. And in the middle of the page, under what can't the comp plan do, the one that talks about it being a living document, it says, the city will regularly review progress made and determine updates. A brief mention of how that, how that happens, I think would be really helpful. That's it for me. Thanks.
Yeah, I think I'd like to also, the page numbering, to me, is tricky. I didn't actually see that the second side actually was a separate page the first few times I looked at it, so that it's, it's actually page one and page two, and I don't know if this is designed to fold at some point, or if there is how that's set. But I think it's easy to miss the second page.
For this review, we asked them to export it as a spread so that you see them both side by side. But I do think some people have printed them or were looking at them one by one. But for example, on this, the page before, it would, like, it is designed as a spread. I don't know if I'm understanding or answering your question at all, but we don't, it doesn't, this doesn't have to be how the final product looks.
Right. Yeah, and I think, I think the, it's disorienting for people because they, when, I got a lot of feedback, it was like, I thought it was 149 pages, it's only 70 pages. Mr. Leonard was wrong about it. And I was like, it's because it's on a two-up.
Times two, yeah.
Page. But a lot of people don't interact with PDFs this way or don't have big enough screens, and so they're used to single page. And I think there could just be something to say, this view is better viewed, this view is better printed. And so then.
Okay.
We can solve that pretty easily.
If I can jump it on that box, too, I often hear people say the plan is a blueprint. It's not a blueprint. That may be a word. It's somewhere between a blueprint and a vague set of recommendations. The trick is to find that middle ground. I'm a little bit nervous about saying that it's reviewed regularly and revised when it needs to be updated, because it's not. I mean, we don't change it every day when somebody comes in with something new, and we decide, oh, the plan should have gone, done this instead, right? We review it every few years.
Correct.
And PA says you have to review it at least every five years.
You're by law say you have to review it annually.
Annually. But do we adjust it annually? Do you mean, we, this is the first change to the plan we've made since 2009, right?
No.
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 So, so, yes and no.
I guess, the point I'm trying to make is, it's not fluid. It's not set in stone, but it's not so fluid either, there's constantly changing.
Could I, can I ask a question here? Is it, are we going to, are there footnotes, I guess? The possibility for adding footnotes? Because I think this point is important, because it's not going to change with a lot of regularity, but it does change. And so could that be achieved in a footnote where?
Yeah, so I'm trying not to do line edits, but I'm just kind of throwing some ideas at you to contemplate as you.
There are footnotes. Commissioner Weich.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we could footnote that and give a better definition that comports to what you're seeking.
Can we move on to the next spread?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So here's, well, I'll start with your comments, and then I'll ask my question.
Sure. Yeah, you're free.
So, and this may answer your question or provide guidance on your question. I think we need to talk about the economic development report here, and there's other opportunities to talk about it, but it feels like an important guidance document that we don't mention. It's recent, it bears directly on the issues that we're tackling in the plan. It provides really important background and empirical support for a number of the claims that we make in the plan, and it feels like we ought to pull it in starting here and then use it liberally throughout.
Do you specifically mean in this green callout box where we discuss past plans or separately?
So right under, right under or above Ann Arbor Comprehensive Plan Resolution, I mean, it, when I was reading it again or skimming it again when I was preparing for this meeting, its relevance here is really kind of hard to overstate. It's, it really tackles a lot of the, a lot of the issues that, a lot of the issues in the background section in particular, right? How we got here, some of the values and policy priorities that we have as a city, and because it was ratified and affirmed by the city council, it feels like a pretty important piece of guidance that should be guiding our, our work. It also, and I'll get to some of these other comments later, it does, it is helpful in other sections of, of the, of the plan to provide support for what we're doing without redoing that work or creating something from scratch.
Okay.
I have a question that feels a little silly, but the, in the green box on page five, past plans to be replaced, that's clear, past plans to incorporate and replace, right? I guess my question is, does a new plan, do those still hold? But then isn't there, isn't there then redundancy if those have been incorporated into this plan and they also exist as a separate plan?
Redundancy alignment, I would probably use the word alignment.
Is it, I guess here's my question. If there's discrepancy, which one takes precedent?
Well, throughout this process, there shouldn't be discrepancies.
But there may be. So I'm just, okay, I'll just leave that there.
Yeah.
That's it.
They might augment or complement, might be other words used instead of incorporate.
Retain.
Or maybe not call them past plans.
Existing.
Yeah, existing.
The tree line plan will still be an operative plan, though, right? We're not replacing it. We're augmenting it, or it's complementing what we're doing.
It's a component of like this grouping of plans that will become the comprehensive plan, right?
I do want a plus one Commissioner Adams development, economic development, bringing that forward, introducing it, and using it as a basis for what we will see, I think is super important for people to understand the context. But go ahead, Mr. Leonard, sorry.
Do you envision the A20 plan referenced similarly, or its inclusion in the comprehensive plan resolution seems to have inadequacy?
I don't know.
Okay.
You mean the number one above?
Yeah.
I only addressed the other one because I couldn't find it, and the reason I noticed it was I was.
I brought, I cut them both out.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, yeah, that's, so the, my rationale originally for not including those was that all these other things are plans, and plans under state law have a meaning. The A20 Living Carbon Neutrality doesn't have that meaning. The Economic Development Report does not have that meaning. The corresponding resolutions do not have that meaning, and that's why I pulled them out totally, you know, we will incorporate it, but the A20 plan, I just bring that up. It is referenced, that was explicitly in the council resolution. Maybe that's adequate.
That's really good logic. Maybe let me explain why, how I want to use it, and that will be helpful to the comment, and maybe then you can figure out if it goes here or elsewhere. So we've heard a lot of feedback on challenging some of the statements that we make in the plan as if they're settled propositions regarding the relationship between housing supply and affordability. That's been a common thread in public meetings. I was thinking about a way to make this document, this document is an advocacy document on some level. It's not a brief, but there's a lot of advocacy in it, and when it comes to that, those claims, we're not supporting them at any point. We treat them as settled and not really debated. Most of the debate we've heard has been on that issue. And when I was looking for a source, an easy, non bespoke answer to that, that report contains two paragraphs that could literally be lifted and dropped right into this plan and used as a basis for support for the proposition, generally speaking, that making it easier to build dense housing or more housing generally pushes, pushes in a favorable way on favorability, right? Without reinventing the wheel. It even cites to scholarly work that is persuasive, and I've read some of it. It's right on point. So that's like a, literally a cut and paste, and would be very helpful. So that's, if it doesn't go here because it's not a resolution or a plan, then maybe it goes somewhere else, but I think we can use it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Can I ask my question? Okay. We staff have talked about in this, on this spread to have a section that says why we plan. We could of course write that as planners, but we want to open it up to Planning Commission if there are specific reasons you would like us to add here for why we develop a comprehensive land use plan.
Yes.
How would that be different than why, why is it important to plan?
Well, what was originally here was the state statute that said we have to plan. We wanted to add best practices here as to why we do, and maybe why it's important does cover that.
My sense is that we need, we're trying to find a space with, between kind of general accessibility, but also I think we don't want it to feel like a, this is sounding harsher than I mean to, but for the sense of expedience, I'm just going to say it, like a children's book or something, you know, like the, does the document need to educate people about planning in general? Is that its role, or is it supposed to be a kind of advocacy document and a, you know, North Star for future development? So I don't have any answer on that, but I think when we start getting into like, why is planning important, period, I start to worry that we're getting more into the generalities as opposed to just, so, but I also understand that it's important to kind of lay the groundwork. So I'm actually interested to hear what other people think about that.
I have a strong feeling that we should talk about why we plan, because as I have been answering a lot of emails and thinking for myself and reading a lot of the scholarship that Commissioner Adams just referenced, I've been thinking about, this word appears in the plan, and I think it's great, but I've been thinking about the real importance of holistic planning, that a comprehensive plan is a comprehensive document, so you are trying to figure out how different pieces of a puzzle fit together. And it is really important to emphasize that, I love the phrase, the plan's not a cure-all. There's no cure-all for affordable housing. There are many different approaches that a city has to take, all of them. And, and we, we unusually are taking a lot of them because we have two millages. Not everybody gets their residents to give them two millages. And so I believe that it is important to talk about the importance of holistic planning versus piecemeal reactive, this is not the language that I would use, but versus piecemeal reactive adoption of things that developers bring forward. That is not the way to plan. And so why we plan is because it's holistic, and it's pieces of a system, and it's looking at the various ways in which one approaches a problem. You know, there, so, and in terms of, I really want to strongly support what Commissioner Adams was saying, I don't know exactly where the Economic Development Report should fit. I think if past plans want to go on another page, because they are plans, and the Economic Development Report wasn't, but it kind of has a similar status to, a little bit similar to the Ann Arbor Comprehensive Plan Resolution, in that the Economic Development Report was commissioned by council, produced with community partners, and adopted through a series of resolutions that we've been wrestling with on this body and other parts of the city are wrestling with as well. So there are some really important things in there, and place making is huge, and the discussion of affordability scholarship, which might even want a page. Look, these are some tenets from, from scholarship, and I would be happy to, you know, work on that with others on this board.
Can I, oh, go ahead, sorry.
This is back to your question, so if you want to follow up on that, I want to answer your, I want to go back to your question.
Well, I was going to say, both commissioners are bringing up good points in thinking about who the audience of this document is, so I don't think we explicitly asked for graphics or cartoons, but for example, I think we said our audience is going to be the general public, and that's why you might see in some areas it is repetitive. That is by design, because we don't expect the public to read 142 pages front to back. That's why there are cartoons. But it is up for you all to decide, like, is, is this document meant to be read by the general public? Is it meant for developers? Is it meant for, you know, planning staff? That might direct somewhat of what level of detail we get into, for example, of why we plan. So that would be something to consider as well as your general, who is your audience?
I also think that, I think it's a good point, like on the previous spread, it's what can the plan do? Like, I think maybe part of, part of the takeaway is making, maybe we just increase the scope of that a little bit there, rather than why is it important, and then why do we plan? Just making sure that we're comprehensively answering that question in one place for whichever audience.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, if you're going to add the why are we planning, it wouldn't, it would go on pages, it would start. Why are we planning? To support deliberative, good decision-making, and because we have to under state law, and there's no reason to hide that, we do. And to explain a little bit the institutional role that the MPA and the MZA set up, doesn't need to be detailed. I think if you do that first, then that leads into, well, what is the plan that gets produced, and why is it important? So I would put it up.
And just because I don't think we've heard this comment yet, everyone that I have talked to loves the design of the plan, the colors, the layout, the cartoons, the accessibility. My daughter has a form of synesthesia, where she, colors are attached to feelings, and so she really loved the plan, and it was very accessible for her because it wasn't walls of text, and so she could scan it and glean information and then could ask further questions. So I do want to give that feedback as we're making our way.
There will be things about this plan some people really like, and that'll be exactly the same thing that other people really don't like. I'm going to, I'm going to differ with my colleague Sarah a little bit. I don't, I do think people are going to just read pieces of this. They're not going to read it from start to finish like it's a novel. So being a little repetitive or presenting things in different ways that will resonate with different people, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. So having the timeline after a textual explanation just struck me as a different way to present it that'll grab people differently, but at the same time, I recognize we don't need to like stretch it out and make it way more longer and complicated than it needs to be.
I was going with the timeline, and then there was another thing.
Yeah. So.
So I just want to do a time check. We are on page five, and we have been talking for 15 minutes. So we have 35 pages to go tonight.
We can send other comments to you after, right? Like, I mean, because I was going to say something else, but I can just, it's very minor, and I could just.
You can send minor comments to us, but I would just give us the discretion that if we see something in there that we think warrants a bigger conversation, we're going to raise it.
Yeah, because we need to bring it back to the public.
I think I cut off Commissioner Mills quite a while ago.
Yes.
Sorry.
It was covered.
Oh, great. All right, let's, let's keep going.
Yeah, so when, if I'm going to, I'll just pop in here on page six, six and seven. This is one of those situations where the previous page, we said past, past plans to incorporate, and we have three of them, and then on this page, we have those three, and then we have in light gray, the A20 Carbon Neutrality Plan, and I don't understand that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Like, like it's fine to have it in two different ways, but having different information in two different ways is confusing.
And what's the fourth thing?
What's the fourth pink?
Yeah, that needs to be removed. You notice they removed the words, but not the, the lines, so we will have that corrected. I think what this spread is trying to do, and it is repeating some information, but you can see all the values there are listed for each of those plans, and is trying to show, again in this box, relevant themes from other plans, how we are showing our work for the fact that we have read our own plans and that we are trying to align with them, and that our values are spread across multiple documents. If it's not clear, we can.
Make it clear.
We can make a different.
Plans, make that the title, maybe.
I mean, I think it's clear when you have the blue continuity minimized, but what's confusing is that the neutrality, the A20 plan shows up, and it doesn't have any of those.
Yeah.
It should be there.
Okay.
I think that's what makes it confusing to me, and that it wasn't on the previous page.
The one in the previous page.
And if you're going to add in the Economic Development Report and want to pull things out of here, like that's, it feels like that's where it wants to be, and it felt to me like, oh, this is why it's light gray in the text of the name, but it, I knew it took a lot of mental effort. Yeah.
Actually, what I, I think actually it'd be really easy, you would get rid of it there, sorry, this is too in the weeds, do you guys want to tell me to stop? Okay. You would get rid of it there, because it's not actually an adopted plan to incorporate and align with, but you have this box down below, relevant themes from other, we could say relevant themes from other important city adopted documents or something, right? And like, you could incorporate A20 things in there, and not, and take it out of the hierarchy with these other official plans.
Are those other plans, other than the ones that are listed on this page, or are these the other plans that the themes are relevant to?
These are from those other plans.
From the other plans like tree line and moving together?
Yeah.
Okay. I, well, I read it both ways.
They're like higher level.
I read it, then I read it, because as you were saying that, it's like move it over, but then I was like, well, are they, wait, are these other plans, these other plans, or are they other plans? Sorry.
They'll clarify it.
I think our direction on this is to make this, to streamline this, make it simpler, the graphic, and maybe rearranging the content to be clear, but not necessarily removing it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Next. Okay, a history of Ann Arbor and its development. So we have noted from Commissioner Wetherby, this might be an example of a map that needs street names.
Sorry.
Yep.
Sorry.
How are you going to put street names on this? It's very small.
We're going to do, I would imagine, major corridors.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just sort of.
Yep.
Can you do dates on page eight, like it is on the map, like the 1874 to 1975?
That was one of my comments too, is the dates don't show up on the left.
So maybe we can talk about these next three together, because they're all timeline related and phases of the city, so we can discuss if you all think some of these are redundant, so.
I don't think they're redundant. I think they're very important, and I'm going to say page 10 and 11 probably was one of the most important things in this section.
10 and 11?
Yeah, because it shows where the growth of the city starts to get constrained. And that is from policies that start in 1970s and then constrain the city for a whole 50 years.
I concur.
And I just thought, I just thought this, this is the most important thing to explain to people why we plan.
I'll confess that it took me a minute to understand what up and down, like why things were spread up and down on the page, like. And then I saw, but it was the format that I was viewing it in, so I couldn't see the red and blue to the far right from the get-go.
Okay.
And so, but again, I don't think though that I'm the only person that's going to view it on a laptop like this, and so that might get cut off, but I love this.
Okay, I'm hearing positive opinions about this, but if we go to the next spread, do we think having it laid out again like this is redundant or worthwhile?
I like the images.
Yeah, I like the images, but again, I'd like them to be able to blow them up or somehow see more about them.
I wanted hype, my, my first comment actually is, I want hyperlinks to where this is in the Ann Arbor News or ADL archives, because not, in particular, like, I'm a nerd, so I know about the Packard Beeks bypass, but I feel like many people will not, and I want people to be able to hyper-click.
Oh, you mean so specifically with the image sources?
Not necessarily the image, I thought there were a lot of the things that were like. that were like, the history of, that I don't...
Yeah, so on page 13, 1970s, that's the Packard Beeks bypass. And there's a, an Ann Arbor News article that links to that. And I think you have a screenshot of it later. You do, on page 21. So, it's sort of just going to the AADL archive for that, which would make this really nice to educate people.
And for multiple, like, multiple points in our history, I mean, that our library has it anyway, feels like a missed opportunity.
Yeah, and like, the first zoning map, but it's just tiny little lines. It'd be helpful to know what that actually was, what it said.
Okay, so I'm hearing you would like to keep both of these in, but make images bigger where possible.
Or just hire...
And add hyperlinks to important sources.
I don't know that the images need to be bigger in the document, but that they could be enlarged to look at a bigger, clearer version of that.
Higher resolution? So, you could just zoom in?
Yeah, so that you could zoom in, or you could click on a link to a larger resolution, or the actual document, or...
Yeah, if you could, if, if they can't improve the resolution inside the PDF, or the document itself, but could click out to a higher resolution, I think that would achieve the goal.
Okay.
On pages 10 and 11, I had a question about the use of the term exclusionary zoning. I'm not opposed to the use of the term. But, it isn't defined. And I have had a couple of conversations with residents about, well, all zoning is exclusionary, which isn't wrong. And so, we are, but what we mean when we're talking about exclusionary zoning is, it's an intentional targeting of populations, not just uses. I mean, right?
Correct. I mean, that's the history of zoning.
Well, okay, then, why do we talk about the first zoning code? And we don't call it exclusionary. But, we say exclusionary zoning is introduced in 1957, when you introduce single-family districts, and you actually create a form of, you create a pattern of exclusions that creates value for some people, at the expense of denying value for other people. The value that is possible in the single-family zones depends on unwanted uses being proximate to multifamily, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's a huge amount of argument. We are not going to write that onto this page of the plan.
No, but you could link out to explain, because there, there's ample history about this.
Absolutely. But, what I'm saying is that it is, it reads strangely, to be told that a first zoning code with four zoning districts, and then an exclusionary zoning was introduced. And it's sort of defined, what we mean by exclusionary zoning, is sort of defined here with single-family ordinance restrictions on tenants. But, that doesn't make sense to a person who hasn't read. Like, that's not a good, that isn't a straightforward definition of what we mean by exclusionary zoning.
But that, and I, I don't want to get into a back and forth with you, because I don't think I disagree with what you're saying. I'm just engaging you?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So, isn't this the place where it's introduced into our zoning? So, prior to, because I, Mr. Lerner, you did a big chart of the size of the zoning document. And so, it is here that this actually gets codified into zoning in the city of Ann Arbor. Because the, the UDC grows at this point. It's like, it almost grows 100 pages right now.
At 1957 or 1963? Because 1963 is the...
I'm not going to answer that. I'm just going to say, there's somewhere in here that it, it, like, quadruples in size. It goes from like, 22 pages to over 100, and then it keeps growing through the 70s. And I can, I can pull it up.
Can we just leave it on the table, that that's something to address?
It's just something to clarify, right?
Yes.
We're good on that?
And we may need a definitions section, or something, or we just may need to clean up the language here. Exclusionary zoning that does the following, by, in contrast to the first zoning code, which had four zoning districts. And I would love to know what those were.
I'm trying to figure out, what was the key difference between the first zoning ordinance in that 1957 version? Was that where single-family detached forms were first restricted to the use? Is that what happened?
Well, I think we're not answering the question right now, right? I think we're marking it as a question to be answered, and then...
Need to be more clarity divided here.
Yeah. Next draft, hopefully, we'll see more clarity.
Can I also say, I'm not really sure I'm following why the, I like the diagram and concept. I don't really get why the different hashes float up and down. Like, why is 1921 at 90K, you know, 95K? Is there some reason horizontally where it's sitting on the page?
No, it's just...
That's the green and yellow, right? It's just, it's just spreading them out.
Kind of randomly sitting there?
It's just distributing them, so you can read them.
Yeah, it's just putting them on the timeline, so you can see them.
Here also, it's color-coded on the right, there's a different access. So, I get the color coding. I was just, I was trying to decide, is there some meaning to where it's actually sitting on the page, that's relative to the population?
There's a meaning to the X-axis, but not the Y.
Yeah.
That also had me for too long.
I have two things that I'd like to put on the table, to see if we want to add to that timeline, which is 1978, the Hedley Amendment.
Ooh.
And 1994, Proposal A. Because I think those have had implications for housing.
And infrastructure.
And infrastructure.
Thank you for bringing that up, because my question for you was, do you think there are any major historical events missing that you would like to see added to this?
I did read your document.
So, I think I was, well, I think I was the one that is having the most trouble with these, and thinking that it's like, way too much stuff, and I just want to go through like, my thought process of why. So, I'm reading eight to nine, and I was like, this is really interesting. This is cool. This is like, one little paragraph about each. Like, I'm learning something new. This is great. And then I went to pages 10 to 11, and I was like, okay, there's like, all these breaking it down. It's like, giving me some more stuff. And then, by the time I got to 12 and 13, I was like, is this different? Is it the same stuff? And it looks like, looking at it, and I just kept going at that point. But, it's like, some stuff overlaps, and some stuff doesn't. I don't know if it's possible, like, I don't want to add more text, but to add more text, explaining, like, how is 10 to 11 different from 12 to 13? And maybe 12 to 13 needs to go above 10 to 11, because it feels like the eras thing closer matches what's on page eight. So, if we're going to keep them all, which is fine. I just would like a little, like, am I just looking at things visually, graphically different, or is it showing me different stuff? Because by the time I got to 12 and 13, I was just like, I'm tired of reading about these now. This was interesting, but I got to keep moving on.
And would your preference be that, on this new spread, everything that's introduced here is new? It's not a repeat of the previous timeline? Or what's, what's the recommendation?
No, I mean, I just, well, it's, it just, if it's repetitive, I don't see a point to it. So, I mean, if we can just explain, if it's, I mean, is it different? It's sort of different, because it's, like, page 10 and 11 is like, combining a lot of stuff, and literally 12 and 13 is a timeline. So, maybe this, I don't, if it's just the order changes, maybe that's better. And if there's like, a sentence that's like, expanding on, like, the, something from page eight, like, here's some more. I don't know. But, I just, by the time I got to 12 and 13, I was just like...
Would it help you, would it help you to understand that page nine is this history relative to land use, like, as a map? Then, you have this stuff, but relative to population growth, which is a totally different way to think about it. And then, 12 and 13 is actually just a more detailed timeline, so there are a lot of things in there that don't exist on the other two. And you get pictures.
Maybe. But, maybe if there is just like, a sentence of like, kind of like what you just said.
Yeah, if we can...
But also, isn't it okay for you to be like, why are they repeating? And then you just move on?
Yeah, but I mean, they're, they're, they are important. And so, but yeah, I was just like, do I need to read this again?
Yeah. My guess is that they wanted to include these images, that they couldn't fit on the timeline. And I will, I have a note here, how are these different? Add a sentence to the top of 12, page 12, as to, like, how to view these two different timelines.
And this was sort, this sort of sparked my initial comment, where I was like, this just has a lot going on in it. Because like, I was like, oh my God, I'm still in chapter one. And like, I have, we haven't even talked about, like, where's, where's the elimination of single-family zone? You know, like, I just, like, this is, it just, I just, I was like, where's chapter two?
We're going to get to that. We're going to spend a lot of time talking about chapters four, five, and six.
No, I know. But like, I'm that far in the plan, and we're still talking about the history on like, six different pages. It just felt like it needed to move along a little bit faster, to me.
Can I answer your question also, about historical events?
Yeah.
So, I would like, under rethinking of infrastructure and how the city develops, I would like the Affordable Housing Village and the Climate Village to be on that timeline.
Other missing things, it shows the creation of the Old West Side, but there are now 15 historic districts, right? I don't know that you need to identify all 15 of them, but if some of them happened in clumps, you might, I wouldn't want this to suggest that the Old West Side is the only historic district.
Right. And things like preserving the Michigan Theater, which actually was a big moment.
That's good.
And the city council actually acted on that to preserve it. And I don't know if we, you know, what things are important, or what things aren't important.
That's the thing, like, where do you stop?
Yeah. I mean, the other, another one would be like, the first suburban housing development. Like, you know, but there, there's a lot of things. I don't know where the...
There's a lot of discussion about what role will the historic districts play in all of this. I think it's worth noting when they were created, in some fashion.
Yep, I have that note.
And it might be worth noting, but I'm not fully convinced of this, but I will just say it, because that's what we're doing right now. The, the, or, yeah, the curbside recycling. We were the first, I think, in Michigan, if not nationwide, which is another infrastructure thing.
We also had the first parking structure, public parking structure.
Really?
Yep.
All right.
That's a weird fact. I like that.
There's a lot to tap in, you know?
Yeah.
There, there is. Let's keep going.
Yeah, let's go. Okay, so can we move past 12 and 13?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, Ann Arbor Today, there's two spreads here that are trying to sort of capture what it's like to live in the city now. So, I had a question for you all on this, if you think this resonates with what you've heard. And, secondly, is there any other significant data that you'd like to see featured in this section that would add to the description of what it's like to be in Ann Arborite today?
So, I have a question on these, about these cartoons. Are those quotes from people that were pulled out from somewhere, or are they some kind of cartoon representation of an idea?
I don't think these are personal quotes from engagement, because we used these during our engagement. As a way to explain to people, like, maybe the, I think they're trying to share the personal side of this experience.
Yeah. So, this is probably the most familiar two slides, or four pages, because we've seen them from the very, very beginning of the engagement with the consultants.
I think it would be very powerful to actually use some graphs to show rent increase, because it's been quite steep, and it's pretty recent. And also, another thing is the pace of construction. And I think to graphically represent that there was construction at scale in the 60s. And then, there's a long time where it isn't. And then, it picks up again around 2000, 2005. But, it's, but it's nowhere near what people think it is. People have a feeling that there has been tons and tons of construction. But, in fact, in terms of adding units, it's, it's, it pales in comparison to the hockey stick graph that we saw three pages ago.
Yeah, the post-World War II housing boom versus what has come recently.
So, this is a follow-up question, because there, chapter four talks about all of the goals. Housing in neighborhoods is one of the goal areas. And there are several pages there with the rationale that have the map of when structures were built and grafted out there. So, that's for you all to decide, if you would like to move that forward, to help describe, you know, what it's like to live here today. Or, we can talk about that more when we get to chapter four, to see if we think that's the appropriate place. Because it is listed there as the rationale for our housing goals.
So, I think, I think we could, if you will, incorporate the feedback we've gotten so far, still here on both pages 14 and 15. If you just took the leftmost graphic, where they have the PAC person, and you just put the, sorry, and you just put the chart of the rent growing behind it, that can be a way to answer that. And they already have a chart in the lower right panel. But, if you put a legend on it, and put some numbers the center of page 14.
That's fake. Do you want to make it real?
I'm just saying, it's an easy way to put the information here without having to redo it, since it's coming up later. But, it also can show up here in a, in a meaningful way. So, just a reflection.
Yeah. I mean, I guess what I should have said more bluntly is that there are many ways of delivering information visually and graphically. And I would prefer not to have cartoons on these pages. I would prefer to have graphic representations of what it has, what we are really doing, and what the rental market really looks like. Or, maybe we do both. But, I, I think that the empirical data is pretty stunning. And there are many people who are just unaware of it. They're not renters. And because we have the Hedley and Prop A, that means that just, if you're a homeowner, you are so buffered from the market.
Yeah. I mean, I think you're getting at a point that is lost on a lot of those of us who have detached single unit dwellings, is our taxes are subsidized in a lot of ways by new development. And, to this point, if there's anywhere for us in this section to actually reveal to folks that renters pay taxes, pretty much every renter in the city of Ann Arbor pays somewhere between $500 and $700 a month in taxes in their rent. I don't think people know that. But, this is all to that point. But, I'm going to slightly disagree with my colleague. I still like the, the representation here, because it's very accessible, to be able to read and scan and get it. But, I think both of our comments should be taken together, and I think we can keep going.
So, maybe we need more pages. And maybe one thing that, no, I mean, I think it's fine to put in more pages.
Move our last match, or she said something else.
Well, I know. She wants to say, oh. But, the, but it might actually be wonderful to do what Commissioner Wyche has just said, which is actually to compare the increase that one gets in taxes, if one is a single-family homeowner, versus the increase in rental costs. I mean, the, so that we can convey this picture of, we are, how single-family homeowners really are buffered from the market. And it's true that these uncaps, so it makes it very difficult to downsize your home when you get 10 years older than I currently am. But, you know, in, in the middle here, we're, we're dealing with people whose picture of what the housing market looks like is very different. Those who have been in their homes for a long time, versus those who are renters in this city. They see a very different thing. Their, their sense of precarity, or, you know, how long can I sustain this, is so different.
The new buyers, also.
Yeah, the new buyers, absolutely. Right, exactly. Which, that comes up in chapter four, but it would be nice to offer some pictures. I don't know, I see your, your squinting. Maybe this doesn't sound good to you.
Well, I, we'll take the feedback. What I'm, what I am hearing is, a wide variety of communicating the information is helpful. I'm hearing that there are some on the commission who lean more into the academic data side, that you are not getting from the cartoon and just the call-out percentages. But, I would caution us a little bit, when you're, when you're talking about trying to graphically demonstrate the impact of rent increases with how taxes impact both the downside of homeownership, and the, at times, handcuffs of being put in place, you are starting to get into a pretty weedy stuff. And with all due respect, this plan is your reaction to that. And if you think that you need that in order to have the conviction to make these policies, then we should talk about it. But, in some ways, I think, this plan is, what are we going to do about that? It doesn't have to, it, it doesn't, in fact, have to be the research paper on every facet of the whys, the whys to what you are doing.
I hear that. I've also heard more than once, people saying, why are we planning? And do we have a housing crisis? And that we have a letter in our package... And that, we have a letter in our packet, it's the first one, which, you know, I spun out of control responding to every little point, and of course, I can't, I don't have the email of the person, and so I don't know how to communicate with them. But, we've heard that at a couple of sessions, and so, I, you are absolutely, I, I completely take your point. Too weedy, girl, but can we possibly simplify it?
Too weedy.
Woman.
Respectful counsel.
Absolutely, no, I take, you are, I, every, we have a respectful thing. Is there any way to, you know?
Cartoonify it.
To picture the how, to make it, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Is your, is your comment that what should be, what's in the graphic should be, or in the cartoon, should be different? But that that format is okay?
What I hear is you're looking for data
Yeah.
that documents why that cartoon was drafted the way it was.
So, and, and so that's my question, because we're talking about page limits and accessibility. That information does come later. So, if we want to pull it forward, do we want to repeat it? Or do we wanna pull it forward here and not have it later? Or do we want to try to express it differently in this cartoon?
Can we give it to you to
Sure.
try to synthesize? Because you could just take the collective comment and then add a, a section to say something here, and then you'll see it repeat in chapter four.
Once we talk about chapter four.
Yeah, let's keep it.
Can I just request, maybe, since we have some, there's a lot of, seems like there's a lot of polarization about these cartoons? Uh, can you?
I'm not polarized.
Well, you're on one pole, and I'm on another pole. Can we ask during these public participations, can we get, like, can you get reactions to them? I think I don't like them, because like, it's like, oh, something else to read.
We got, we got that feedback from staff as well. So, there are people, people read differently, right? So, some people look at this graphic and think like, "I'm never gonna read that. This looks like clutter." Some people go straight to it and read it. And so, I think we are trying to strike a balance of different ways to display data. If this leans to, if, if there's consensus this leans too heavy on cartoons, then we can remove some of them, I would say. But, um, we can ask, we have engagement sessions coming up. I don't think my materials I'm preparing will include them.
Maybe they'll just be organic feedback that we can take.
Yeah.
Um, I've, a couple more things on this spread. The Ann Arbor grew 24% between 70 and 20 compared to 59% in Washington County. That 59%, that's a crazy disparity. I think that 59% needs to be bigger. And then, incoming students accounting for 75% of what growth? Ann Arbor's growth or the county's growth? Ann Arbor's growth?
But that number's wrong. At least, if you look on the spread on the previous page, it's 61%. If you look on the map on 10, 11, I did the math. So, or, one of them seems to be off. But yes, I'm with you.
Say which, which, what growth?
Yeah. It doesn't match from what's on, um, the timeline?
What's on the timeline that show, I mean, if you just take the proportion.
It's ambiguous, because it, it's, is it Ann Arbor or is it the whole county?
Is it Washington County, yeah.
So, we just need to clarify, if it is Ann Arbor, then it needs to ma, match the chart.
And they say, like, of Ann Arbor's growth.
Okay.
Um, and then the first paragraph at the end, "In general, the population is aging and family-aged residents are decreasing." A, I'd love a citation, but B, like, is it the number of family-aged residents are decreasing? The pop, the percentage, like?
Yeah, what is family-aged? Like, I don't get a family, or, at fifty, you don't have family anymore?
I just write, that sentence needs something.
Well, remember, the demographic data we have are 18 and below, and our 65 and above are increasing. Our, and our, our 34 to 65 is decreasing.
Can we just put that, instead of saying "family-aged"? Because "family-aged" implies that you are part of a family if you're younger or older.
And I was confused, because this was right after you've just made, some, not you, that sounded accusatory. Someone made the claim that
I've got some agents.
the city's growth is attributed to the student population. And then we're talking about old people, like, it just...
Emphasizing that, college students.
But even then, what you were just saying, like, 18 and younger is not college students.
Yeah.
Right, and so, like, that's where it was, it just felt like a non sequitur.
Our 18 to 34 population
Is growing.
is growing. Our 65 and over population is growing. Our younger than 18 is falling.
And 35 to 65 is falling.
But then what's family-aged?
So, family-aged is 18 to 34?
We are calling...
But you just said this.
We are calling, no, no. I, we, we mean by that, be 34, 35 to 65, and children under 18.
Okay, so you get the point that we need some clarification.
All right, so this is gonna be one of those places where I'm asked to see if we can...
One other clarification, then I'll just throw it on the table. I think a glossary.
Yes, that's, I think we can definitely support that.
Just wanna make sure we're not, I wanna give you a minute to catch up before we start. Okay, I think a glossary, and on this, and here in particular, I think vehicle miles traveled is something we all know very well, but not, a general person wouldn't know what that means. So, we could add that to the glossary. And then a very minor comment at the bottom of that same paragraph on page 15, it says, "Strategies implemented by the city should focus on starting a conversation," which felt very, it didn't... I think we wanna be more, more proactive and assertive and with a more sense of urgency than just starting a conversation. So, just a note, a small revision note, thanks. Maybe I'm getting into line edit, sorry.
And for me on that page, I just wanted to say, like, 49% of Ann Arborites don't use a car to, which I thought was fascinating. Even though we've used the number 51% commute to work with a car, the idea that 49% don't is wild.
Let's keep it.
It's pretty high.
So, this second spread is also Ann Arborite. So, this is trying to do the same thing, tell the same story of what it like, what it's like to live here.
Sixteen, seventeen?
Yep.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton's trying to get in.
I wanna make a, kind of a statement and ask a question of the commission. Starting first by saying I totally understand these numbers, I get the housing crisis, I get the commuting disconnect, I get the, all of the things that we're dealing with, that we're struggling with. The thing, this is Ann Arborite today, though, is this section. And the thing that's just hitting me is missing is the fact that there are a lot of people in Ann Arbor who are perfectly like the way Ann Arbor is, and they are really scared about change. And they're, they're screaming at us that we're not listening to them. So, this, I mean, you mentioned earlier, this is not a brief, it's an advocacy, but it's an advocacy piece. I think we have to acknowledge somewhere, there are a lot of people in Ann Arbor who really like Ann Arbor the way it is and don't wanna see it change, and that's a perfectly normal, natural position to be in, and we need to respect, we need to recognize it respectfully. And then trying to figure out how to bring folks together to talk about what, how do we deal with these problems. And I'm not sure how to frame that, but I think this, that needs to be stated here somewhere in a meaningful way.
I feel like that fits more in chapter two, though, because, like, where it's the, where they're sort of distilling, like, what they heard from public engagement, which I'm hoping can...
That's where I saw it, yeah.
Yeah, but it's there, but this is, this is being presented as, here's our take on the facts of the world, and this is what Ann Arborites are like today, and it's missing. We know that there are, we don't need to wait until this is what we heard to point out that we recognize there are people in this city who are very scared about what they're seeing coming out of this planning effort.
So, we could add that, we just, we don't have a percentage, right? Like, with this format. So, I wouldn't know how to add the percentage, but we could, we could add a line addressing that.
I think, I, just even acknowledging it.
Right, but these aren't policy, these are policy prescriptions and judgments. These are not, like, public support type claims, right?
Yeah.
Everything on the slide is things that we think we need, it's not who supports what. That's all covered later on. And I, and I think we do address the nature and magnitude of support in those, in chapter two.
I'm just telling you, am I approaching this as someone who lives in a neighborhood who's really scared about what's happening? And what I'm seeing is a total framing advocacy job that's laying out here all the facts, and you're not listening to me.
But this is data about land use, so this is just like, 38% of owner-occupied households, and 92% of us live within a 10-minute walk of a park. Like, this is not about public opinion, or even values, right? So, if there's a data point that you, this is how I feel. If there's a data point that would capture something that you're, what you're describing, but this is not, we're nowhere in here, we're saying people want or don't want this.
How much of the population lives in single-family residential neighborhoods?
Yeah, we, I mean, we should get at it.
We could maybe do households.
Yeah, it's hard to get to that.
I would also say, I, I hear what Commissioner Norton is saying, and I would say that page 16, not the cartoons necessarily, but the text on page 16 is like, this is a darn great place to live. Wait, I mean, that's what those bullets are, and maybe there, there is only the one number on it, but that's, that is what, that's how I read those things, not like, there's anything going wrong. It's like, it is extremely, like, high quality of life, and we've got the information about how close you are to parks. And it's, I'm sure that there's a couple other things that, or something else. I mean, the 20-minute neighborhood, right? And in thinking about where, it's not just about the parks, but access to other things could be part of that, potentially.
I agree with what you're saying, except that I have a, I have a big problem with that first sentence, that, like, I mean, it's, it's true that access to essential destinations is crucial for quality of life. Communities of color are more likely to reside in neighborhoods with limited access to groceries, parks, and schools. Is that just a general comment that the, that the team made? Or is it, I mean, that does, does not, or is it specific to Ann Arbor? Because I don't, that needs, I mean, that is a overall, general truth, but I don't think it's to, I don't, that whole period, I'm like, is that to here, or just in general?
I wanted a citation, and I wanted to know, like, where...
So, can we, because we've, we've spent a lot of time on these two pages, so I'm just doing a time check.
Yep, thank you.
And, I would like to propose something, I'll come to you in just a second, Commissioner Norton, which is, I think places where the consultants are stating something, if they can add citations to where that is, like, throughout the document, would be helpful. I, I just think it will sort of minimize people's suspicion with the statements. And, the city is a majority-white city, the, the population is somewhere over 70%. So, I think we can, you know, sort of extrapolate from there, that the statement is true, but then, being able to then actually say, okay, here's the citation that supports that. I think that helps with people to trust the information that they're getting. As I'm hearing Commissioner Norton, I, I think that the challenge that I hear there is there's not a clear data point that we can access. Because like you, I've been asking, probably for five or six years that I've been on the planning commission, like, how many, you know, units are in R1 and R2? Like, asking for the breakdowns of those things. And it's been hard to get it completely, so that we can answer the question of how many, what percentage of the population live in single-family zones or housing units. And so, I wonder if we can sort of come towards you to figure out how to get that sort of data point, and then try to figure out where it lives within the document?
I, I think we can find that, but I guess I'm not seeing the connection to Commissioner Norton, because not everyone in a single-family home is necessarily scared of this change. You're right that it probably comes from that.
I know, I recognize that, but, but we, and I, you know, I gotta say, I mean, folks are telling me, "There aren't value statements in here. Access to essential destinations is crucial for equality of life." That sounds like a value statement to me. People read these facts from the value position that they're coming from, and they're gonna read this as, "You're not listening to me, you're totally stacking the deck," against my viewpoint.
And then there are others who will say, that are on the opposite side of that, that are saying they're...
I'm actually not saying to take this stuff away, I'm saying it would be nice to acknowledge X% of the residents in the city live in a single-family residential district, and many of them value the kind of setting that that creates. And, just to acknowledge...
Well, and 62% of them are not rent burdened, or are not burdened by, if you take the reverse of the, you know, are not cost-burdened. So, that's gonna help. I mean, like, if you're not cost-burdened by housing, you're more likely going to appreciate your housing.
And which helps to explain why people, why so many people are so unhappy about, and scared about what's happening. So, I'm just asking for something to acknowledge that here.
We can look into percentages of people in single-family homes and make a statement about some of them are happy with status quo.
We might be able to pull some data, we do national...
Just to be honest, I mean, I, as soon as we get to page 20 and 21, you're gonna hear more clearly why I have problems with us even bringing in the historic districts, because the origin of some of these historic districts, which we exclude multi-unit families, which were to do the absolute positive, you know, opposite of what Commissioner Norton is talking about, which is to deny people access to these essential things that improve their quality of life. So, like, I, I get it, I mean, I, this is my comment, this is his. I think we'll give it to you, staff, to sort of navigate.
Is this a straw poll moment? I mean, if
It could be.
if Commissioner Norton feels strongly about it.
Yeah, he could call that, yeah. I, I think that's a, I think that's a good point.
I wanna be clear. I am not defending single-family residential districts as the best kind of district in the city. I'm trying to acknowledge that there are a lot of people in the city who live in those kinds of neighborhoods and value them for lots of different reasons. And, if we don't acknowledge that, we lose people from the get-go. And I, I'm totally on board with the policies that we're trying to advance to improve housing opportunities and such. But I think we're missing an opportunity to reach out and try and engage in dialogue if we can't even acknowledge upfront that there are people who live in the city.
What I'm struggling with, though, is that we do, right? So, on page 32, we talk about residents who, who want this balanced approach, wanna preserve their, their open space, wanna, the green spaces, historic districts.
You gotta get all the way to page 32.
They're gonna have to read farther than page 17, I think. And I, I just don't think it's appropriate to put right here. It's, it's in the document.
But, we can do this, this straw poll, because I, I think that's a, that's a good test, right now, because we're, we're kind of here.
Can I just, one clarifying question? I know, it's late, I know, we're trying to go, but, just for Commissioner Norton. I don't see anything in here that says that those people are not valued. So, is there something in the, in these two spreads that makes you, that, that indicates that people who are happy here in single-family homes are not valued?
Isn't it that you're saying...
Because I, I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't show up to me this way.
I did put this on the table, because I'm, I'm really noodling on this, I'm trying to figure it out. So, I put it on the table to broach the topic, I don't, so I don't wanna push this, let me noodle on it.
I mean, I just don't want you to feel like you're not being heard. That, that's the piece, that, I think the table is friendly to making sure you're being heard.
I think you wanna make sure everything that's happened over the past six weeks or three meetings is heard and incorporated in some way.
People are feeling like they're heard.
What I'm hearing you saying is that there's a lot that, as we read this document, we nod. We're nodding, "Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah." And, you know, "We just flagged this, access to essential destinations, blah, da, blah, da, blah." We need a site for that, because that seems like a value statement, but still, we nod when we read that. And I think what Commissioner Norton is suggesting is that there are other folks who aren't having much yet to nod at, and they're maybe having, they're reading some statements that really will jump out at them as value statements, that they don't feel reflected in, and...
Maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe that's what I'm noodling on. So, I wanna throw that on the table, and let's, please just think it through, and I'll, if I have a better, more coherent suggestion, I'll come back with it.
So, for now, I wrote "table." Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
I wanted to make a strike on 17 and 18. Is this the right time to suggest that?
Me too.
I thought we were on 17.
Oh, we are on 17.
So, so, and I'm, I'm gonna ask, I think I should ask for a straw poll, because I'm asking for it to be cut, and I'm gonna say exactly what I think needs to be cut. We got multiple public comments on this, and I agree with them. So, the last two sentence, sentences, in the farthest right-hand paragraph, at the bottom right-hand corner of 17, "Commercial property values are rising faster than residential values, and some commercial properties generate more value per acre. To foster economic diversification, the city must balance the urgent need for affordable housing with strategic commercial development, creating opportunities for emerging businesses and reducing reliance on the university." And then on 7, on 18, there's a very similar concept at the top of the page. "While new housing generates revenue for the city and helps capitalize the Affordable Housing Fund, losing non-residential tax base shifts an even greater burden on residential properties." Da, 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 da. I think I'm clear with what I wanna strike, it's those, it's all of that content. There are various reasons I think we should, I summarized some of them in my comments on January 23rd. We got more public comments on these, I think they're well-made. I have not heard this issue balancing or prioritizing commercial development to be dominant or even major ethematically in our public comments. The notion that we need to do this is unsupported by data that I'm aware of. These claims are not supported in the document. I think they're counterintuitive, they run counter to what we heard tonight from Mr. Hauptman regarding the vacancy rates and why some locations struggle to have... and why some locations struggle to have retail, and that's housing. But the most important reason I think they need to go gets back to my comments about the development report. It reached the exact opposite conclusion on this issue. It affirmatively, affirmatively rejected the prioritization of this. It prioritized housing development. And it laid out four, it laid out four values and directed us to prioritize those at the expense of others. This was not one of them. I think these, these sentences need to go. They're not, I was not, I didn't support these sentences on the 23rd, and I would just ask for a quick straw poll. If that's where folks are, let's just cut them.
Would you also add that box on page 19?
The box on page 19? Did I miss one?
Commercial properties add revenue to the city and require less spending?
Yes, yes, add that to the straw poll. That needs to go too.
Plus one.
Okay, we haven't done a straw poll here, so all those in favor, just.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? You had a couple comments in there, Commissioner Adams.
Yep.
Do you, would you be interested in seeing the data that backs those up or you don't care about that?
No, no, let's just cut it.
Okay, all right.
I think, and, and it's not that I'm not interested in data, it's that I raised this issue on the 23rd and we're kind of out of time, like, we need to mark the document up. There's no data in here and I don't agree with the, with the statements, so I think they just need to go.
Okay. All those, like, we're just gonna do a straw poll with your hands so that I can see.
Are we in favor?
Yeah, that are in favor of striking. All right, so one, two, three, four, five, six. Those against?
That's a no.
Okay, well, I want to let them vote.
I don't know enough about it, but it is, I do find, I mean, I'll agree with striking it, but I think we need commercial development and I think that is part of, but it's just weird that, to me, that it comes in in these, like, that it's not a separate section or a, or an important piece for commercial development, that it's just like a little bit in these where it's kind of put in as just a, oh, yeah, and here, this thing is really important to the entire health of the city, but it's like a paragraph somewhere in the middle of something that's just kind of come up. And I, I think that's why it, it feels very disjointed. It doesn't feel, again, I was looking at like Folder's comprehensive plan and, you know, it's a huge section of their comprehensive plan, like, how do you do? And so it just feels very.
Totally.
Thrown in here.
Totally. I, I just don't think it's a, it's not that it's not important, it's just that I don't think that we need to spend a lot of time planning around it. And, and one of the things that I did before the meeting is I went and looked at that Economic Development Report, which was prepared with a lot of engagement among experts in City Hall, outside of City Hall, for what did they say about it? Not very much. And they, they didn't view it as important to economic development, they didn't, they didn't view it, and they tackled land use too, right? So I was thinking about, okay, check my math on this. This doesn't feel important enough to include here. Am I wrong? How did that earlier document that I didn't have a hand in tackle it? And the answer is, it didn't. And it actually, I think, pushed us in a different direction, which is why I think it just needs to come out.
Okay, I think we struck it. Commissioner Mills or Dish, did you all want to say anything before we moved on?
Are we still on page 18 or 19?
We're still in the strike.
We're still on the strike, okay.
Yeah, like, the, the, the eyes had it, but I just wanted to make sure.
I wanted to see the data first.
Okay, before striking.
So that's why I didn't vote, because like, show, like, but that's overall. I'd like to see more citations, so I don't, I'm not opposed, but I, I would like that before striking, but I'm cool.
And, I mean, I'm just relooking at the report.
Which report?
The Economic Development Report.
Okay, thank you.
This is how he, development is a hard term to define universally. For some, it means business, retention, blah, blah, blah. For the purpose of this report, we will mean placemaking or using the power of the government to create spaces where people want to live, work, and recreate. It also means land development for housing or for the attraction of employers and jobs. And some of the direction of this report was about some of the things that people have been saying to us about protecting local business, which is not quite the same as this point that's grounded in commercial property values. So I am not, I, yeah.
I'm not opposed to something being in there that tackles this with more precision or more data, but I think for the purposes of this evening, those statements strike me as unsupported and contrary to the, like, going back to the four values that are laid out in the top of the report and the direction to prioritize those values over others. The direction to placemake around strategic land use development strikes me as very different from some of the claims that are being made here. And if they're going to be made, I just think they need to be supported. I'm not opposed to them reemerging in some other form that's more specific and more database, but if I'm reading the document and looking at things that feel like substance to me that need to go, that don't feel right, those don't feel right and I feel like they need to go. If, if, if there needs to be a subsequent conversation about how to fold a better concept in, I'm happy to have that.
That sounds good to me.
So yes, we can remove for now and then, like I said, there's going to be rounds of edits so we can talk to the consultants about the data on this and re-present it to you all if that's of interest.
All right.
No concerns.
Let's, can we go on to 20 and 21?
Oh, sorry. Can I say about 18 and 19? We gave them the note that this is a bit chaotic and that we would like it to be redone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other, one other comment. We got a, we got a, what do you call it? A public comment about maybe adding in here, which is maybe going to some of the stuff that Commissioner Adams was saying, a map that addresses the relationship between density and taxable value? Because I think one of the concerns here is that there's, well, one question, we got a question and I don't know the answer to this, which goes back to page 17, the paragraph, along with tax-based growth, new commercial growth, blah, blah, blah. In this, in this conception, does commercial growth include apartment buildings?
Right, right.
So I think that's a really, that needs to be clarified. What's commercial, what's not?
It does.
And, I know, but we, we need to say it explicitly. And then we got a communication from Mr. Goodman and I think there are others who were, maybe Mr. Westphal. This relationship between density and taxable value, which would show that actually, you know, high-rise apartment buildings generate more taxable revenue than commercial office space. So if we're gonna try to, but we could just back off the whole thing, but I think if we're gonna go dive in, then I think more accurate data would be helpful and I totally agree that this diagram is eligible. Thank you.
Yeah. This was the only diagram that I thought could use some work as I was moving through. I was like, oh, this one was hard.
Yeah, and there's also, like, I've heard from people at the city of, you know, like, an apart, and others, that an apartment building does not use more resources, but a single-family neighborhood actually uses more resources, because there's more paving, more lines of utilities, more, and so, like, what is housing? Again, we get to that point. Is housing single-family houses or is housing an apartment building downtown, which actually, from what I've heard, uses fewer resources than, say, Lansdowne or someplace like that?
That's generally true.
It's just that I'd heard the name recently.
Okay, how about moving on to 20 and 21?
So here, I'm gonna jump in, because I, I do, one thing that I think is clear in the data but absent in the narrative, is something happens in 1970. And I can see historically that there were conversations that continue from the third paragraph on page 20 that start right around 1957. The zoning ordinance codifies the single-family zoning and they changed the minimum lot sizes. So the AADL has a whole article, but it's not till 1970 where they're discussing moving the minimum lot sizes from wherever they are to one acre. And at the time, the city had a vision in 1970 to grow to 150,000 by 1980. And that growth does not occur. And so there's something that happens in the 70s that changes the zoning, that constrains the development of housing and keeps us stuck here for 55 years. And it's missing from this narrative. And so it's just something I wanted to, to highlight.
Do we know what that is?
I was gonna ask Brett if you could summarize what you heard.
I mean, we don't have to discuss it. I, I just want to.
I just want to make sure we're getting your point correctly. Do you understand?
Yeah. The question is, is there's an untold story of something happened that slowed down our growth compared to what our plan was. And nineteen, around 1970, what was it?
Yeah, so it starts in 57.
Yeah.
And it continues, because the first historic district arrives in 1972. So that, that's contributory, but it's, there, there's a lot of stuff. Sure, very minor. I, I'm gonna hear from the historic district folks, starting tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, I'll see what we can find.
The increased minimum lot sizes, one of the key ones was in 1980. It's the one that we just undid two years ago.
The R2A.
Yeah, that was in 80. And in 1963, the zoning law had said, let's, let's allow this, and they had a very, a much smaller lot size minimum. And then in 1980, that was increased for those sizes. So it is definitely going on in that spread, you know?
Well, I know our 4C, and I should know the dates, but I don't remember, is that, you know, that zoning code isn't, is, is not to conform to the built infrastructure. That zoning code is to demolish our current, or the current built infrastructure, which is why there 85% are out of compliance. It is not to save the small neighborhoods, or the neighborhoods of small houses. It is to get rid of those, to do a different form. And we've just not done that in most of those our 4C neighborhoods. But, but yeah, there, there was some, you know, something is happening to try to change what is existing and that just hasn't happened over the years, for the most part, for some it has.
It could be too, when you're explaining it, that there was an, that things opened up outside of Ann Arbor, that a lot of development started happening out there and pulling people out, as well as the city doing things to push people away.
Really quickly before we move on, this page 20 is one of two places in this document where the word gentrification is used. I don't, I don't love that word, I just think that there's a lot wrapped up in that. So I would either define it or just restate it completely and take it out of both places.
Yeah, because I think we can talk about displacement.
Yeah, or dispersion.
Yeah, and there are, there are current articles that MLive has, have done, especially around Carytown, that sort of explained the story. So the inability to get home improvement loans, the city's sort of urban planning, development, or revitalization narrative during this period. There are lots of things that are happening in the city that on one surface appear race neutral, but then have a demonstrative outsized effect on a specific population within the city. And so I know Mr. Leonard and Councilmember Dish and a U of M student tried to do some research to see if the city utilized red, redlining maps, but the city wasn't a large enough municipality for the government to create those maps. But the insurance maps tell a different story, because they were not able to get insurance for the house, which meant they weren't able to get a mortgage for the house, which meant they weren't able to purchase the house. So while the city doesn't have a history of redlining that other major metropolitan areas do, it doesn't mean that they didn't have systems of exclusion that prevented blacks from obtaining what Commissioner Norton has been talking about, single-family homes, to sort of participate in those essential beneficial aspects of their, their life. And so that has had an impact both on the population, but it's also had a significant impact on the black population within the city. And you can see it in the data. It, like, from 1957 till it flatlines, something is constraining. But the city is still growing and the county is growing, so, you know, something is happening.
Okay, any other comments?
Just two terminological points. I think if we mean detached, single-family housing, we might want to specify that, because there are other forms of single-family housing that are not detached and that would require zoning changes to most of our residential districts in order to enable them. And so I think the model that we're talking about, that gets written in stone, is the, it's one thing per parcel and it's a detached thing. So, and then the other thing is, I don't honestly know what concentrated code enforcement It's in the second, key factors contributing to the disintegration of these black neighborhoods include concentrated code enforcement in the 1960s.
Yeah, we tried to find a site for that. Part of that was the urban renewal and model cities. Those are actually federally fun, federal funds that were brought in to impart increased code enforcement in a specific geography.
It's a race, it's sort of a race neutral.
It's like profiling.
Profiling, it's sort of like when crime, crime statistics are specific to neighborhoods, because if they are being policed, the police are there, so they are finding crimes. But police don't patrol my subdivision, so the criminality that's present in my neighborhood doesn't show up in those reports. And that's what it is. It's that kind of enforcement.
Yep, so let's give it an example. So what kind of, you know, I mean, we know about the driving, your taillight is out, blah, da, blah, da, blah. If, if this is residential code enforcement, I think it would be really helpful to just put that in a way that someone would understand. Yeah. And yes, a site would be great, but I literally mean a definition, just make it, yeah.
Woo-hoo, we're on to chapter two.
Wow.
Chapter one is very long.
I think the seven chapters are shorter.
You're featured very nicely on this spread, Mr. Leonard.
Can we talk about this photo?
Hey, I have my own photo that's later in the document that I want to strike.
It's like a high school yearbook, like, how many times do you show up indicates how popular you are.
There's actually this dog looking right at the camera.
Yeah, I love the dog.
They're like, is there space for me in Ann Arbor?
Okay, let's keep moving.
And the dog is big. So I had a general question, if you all want to start here. I think it could start us off of just this chapter in general. Does this, do you support how the engagement process and results are presented? Meaning, would you like to see more detail or different details? Or are you happy towards the end, there's those major takeaways as the summary of what we've heard?
I need more detail. I need appendices. I, I feel like some of, I don't know what more, I want to know, like, how they came to these conclusions that they put in here. I feel like, I don't know, I mean, especially because of things we've been hearing over the past six weeks, and I'm not condoning a lot of it, and I, now I'm getting tired to see, this is the problem.
Really tired.
Um, I, A, I'm wondering if there is, is data that shows that people were like, I don't want anything to change, because like, that's missing. I feel like some of this data was cherry picked to tell a very specific narrative.
Well, let me, let me just be clear about our engagement. We didn't ask people, do you want to see development or not? We started with the premise that this plan is to coordinate development over 25 years. So we don't have any evidence of people saying, I don't want any of this, because we didn't start with that question.
We have to add the question somewhere, like, maybe that's an appendix.
But they didn't ask.
No, we didn't ask it.
The questions that you did ask.
Oh, they are.
Are they here? Where? See, there's some.
On the, on page 26 on the left. Isn't that, aren't those the questions?
I mean, so here's, here's the challenge to this, is we did several different events and then as we collected data, we started asking different questions. So different people answered different questions across the city at different times. So these are generally in questions that we have asked, I mean, not generally, these are specific questions that we have asked.
I mean, I think this represents what you did. And so for me, I feel like this is the appropriate place to report. Here's what you did. You asked these questions, these are the answers that you got. I think we are now getting new feedback to the process, which we can figure out how we want to include, but I don't think it negates that these are the questions that you asked and these are the answers that you received. And I think to change that invalidates that process, which I don't, I don't support. That is not to say that people who are now either because they have become aware or because they are tuning in, self-selecting into it, want their. want their public engagement to be considered. We have created mechanisms for that public engagement to be considered. But I don't think it changes how you arrived at the document.
Well, here's specifically why I said what I said. We heard, we've heard from people over and over that there was like not some option in the survey to say that you want single-family to stay single-family and never be changed and never allowed duplexes, like if that's, and I can't remember. So like, if that's true, I'd just like to see, like what were the survey questions? Like, can that go in an appendix?
Oh, that could go into an appendix. And the survey results are posted on the Engagement Hub with the new, the new site that we created. The survey results are.
I want to just underscore that, because one of the people in the very beginning of our meeting with Public Comment asked about the survey data being available. The survey data is available. Not that, not that they're listening, but.
Appendix it here too, like put it everywhere then.
I also think, you know, looking at slide 30, and I'm not trying to jump around, but like we're talking about the section. It does have the, do you want to see, how do you want to see your neighborhood change or not change? And then there's a full breakdown of kind of where folks kind of landed. So that, that.
But that was just for downtown. Isn't that just for downtown? My neighborhood is not on here.
Yes, so a lot of, so, so the feedback that's in here, just to clarify, these are the formal engagement sessions that we held. So you are correct in that all the people that have been coming to Public Comment, this was Commissioner Norton's comment earlier, those have not been systematically categorized and incorporated in here.
That's fine, I think.
Yes, so at our engagement sessions, we did joint sessions with the DDA, who's also rewrite, rewriting their development plans. So I think that question is more specific to downtown or adjacent, surrounding downtown neighborhoods.
I'm corrected.
Yeah, and I, but I do want to say, on page 31, you do show all of the city and where there are dots, because there were all city maps available at the engagements. I went to them, I saw the maps. So you can see in my neighborhood, which is Lansdowne, there is some green dots over there.
That's not that people participated from there, that's where do you want, where do they want to see future growth? And it's mostly like corridors.
But, but my neighborhood is, that is a triangle all the way to 94. And that is a primarily single family, detached, single-family resident neighborhood, except for the apartments that are right at 94. So the fact that there is some indication to say, hey, you know, here, which is the, and our republic school land across the street from my house, that they want the development on. But that's not going to happen, so, you know, just saying that there is some data.
Were the people putting the dots in your neighborhood necessarily residents in your neighborhood?
No. No, well, we, we didn't track that.
Yeah. How, can I ask the survey, we're getting lots of, you should have done a scientifically valid survey through postcards to everybody. How did you do the surveys? How did, how were they distributed?
They were not scientific. We did an online survey. We distributed it widely. We did social media, we did press releases. I think it was featured both on MLive and WEMU.
Yeah, that's part of our social media is next door, which reaches like every neighborhood in the city.
So it was a voluntary survey that was widely distributed, it wasn't.
Correct, yeah.
This city very rarely does a scientific survey.
And I, I'm not arguing that they should have, but I think we should address that. I mean, I think what you said earlier, that we started off with, this whole process started off, we're developing a plan for managing growth in the next 25 years. The questions that were asked and the way they were framed changed over the course of the process in response to the feedback we got, those would, and we did surveys that were voluntary surveys that were distributed widely through multiple channels.
Okay.
That would help explain, I think that would at least explain better to folks how this was all constructed and why things changed over time, because we're responding.
Commissioner Norton, can you, you need to speak into your mic, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to talk loud enough. Is that helpful? I think those would be good kind of points to fold in.
Everyone's nodding along to that?
Yeah, no, that's all fine, I support that 100%.
I just want to point out a contradiction on 31, at least what reads to me as a contradiction. And maybe I'm missing something. But 73% of participants said they were in support of gentle density throughout the city, throughout the city, up to four units. But it's sitting next to this remarkable, to me, map. This one is called what the, this has a name, this map had a buildup map, or I forget what, what it was called in the engagement. But if you look at this map that you were talking about a moment ago, Commissioner White, there are a lot of green and gold dots on arterials. There's almost nothing in single-family detached housing neighborhoods. I mean, there are a few scattered, you know, build up a little in those. But man, oh man, I mean, yeah, there's Plymouth Road, yep. But all of the, you know, the, the, the part in Ward 1 where I live, there are just very few dots. And this just doesn't, it's not, what people say and then what they do when they look at a map is different. And so it is interesting, and I, I mean, I wrote you guys about this. But I feel as though, I mean, I'm having this sort of same sense that Commissioner Norton is having, which is that there are, there are ways in which we will say things, but then when you ask us where we want to put it, we are not consistent with what we've said, because we are exempting parts of the city.
When you say we, do you mean?
We and our brides.
Oh, okay, okay.
We and our brides.
Yes.
We are humans.
Yes.
And there are things that we really want. But when it comes down to the map, or when it comes down to the actual site, we say, I love that, but I really don't want it next to me, but I think it's a great idea. And I feel like this map kind of shows that, and I don't think that that's bad. I'm not trying to be judgmental, which is why I'm using the word we. But I think that it, that the public engagement brought forth an issue in this kind of change, which is getting voiced by people who feel that they're not being heard and that they weren't represented in the public engagement. But I actually think their view is beautifully represented by this map. And so I don't, I think I may need to stop there, but.
All right. Can I add two follow-ups to that? Or is there another?
Just for a second, Commissioner Mills has been trying to get in.
I am totally, well, I wanted to talk about this, but, so go ahead, and it's more about what's next.
And then you can go right after, is that okay?
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to add that this is the nature of, of public engagement. If you notice that everyone says that they agree with the values. Everyone agrees with affordability and very few people want it near them. This is the history of planning in the US. So that's something for us to consider. I will also say to the people that have said they have not been heard, maybe they did not attend our engagement sessions, but they have been heard at Public Comment. So their input is still included, I would say.
Yeah. Well, and so I think that that is a lovely transition to say, thinking through how this is going to be incorporated and what this looks like for the engagement sessions that we have in the course of the next month. Like, are we doing that, particularly this, what's on page 31? Like, I'm not, I am not suggesting that we do it again. And the idea that we heard from 400 people, there's 400 stickers on this map out of a city of 120,000 people, 123,000 people, right? Like, I think that that, I think that that's one of the questions that I had about it and including it and, and just thinking about how these later stage, now that we have a draft that we are still engaging on, will be incorporated into part of what our process was in drafting this plan? I don't know what that looks like. Like, you obviously can't write about the stuff that you haven't heard yet when you put out the draft. Like, it's the chicken and an egg thing, but I, I think that you're going to get that question. And so knowing how, is it too late to? That's something that people are going to ask you. My dot isn't on that map now, can I, how do I, how do I put my dot on that map? And so I, anyway, I just think, I don't, obviously, I don't have a solution. I just think it's a question you're going to hear.
Well, I am working on, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go first, I'll go after.
I am working on materials for the next engagement session. It is going to be largely focused on the goals and getting feedback on the goals and the future land use map, because that is now new information to, to the public. And I think it would also help you all see to what extent people agree with not only the goals, but to what extent they feel our strategies meet our goals. Because like I said, everyone seems to agree with the values, right? Affordability, sustainability, equity. What, the conflict is the how and the where. And I do think that there's always going to be some, some conflict there as public engagement is not a perfect process, right? I mean, we feel proud of the 3,100 people who took the survey. And people are also rightly pointing out that it's a very small percentage of the city. I've been doing engagement for a decade and I've, I have not seen better numbers than that. It is very difficult to get people to spend their evening talking about 2050. Right, people are worried about next week. So I guess I'm, what I'm saying is we can continue to ask more questions. They won't be scientific, things will continue to shift based on who is there and who isn't there. And it, and so I guess I want to know what level of detail you all want to see in this section? And if you're okay with what has been done so far?
I, I think the level of detail is good, particularly if we have an appendix or a way to access the survey data and other things, right? That doesn't need to be in the plan. My, my sense of the map is that this is, this is, this is the map. You can read it how you want, you can interpret it how you want. There aren't like interpretations of the map right here, it's just the map. The one thing I lament, I suppose, is that on page 30, where it says 73% of participants gentle density, up to four units, right? So that, right there is where we say, that's kind of like where everything swerved a bit, because that was in the engagement materials. But then it feels like this is then, I don't know, I'm just pointing that out. But I, my other comments are actually, I want to go back to page 29 in this affordable, equitable, sustainable. There are two, two in the affordable that feel either like they're, they need to be wordsmithed or removed. Tax burden and landlord regulation. It feels very unclear to me, I don't know what that means.
I think these came from the public.
But they, but we need to, we need to, they need to be articulated.
Okay.
They need to be clarified or, they aren't like every single one, they're like a synthesis of what came from the public.
Right, so like, is the, like clarifying is the tax burden that people can't age in place?
So a summary of key themes that emerged is below. And a key theme under affordable is tax burden and landlord regulation. I don't totally know what that means.
I think they're saying that.
Yeah, they can't age in place in their house.
Taxes are so high.
Yeah, right, but I would dis, I would separate those two things then and say, high property taxes, and then is landlord regulation, they're not regulated enough? They have strict regulation, I don't know, anyway. You get my point though, right? Just that one, I'd flag that one. And the other one I'd flag is distrust of developers and city government choices.
Yep.
I don't know what the relationship is between that and affordable as a value, so. And then the other one I'm going to want to flag in the sustainable column at the bottom is concern about impact on affordability. I think we can actually just be more clear and say, you know, something that like, people worry that those two things are incompatible, affordability and sustainability, that we can't have both or something. You're looking confused at me, Michelle.
I guess I would just raise the point is, I'd be nervous of editing these, because I'm pretty sure these were all written.
Then they should all be in quotations. They look like, up above it says a summary of key themes that emerged is below, not like a sampling of.
Yeah, so if you, yeah, I would say use quotes if you don't want to edit, because then that solves the problem.
Okay, and then on the left where there are quotes, I feel like that would be, these three quotes feel like they are actually in the service of one idea. And this would be a place to, Commissioner Norton's point, where if there were people who shared visions for the future that said, I want it to be exactly what it is now, you could include that here to like diversify the viewpoints.
Yes, I think that's a good point, and I do want to let you know that staff feels pretty strongly, we, one recommendation we're going to give to them, and we can ask you, is to remove all of the quotes from this document, because for that very reason, where I think they feel cherry picked or self-serving. And that, I do think this document does a good job in the narrative of showing a balanced view, but I don't think the quotes do. So that would be in line with something that we were mentioning, like we could, and maybe we want to take a vote on this, remove these examples here on page 28. That's what you're referring to, right? The Mad Lib.
Examples of shared priorities, yeah.
I think my only question about that is, I remember early in the engagement that the consultants were using their North Star as the council resolution, which had a narrative. And I feel like we're now changing the narrative of, I feel like we are now changing the narrative of the council resolution, because we're, yeah, I'll, I'll just stop there. That, that was the thing that just triggered inside, as I was listening to these, these quotes. So if that does happen, I just want to put a placeholder to come back to that in a later conversation, maybe before we submit everything to the consultants for a draft revision.
So you're, you're asking not to remove the quotes for now?
No, I think, I think what I'm asking, what I'm highlighting is, the critique is that the quotes are in a direction. And I think that is on purpose.
Yes.
And I think it's on purpose because it was following the North Star of the council resolution. And now we are going to change that, which is our right to do if we choose to. But I just want to put a pen there to revisit that before that actually occurs. Because when I sat in the earliest, earliest conversations, like before, when we had concepts of a plan, that's, that's when, well, that's, that was it.
That's nice.
Because that's when we were talking about all of this. And so I just, I just want to put a pen there. There's, there's, there's a gate for me that I'm stopping at, so.
I guess, so I remember, oh, sorry.
Commissioner Norton, I know, but he is waiting.
I want to point out, ultimately, this plan will be adopted by the city council. So it's the city council's plan, but the way this whole thing is structured is it's the planning commission's plan. And one of the charges we have is to craft a plan that listens to and respects the guidance we've gotten from the city council. But it also requires that we consult with the public and get their feedback. And so now we're put in the difficult position of having to reconcile those things. So I, and, so when I read this, I took it to be, well, here's what the city council told us our guideline should be. And here's what we heard from the residents, and that's all kind of getting folded in to now how we're viewing crafting the plan, and I think that's okay. So, but I would say, if we're going to do that, we definitely need to update all of this stuff to incorporate all the stuff we're hearing now, which is adding some more perspectives that arguably weren't covered as broadly early on as what they were, so that we really are giving, if we're going to give a sampling of quotes from the city residents, let's make sure it's really representative of what we're hearing, that's my first comment.
Yeah.
My second comment is, and we should update the numbers too, like, because we're going to end up having a lot more meetings and hearing lots of more comments, and all of that can be folded in. My other comment too is I didn't like the quotes throughout the rest of the document. I thought they were cherry picked, and it wasn't clear to me what process they were using to pull them. So I would be in favor of just pulling them out. And then finally on page 33, where these summaries, I would like to know a little bit more of how they got to these. What process did they use to articulate the themes that they're presenting here?
I wrote a lot of how, what, huh, on that exact spread? Just like, how did they get to this? Like, what was said? I could tell you specifically at some point, but like, and then gentrification came up again. I wanted to respond just to what you said a little bit, and then what Commissioner Norton kind of followed up with. So I don't, I remember at the very beginning of this process, and city council had their resolution, and we had these values, right? Affordable, equitable, sustainable. And I remember saying, like, if this, if things come out in public participation, where like there's different values, or people don't agree with this, like, we're going to take that into consideration, right? And you said, yes. I don't, nothing that I've heard has made me think that these are the wrong values. So like, I think we're, we're still good on the council resolution. Like, I mean, I think, people are screaming at us about affordable housing, which is like such a hard thing for us to tackle. So I, I think like, we're all kind of saying the same thing. Like, we, we can keep these things in, like, I don't think we have to change any of the values based on any public comment that I've heard. But I would also agree with taking out the quotes, just because of reasons that we already said. But I think we're, I think we're good, even with all of the comments that we've had recently that are like very angry about very specific things, I think there's still equity and affordability and sustainability is still very important to people.
Yeah, I think where I'm.
Yeah, I think where I'm seeing, I agree with that. But where I'm seeing, and because I'm in a neighborhood that is talked about fairly often as being a neighbor, A, it's a neighborhood that has had a lot of development and B, a neighborhood that people think should have more development, is I think where, where, where people are, are surprised is that it's in their neighborhood. And I think that that's something, like, we have the Ann Arbor for All, we have the, like, that we have talked about this as a, as a city and what do we want, and we have these values for the city. And I, I think for a lot of people, this has been the first time that they've really connected that these things are going to affect them. And, and for someone like me, like, oh yeah, of course, you know, that's easy. Because that's going to happen in my neighborhood and it is happening and it has happened. And like, I've gotten used to it. But I think for a lot of people, and maybe this is something in our public engagement of, people are very into the, they, they absolutely feel strongly about the values. But those values are in, in other appropriate places in the city. And their neighborhood is not the appropriate place. And so how we make that distinction of like, A, if somebody's going to put a fourplex in Burns Park, it is not going to be the same fourplex that goes up next to me. Like, that, it's just that, that's how the development is, it's not going to happen that way. But, but we can't just say that because, I mean, it could, you know, like, so I think kind of really getting to the thing of, it's not that people honestly are like, no, I don't want this near me. I just don't think people have, have thought about it. Like, that it's not, because they live in a single family neighborhood, they don't live in a neighborhood of quadplexes. And it's not something they've thought about. Like, and so this is really jarring for people who do have all the values. And they're not actively thinking, oh, I don't want that. They just have never considered that it would be in their neighborhood.
I, I wanted to propose doing a straw poll and removing the, the quotes from the center of slide, whatever it is, page. It's at the center, it's the right hand side of 28. But here's, and let me just.
Okay, but can we frame the vote though? Because like, I don't like those quotes, but I would like more representative quotes.
Well, so, so that's actually why I'm proposing eliminating them. Which is that I don't.
But not all.
I'm not, so it's, I think the concern that I'm hearing staff say is that it's, they're not representative. They're sort of maybe picked and they don't like, but it's also hard, I think, and, and I think messy, but also unnecessary to do that work. Because thematically, the, the other slides in the section, I think, do that job of distilling an enormous volume of feedback into judgment calls, right? This isn't scientific, but judgment calls that were made by staff and the consultants around what they heard. And I'm comfortable with those statements when they've been distilled down. And judgment has been used to figure out what were the main themes we heard and what buckets do they fall in? And what was the number one theme, thing we heard? I don't think we need to relay exact quotes or engage in the effort of picking a set of six or eight or 12 or 10 or 30 quotes that are representative of a broad spectrum of ideas. So, if that, that feels problematic, staff is telling, providing some feedback that that's a little problematic. So let's just eliminate it unless there's value in it. I feel like it's, I feel like the rest, like, I don't lose any boat speed by cutting it. The rest of the, these slides do the work. And I just think it's messy, so.
All right, let's do another straw poll.
Everything under Vision of Ann Arbor on slide 28.
So those three quotes.
And if people want to keep them, we can talk about making them more representative, but I'm proposing just cutting them.
All right, all those in favor of cutting them? One, two, okay, we have everyone. All right, cut away.
And a friendly kind of follow on, for the stuff on page 29, are they quotes or are they themes or what are they? Just to get clarification on what exactly are they supposed to be?
So can I relay what I've heard to see if I get this right? So, pretty clearly moving, removing the quotes from 28 that we just voted on. 29, figuring out how those were summarized, or if they're direct quotes. If they are summarized, then they need to be clarified.
Yes.
Or separated, because you could do tax burden and then do the land.
Or separated. There are some things that I'm still not clear on. So, on page 33, would we like more narrative about how we got to these?
Yes. Surely they had some kind of process they used to distill them down. It would, even just a couple sentences, how did they do that?
Okay, I think we can do that. And then, um.
Could I, sorry, could I suggest like, on 32, they say summary of themes from public engagement process? And put a footnote there? And then that's where you can do it?
Describe the process, you mean?
I'm sorry?
Describe the process in a footnote to the tiny little thing that says summary.
Yeah, because this, it, it's a summary, somebody processed a whole bunch of feedback and got there.
I think maybe that's too fine printy.
Sure.
I mean, instead of major themes and takeaways, how about summary of themes from public, you know, in the big print?
That, that may be better. And then, and then a footnote to that.
Totally.
Yes, I agree, I concur.
And this could be appendancy too, if they're supporting stuff to support some of these like very big. There are also some concerns about potential gentrification and erosion of quality of life, that's a huge statement. Like, some concerns, like, what is that, who, what, who? Like, where's the backup?
Okay, I think in some of these instances, we may have numbers. But when we say who, we did not take demographics, we did not ask for people, everything is anonymous.
Sure.
Just to make that clear. But, um, okay, so I have the note to how did we get to these? Change it to summary of major takeaways at the top of, what is that, 32? And then we can talk about as staff, how to put in an appendix more detailed information from public engagement. Does that seem to cover?
Yeah, I mean, you already have part of that, right, in the executive summary?
We have it all, we just don't have it like.
Yeah, ready to go.
Yeah.
Is building up a little, a lot, or moderately defined? Was that defined anywhere or no?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay, can we just maybe say that it wasn't really, like, people could come up there and, because it's just like, I don't know.
And I don't know that the absence of a icon was a block. So that's the other thing. Just because there's not a, like, a little sticker there, doesn't mean that people didn't want to see housing there. So I don't think it's a vote against it. But just from my experience of being in the room.
Chapter three.
Chapter three.
What's that?
Oh, you're advancing the slides, I'm like, I'm already on slide 39. Oh, okay, well, let's go straight to 40.
It's like an auction though, like going ones, 36, 36, 36.
No, it's like Zingerman's.
Themes to grow within its current boundaries, sorry, I'm on the very first page. I mean, we, don't we have, not have a choice?
I mean.
You know, this is something I was thinking of as well, because it's often framed as we can grow up or we can grow out. But I, we can't really grow out.
That was, that came later too, where I was like, we can't grow out.
I think they want to make clear.
I wanted to say we could, but.
I don't, it's not realistic, right? I guess we'll say that.
Yes, we, I will concur, it's not realistic.
Ann Arbor has to grow if it's current of the boundaries.
Yeah, like, we, is, are we responsibly growing or are we sustainably growing?
So you just want to strike it since.
I don't know that I want to strike it, I just want to like.
I think Parkland's just trying to put a statement that we want to grow. We want to grow within our boundaries, so.
Okay.
But if that's not clear.
Can we say wants to instead of aims to? I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't, what about that was bothering me? We can put a pin in that.
Yep.
Um, and then this will bring more people closer to jobs and amenities, provide more transportation choices. Like, how is growing providing, I mean, like, that just, that also feels like, if we grow by increasing more housing options, how is that going to, are we just assuming that like transportation will follow?
Well, we have 80,000 commuters every day and if they live in the city, they probably have, they have more transportation choices than if they don't live in the city. So by going housing, we are providing transportation choices.
Is this our vision statement or no? Like this, or is this just sort of a description of the chapter? I was reading it as like the vision statement, which is why I was getting like really in the weeds of it.
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay, well, let's workshop it. See what the people think.
It might be good to explain why we aim to grow within our current boundaries.
Right, it's almost more like need to grow.
Right, need to, right. Last night, Jennifer Hall said, well, for one thing, Ann, Michigan is a, is a home rule state. And so, uh, you know, in, in, in Texas, apparently, according to the New York Times Magazine from this weekend, which was distressing, you can just sprawl. And you have a lot of success with creating more housing because you can just keep on going. And we can't do that here. And also, we have the green belt legislation. And I do think people need to be reminded of that, because the green belt does constrain our growth. So, it's, it's not just a choice.
And we have townships and a lot of places don't have townships.
Exactly. And I mean, I love this statement. Actually, I have it highlighted as something that I really like. Ann Arbor aims whatever, maybe we tweak the verb, but grow within its current boundaries. I think that that is a huge statement.
Footnote, green belt, township.
Yeah.
Just, there are empirical reasons why that's true. Like, we made a value judgment, we adopted a green belt, and we live in a world where we can't just annex stuff. Jennifer then went on a, like a launching of all the things she wanted to annex. But she didn't agree when I suggested Greenland.
Oh my God, that took me a second.
Some of that too can be tackled on the next slide, right? Which provides some of the backing for the, the value, the values framework, there's some explanation in there.
So maybe that also says expanding out, rather than expanding out, we can't.
Well.
But yes, that could come in there.
Totally, and the why, the why is a sentence maybe right after that, right?
Yep.
So, legally, Ann Arbor cannot shut its doors and say, we're not going to take any more people. People want to be here. It's really hard in Michigan to annex neighboring jurisdictions, especially when the neighboring townships have become charter townships. They do that to, can prevent from being annexed. So really, it's more, Ann Arbor is growing and we need to grow within our current boundaries.
That's absolutely, yeah, exactly, no, exactly.
And how do we grow not?
So the question isn't, do we grow or not? It's how grow and how do we grow in a way that serves everybody?
And how do we grow within our boundaries? I mean, that's why that statement was so good.
And there's another statement, so a related statement here, it's, I think it comes later, that I just keep harping on it. People keep talking about Ann Arbor is fully built out.
It's not.
And the implication is, yeah, so we're going to stop growing. No, that's an incorrect statement. We should like excise that every time that comes out. We've grown horizontally as much as we can, but we have to keep growing and we need to figure out how to make that happen. And don't ever let anybody say that we're fully built out.
Do people feel strongly about what Commissioner Norton just said about, we don't have a choice not to grow? That's, is that in there? Is that sentence, is that, I mean, that sounds great.
Well, not in so many words, but Ann Arbor aims to grow within its current boundaries.
Sure, it's a positive statement, we have it. But, but we also don't ever say like, we don't have the other choice.
We grow or we shrink, we don't stay, there is no staying the same.
Just throwing it out there.
Well, and we can't, I mean, some of the public commenters were, the problem is that it's, the university is growing. And the problem is Ann Arbor is a victim of its own success.
Yes.
And the implication was therefore we should stop anybody else from moving the seed. We can't do that.
Right, no one goes downtown because it's too full.
So whatever the source of the reason that people want to live here, we have to accommodate that. And if we're going to have to accommodate it, let's do it in a way that really serves both current and future residents. I think that's the message we need to somehow convey.
But see, that, that's a, isn't that a educational piece?
There needs to be an educational piece to this.
And I think that's the hard aspect of it. Because to me, that runs against the early set of comments that we had, which is, it, it was from my listening of the addresses, it was two or three specific neighborhoods coming and saying, don't change R2 or three specific neighborhoods. We did not hear from 90% of the 36% that's zoned R1, R2. We heard from two or three neighborhoods. And for me, as someone who started in the city as a renter, tried to rent a house on Crest, was denied, moved out of the city for a minute and then came back. And it's been interesting to think about how we think about housing in the city. And especially the parking conversations that we've been having. Like, I live near the stadium, but I didn't know I lived near the stadium because we bought our house in the spring and it was our first football. And I was like, where, what is going on? Why are people parking? We're like a mile away and you, 16 years later, I've come to love our parkers. So, it's like, how do we educate people about how the city works? I see this with the taxes. We don't understand how the taxes work. I see it with the infrastructure. We don't understand that sometimes more density makes the infrastructure easier to do. So where does that fit? Or rather, does it fit in this document? Because I think it both captures what we've been hearing at the table. But it also, instead of us being in an adversarial role with those commenters, we say, this is the challenge that we're looking at, which is a vibrant, desirable, growing city. How do we take the next step together?
And the room is empty and no one heard what you just said. And there are 11 people watching in line unfortunately.
Only 11? I mean, all, still, actually 11.
I just checked because the speech was good.
It is good, it is good. Can they give it a thumbs up? I would just say, hopefully, heard this comment, I mean, like, we don't need to work it out. But that, in this Ann Arbor Today section that we labored over extensively, we could add, especially if we get rid of some of the comics, there'd be space, some of this information. I feel like that's a very appropriate place to address the specificity of our geographic boundary, which feels like it's really important here. And also that comes right after the air, the timeline errors, which would also talk about, I mean, it doesn't specifically talk about it, but that's when highways get built, right? I mean, that's what defines us, our M1494 and 23.
And the green belt can seduct.
And the green belt.
Which is 2006.
We'll talk about one of them.
Oh, yeah, right there, yeah, yeah.
I'm just going to repeat a comment that I made more directed to Commissioner Dish earlier.
Weedy.
This plan, if, if we try to fully educate green belt taxes.
Just like a little paragraph, just one paragraph.
I know, I, I get it.
Not taxes.
But you are often adding educational and data pieces. And when we, I, I just, I just want to be realistic. When we, even if we add them briefly, and even if we add footnotes, and even if we add appendices, at some point, this document will not be able to educate everybody on every facet of city place making. And so, so I would just ask, when you're talking about these things, make sure that they are things that you think are really critical to communicating the next chapters, the goals, the visions, the things that you're going to be working on in the coming years. And there, we're going through these things and I, I just want to be honest. There's a myriad of things that you're not raising that are probably just as formative to some of the, some of these aspects. So, we're taking notes, but.
Okay.
Fully, fully understand that. But, but I also think that part of my audience here is the council and arming them with sections of the plan that they can point people to when they're in the process of the distribution and the public comment that happens later. I definitely don't want to turn this into a brief, but I also think like in terms of the issues that we think are the most salient, there's some facts that I think need to go in.
All right, page 40 and 41, go ahead, Commissioner Mills.
I, I just had a question on page 39 about whether, we've got questions, direct quotes here. And I, sorry, it is past my chairman time. If we, the vote before was that we also excise these direct quotes?
I feel like before to excise them from that page. Do you want them gone from the entirety of the document?
I don't, I didn't actually have a feeling coming into this, but I'm actually curious what staff's comments were. Because there's others that are throughout here where.
We would remove them all.
I'd remove all of them, that's what you said.
Okay, yeah, sure.
I think.
I don't think, I don't think there's opposition.
Yeah, I think personally, like, I kind of like the sort of, that it brings a voice and it brings a, a personality that I think happens somewhat like the cartoons, but it, it brings kind of a folksiness and a, and a, this is not just a, the consultant saying that this is people here. But I think it's just so hard to pick. And I, I don't know that it's, it's helpful to pick. Because this is a document that's going to live for a long time. And these quotes may or may not help in the future.
Can I ask, before we get to the last, what is the feedback for these values? I'm not, I just have, we want to change, we need to or want to grow in the vision statement and that we want to remind people of the green belt. Are you all okay? Does that mean you're all okay with what is written on this spread that says values? framework?
Yes, but I need some citations, especially, like, "Building more housing supports affordability by easing pressure on supply." We keep hearing a lot of things from people that are like, "That is not true." I mean, I don't know. So I just, I need more citations, I think, throughout here for some of these, like, bold claims.
Do you want citations that support it and citations that oppose it?
Well, if...
Mr. Leonard.
No, well, I mean, that's part of the...
Because you'll find both. No, I mean, well, that's a problem then, right? Because like...
No, it's not, it's not a problem.
It's a challenge then, right?
You still, you and the city sub-agency to pick a policy here and...
Well, then, I think if there is conflicting research, then...
I mean, the bulk of the research supports adding housing supply helps with affordability.
Great.
But I, but I do want to be clear that somebody's going to send you the same study that opposes that.
The majority of research supports. I don't, like, there's ways to...
I would also add the words, "In the long run."
Yeah. Not tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I mean, but really, that is, I think that is what the research is showing.
I guess I don't support adding footnotes throughout, but I, earlier I made the comment that the Economic Development Report, there's a couple paragraphs in there that can be dropped in. And that's council-approved language. It's judgments that have already been made that I don't think we need to relitigate, so...
Yeah, I agree with that one.
I'm glad that Commissioner Hammerschmidt flagged this sentence, though, because this was one of the ones that I really got stuck on because I really did want easing pressure on supply in the long run. But then, just sort of grammatically, something happens in this sentence, "Providing a range of home sizes, types, and prices, contributing to the Affordable Housing Fund, and reducing transportation costs." Yes, but building more housing doesn't necessarily provide a range of home sizes, types, and prices. It depends. If we build diverse types of more housing, yes. And so then, you know, if we specify a little bit more, then it does support why we're talking about a holistic approach, where we are trying to build a system and parts of the city have a different role to play, different geographic parts of the city have a different role to play in this. And, you know, people want row houses, they want cottage houses. You see where I'm going, so it's just a little bit too general. Okay.
Can I, I'm going to, earlier I made a statement about trying to add a perspective and then got pushed back, "No, these are just fact statements, they're not value statements. The things on the left aren't value statements, they're fact statements." Right? Building more, "Building more housing size supports affordability." The things on the right, "We believe in affordability and equability and sustainability," those are the value statements.
Pushed back from me or from another commissioner? I'm sorry.
Well, my earlier comments.
Is there fact statements?
I wasn't trying to be snarky. I was just saying...
No, 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 I just, I want to know whether, because my, I was pushing back earlier on the voices of single-family homeowners being reflected in a slide that was about making, you know, value, like, a mixture of, like, fact and value.
And they were more like fact statements, which is why I kind of backed off. So, because I got the point that you were making, yeah. The point I'm trying to make here is, these aren't value statements, they're factual assertions that then we're using to inform these value statements. So they probably just, see what I'm getting at, Michelle?
I don't.
The first paragraph is a value statement, that's for sure.
I think you were the title on the right side, not the left side.
Yeah, that could help.
Yeah. The statement, "Building more housing supports affordability by easing pressure on supply, providing a range of home..." Those aren't value statements, those are factual assertions.
Yeah, I agree. I'm saying that the first paragraph on the left side is, though, a value statement. So if, I do agree...
That is, yeah. So maybe that needs to be shifted over to the right.
Yeah, I agree with your point that we should sort out the facts from the values here.
The facts and values need to be sorted. Yeah, I'm not contesting them, I'm saying they're being presented in a confusing way.
Got it.
And I mean, the other point I would like us to consider at some point is, as I've heard feedback from the table, a lot of criticism is around, "Density is not going to lead to affordability, therefore, nothing should happen." And I think, I think that is the problematic part for me, which is, no one who is objecting is counting the cost of what happens if we do nothing. And we've taken a forward-moving posture to do something, and we recognize that the things that we plan to do will not achieve everything that we want, but they will move us in that direction. And so, how do we bring that forward? No, go ahead.
There's also empirical research that says that if you do nothing, it will get more expensive.
Sure.
So the fact that, you know, it may, A, it's hard to establish causality, so we want to be careful about that kind of line of image, but stabilizing rent increases is affordability. So those people who are making those statements are just taking out of context.
So part of my reason for suggesting that the things on the left be identified as factual statements, that lends itself to then citations to literature that can support them. And I think the consensus of the academic literature is building more, there is a supply and demand thing going on here. Building more housing, if it doesn't make housing affordability go down, at least tempers the rise.
Yep.
Right? So I think you could move these as kind of key factual assertions and then provide some citations.
Okay.
And we don't need to include the crack academic work that doesn't actually support that, right? We can support the consensus literature. And then if you do that, now, building from those fact statements, here are the core values that build from our vision statement that kind of tie them together or make them relevant.
Can I make what I think is a friendly amendment? And you can tell me if it's hostile. So what I was hoping was that earlier, like, a little bit like a legal brief, right? Earlier, we're talking about fact claims. We're going through it all, right? What we found in our public engagement, what we think we need to do, and that was the reason I made the suggestion upfront, to have the citations from the report higher up in the document. I feel like when we're getting to here, we ought to be able to just say what we think, right? We ought to be able to just say, like, "This is true, this is true, this is what we feel, this is what we feel," without a ton of footnotes embedded in it, which I'm worried will just, like, it's going to start looking like an academic paper that should be peer-reviewed.
Yeah, maybe provide the footnote somewhere. I don't know that they need to go here, but I think there is academic work that we can cite, too. I'm just saying, here are the key facts that we now accept. We're taking these as good descriptions of what's going on in the world. And here are the values that we're going to work from, combining facts and values to get to the goals, which are in the next section. So framing them a little bit more that way. That was a general comment I had. The plan is chock-full of, here's what we heard from the residents, but there's a lot of good academic work out there, too, that supports what we're hearing, and I didn't really see good evidence. It was hidden if it's there.
It's not in these sections. It's listed as the rationale underneath the goals when we get to the next sections and we can discuss what needs to go there. Yeah.
Well, I just want to make sure, I mean, like, because we have heard so loudly recently that we're not going to build a way out of this, there's absolutely no evidence, support that, if this is the first place we say something like that, I mean, I like that approach in general, like, say it above, and then this is, this is the things we distilled, but if this is the first time we say something like that, I need a citation.
Heard.
Okay. Let's...
So this is the last spread, I think, for tonight, but I did just want to reiterate to the Planning Commission that those values come back over and over and over again. It's kind of what anchors this plan. So this was one of my questions. I think it might be too late to get into this discussion. We can continue to have it as we go, but you have to feel really comfortable with how those are described and also what they mean for you when it comes to decision-making in the future. Because the, one of the directives was to have a values-based plan. These are now our values, and that you are going to have very difficult decisions in the future where you're going to have to lean on these. So you have to feel very comfortable with how they are framed and described throughout this plan.
There's a comment I want to make about that.
Okay.
I think ideally, in a lot of places, you could do all of these things simultaneously, but in some of these places, you can't. And we're going to have to make trade-offs and choices, and I think we need to acknowledge that, and then figure out what's the process we're going to use when we have to reconcile conflicting, how are we going to do that? And I don't know that we can decide that tonight, but that needs to be articulated.
I think it, I think it is. I mean, we can, maybe we can highlight the places where it is, but like, on page 32, there's a whole thing about a balanced approach, and I can't remember, but I know I saw it earlier, too, before that, where maybe even the word "trade-off" was actually used.
It's at the very top of the values framework. But I do, we agree, Brett and I have talked about this, like, not every single development is going to perfectly fulfill all four of these every single time.
Correct, and that's not the expectation.
And I see this, it just reads to me, like, we're going to do all of this simultaneously, and we can do it everywhere simultaneously.
So I have a note about maybe further discussion of these being trade-offs.
Yeah. I think that's how it would have to be.
That's another reason why that paragraph should just move over. I am not comfortable with the way sustainable is, I think we just should talk about it, and I'm too tired.
Okay.
We've been here for five hours.
We have.
But the reason why is because I think it's too idealistic, promoting balance between all of our natural and human systems to support a healthy and biodiverse ecosystem today and into the future. It's, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I...
They're trying really hard to put the word "all."
They are.
And every single one of them.
And I actually have some issues with affordable and equitable, too, with that. Not issues, it's just, how do we support, like, all should have the opportunity to call Ann Arbor home and thrive, residents and businesses alike.
Well, but aren't these, like, things we're striving for? Not commitments we're making?
Yeah, it's a vision.
Yes. So this might be a good place to start next...
Well, yeah, sure, ideally.
It might be a good place to start next time because all of our goals have these four icons with these four descriptions to remind everyone that our goals are meant to align with this, our strategies are meant to align. So if there are issues here, that might be a good place to start next meeting.
I mean, even icon for sustainable, it's not something that I object to, but it's a person in a crosswalk in a street. But what is mentioned as a really core thing is natural and human systems. And of course, you know, we have, we have to be really thoughtful about...
Could we have a person by a river?
We could, yes. I mean, but we also have to be really thoughtful and realistic about what it means to do urban-style development to get greater density. It does mean some losses.
The key addition to sustainability was future generations. Maybe the picture is a person holding a child.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Mills.
Well, are we on 40, on this last spread, 40-41? Can I just make a comment on that?
We were done, but...
Oh, we were, well, we never, no, we never did 40-41.
Well, because Planner Bennett said, "This is where we would stop next time."
That's a good starting point.
This is the last spread, and we want to do this right.
Go ahead. I mean, you decide, right?
I have lost the chair. Go ahead, Commissioner Mills.
You want to leave one spread in chapter three left?
It's fine, go ahead.
I just thought, the make space for and build, like, I don't know if this is important, but like, there's a, there is definitely a hierarchy here. These things are presented as if they're kind of equally important, and I was struck, circular economy really stood out to me as being, it felt like suddenly, I haven't seen that mentioned anywhere else, and it's up here with housing. So, yeah, I could see striking it or just trying to give some nuance or some context there. And then just, I had the same thought about flexibility on the right, which is that of these things, it's the one that I have the least understanding of at this point about how this plan accounts for flexibility. I understand dynamism, but not flexibility. So just flagging those.
Yeah, that's one of the council directives for how our zoning should be more flexible, our land uses should be more flexible. So I think density and all these different housing typologies largely covers that.
So maybe instead of, "We don't know everything, the future holds, let's be flexible," exclamation point, it could just be more straightforward and say that, yeah, thanks.
But how is that retaining? Are we flexible now? And are we diverse now? Because no.
I think we should move that to the other side. That's the note I had. Flexibility should be, "Let's make space for and build inflexibility."
Yeah, I think this need, yeah. Like, services, I don't also agree with, I feel like that's a build, like, not retain services.
That's true.
What? Like, maybe retain quality services, we've got quality services.
That's what we say, yeah. And also, is this meant to be a summary of public engagement?
No.
I mean, it actually tracks the plans. Honestly, to me, it tracks the plans.
Would you all feel more comfortable if this was removed?
Yes. It kind of came out of nowhere. That was my comment. This whole spread. I don't disagree with, like, some of the sentiments, and also, just the language strikes me as, I know that this is cheerleading, but I don't know. Let's do it.
Do you all want to take a vote on that?
I think there's agreement.
Okay.
Do you all have advice? Were you thinking about this spread? Are you attached to it?
I'm happy to remove it.
Great, yeah. I think we could do that.
Solar farms?
I think the first four are due to work.
Well, this is the A20 plan. It's reflecting pieces of the A20 plan.
We actually have another agenda item.
And the other side, there's the natural features, that's a...
All right. I want to give anyone the last opportunity to share. We'll start with Commissioner Norton, and you don't have to share, but if you have something, go ahead.
I don't have anything more than what I've already said tonight.
Great. Commissioner Adams? Commissioner Hammerschmidt?
Thanks very much, staff, for all of your super hard work on this. Don't take this as criticism, we are just with you to make this as good as possible.
Commissioner Abrams?
These were summary comments?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to underscore, I didn't get a chance earlier, the public comment we received about adding a weekend session. And I don't know if that's possible, but the fact that they're all the same time, on the same day, like, if you just happened to work Tuesdays, you could never come. So I, some variety, I think would be great. Thanks.
There's Wednesday ones.
Commissioner Mills? Okay. Councilmember Dish? Commissioner Weatherby?
I just wanted to say, if we do have thoughts, what should we do? Should we save it for the next session? Should we...
About these chapters?
Yes. About, like, what, like, okay, I go home tomorrow, I'm thinking about it, I'm like, "Oh, wait, I have..."
It's too late.
I was going to say, you probably want to bring them back to the next meeting so
So in general, in general, if you have minor comments and they're more administrative, you can send them to us. However, any larger changes we want to make need to be discussed publicly. So I would say, bring them back. But we do want to keep trying to move forward with the next chapters.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. This was actually enjoyable. We're not, you're leaving? This was a good discussion. We do have two more agenda items for tonight's meeting. But I do want to get your consent to go past eleven to finish the agenda.
You actually don't have to, because we're about to take up the last item before eleven.
Okay, and the public comment doesn't count. Great, okay. That is good. So moving on to, thank you, staff, for facilitating and participating in that conversation. I enjoyed it, and I felt like I was heard. So thank you for that. We're moving on to item number ten, Other Business. And we are reviewing the 2025 City Planning Commission calendar with a staff introduction by Mr. Leonard.
Because you had so much fun, we want to do this several more times. So this proposed calendar would memorialize all that. It would make sure, we would make sure everything gets updated in Legistar, posted in City Hall. It formally switches those meetings previously that weren't regular meetings to regular meetings over this time period, adds fifth Tuesday meeting in April, and confirms that those would be starting at 5:30 PM. I would ask your adoption of it. Before you consider adoption of that, I do want to also point out that we have a meeting scheduled for August fifth. That is also the date of an all-special election here in the city. We can hold the meeting. Our understanding from the Clerk's office is that they won't need this space. Maybe it has something to do with a fancy new election center. But just wanted to pose the question and see what the mindfulness of the Planning Commission was, whether or not you wanted to hold the meeting as scheduled on that date, or reschedule it to perhaps the next day, or cancel it.
Any desire to cancel, move?
No.
Yeah, we'll keep it. Yes, sir.
Then just any motion to consider the schedule as proposed? A voice vote would be fine.
Commissioner Mills moves. Commissioner Adams second. Any discussion? Seeing none, can I do a roll call vote? I mean, a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. That takes us to Agenda Item number eleven. This is a second opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any issue. We will first hear from those in the chamber, and then remote participants. I thought if I took a breath, I wouldn't laugh, but it did not work. To speak remotely, press star nine if on phone, or use the raise hand feature in Zoom. I'm like mixing between crying and laughing now. For phone access, call eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven, and enter meeting ID nine seven seven six six three four one two two six. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name for Zoom users. You will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure that you are in a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Seeing as though there is no one present in the chamber, we will move to our participants on Zoom.
Speaker, you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Yes, greetings, Ann Arbor City Planning Commission. This is Luis Vasquez, nine zero nine Barton Drive in the First Ward. I am wanting to comment on the process and appreciate all the effort that has been put into the comprehensive land use plan process, including city staff, commissioners, and city council. I appreciate your time and effort. And I kind of like the direction that the process is going, and the direction that you want to take Ann Arbor towards, which is increasing the density of housing throughout the city, including in areas currently zoned exclusionary, single-family. If I had had the opportunity, if the zoning were different, I might have been able to build a four-plex on my property. But because of the current zoning, I cannot. I would like to see more businesses such as Jefferson Market or Big City Bakery. I'd like to see those interspersed throughout our neighborhoods. But the current zoning does not allow for that. So even if you were to radically change the zoning and make it much more aggressive, it will still take years and years before we approach the kind of density that we need to be able to stop the, or slow down the rise of rents and housing prices, and make things more affordable. It's going to take years. But also, I just wanted to close by relating to you a post that I saw.
Thirty more seconds.
On Facebook, coming from a self-appointed expert in land use and a landlord. He says in his post, "I've had time to review a lot of the draft comprehensive plan, enough to say that it is weak, vague, and an embarrassment to an educated community. We deserve better. Please sign the petition." The one that he's pushing is to suspend the comprehensive plan process.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez.
I find this, thank you. I find this appalling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No other speakers.
Okay, public comment is now closed. On to Agenda Item number twelve, Any Commission Proposed Business. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Commissioner Abrams, seconded by Commissioner Dish. All those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.